Well, I have one at the clock. I would like to welcome everybody to the New Bern City Board of Alderman Retreat. And so if you would just join with me in a prayer before we get started. Heavenly Father, I just ask that you continue to us your protection and blessing, and particularly in the last day or so as our city employees are in harm's way, and we just ask that you be with us as we conduct the business of the city of New Bern, that it would be pleasing to you and would be in best interest of all. In your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor Flur, just for the record, would you call Roe as to what elected officials are here?
Alderman Bebel.
She's here.
Yeah. Alderman Harris.
Also here.
Alderman Astor.
Also here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Best. Alderman Oda.
Here.
You probably should have done that roll call over into Chowery. No. Before we get going, if staff would update the public on what's going on with our electoral grid system and mark anything that's happened in the last day, sort of the weather.
I would say that primarily we've fared well, other than sporadic outages. We did have one today, probably about 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning. It was an outage that was about 2,100 customers. I think we're down to about 26 now or so. Sporadic, like I said, outages localized. But given the heavy winds that are expected for pretty much the rest of the day, I would tell people to just stand by, be patient if they do load the power. Our guys are out there working. It's highly likely that we'll probably lose a couple more sporadic outages. Hopefully, we'll get back online relatively quick.
Okay, this time I'll go turn this over to the city mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First time that we're going to be looking at, I have some questions by the board that asked us to reach out to the school board to represent the school system to discuss school resource officers. So at this point, I'll just ask them if they want to come up here and find a seat somewhere, and I'll probably just hand it back to you, Mayor, because I think it's the board that wanted them here, and y'all may have some questions that y'all want to ask.
First of all, thank you for having us here. I'm David Hill, Chairman of the Board of Education. With me is also Stacy. He is the Chief Officer for Systems and Operations. Dr. Doyle, we regret she could not be here, but we've got all the talent, and we'll find the answers if we don't have them.
He's just old New Bern anyway, so he knows everything.
We're both old. Thank you.
We're both old. We're just leaving.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman, for having us here. We just welcomed the opportunity to have dialogue, talk about our SRO, School Resource Officer Program, and what it's doing for us, and then entertain any questions you might have. With that in mind, I cannot open the dialogue, or Mr. Lee, would you like to say?
Well, I mean, you know, first of all, I'd like to express our appreciation for your support of our SRO program. If you do research in school safety, one of the things that really bubbles to the top is the presence of a uniformed officer on every campus. That's one of the very primary things that we can do to make our schools safe. So we do appreciate the support and partnership that you've extended to the school districts so far. And with that, I guess we can answer questions, or whatever is best for you.
Alderman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Stacy, thank you both for being here. I really appreciate taking the time to be here today. So, you know, we see the push, we hear what's going on in our county and across the state, and the pushes to have an SRO in every school. And it's really bad for us because we plan, we budget, and then all of a sudden something comes here, and so, you know, you're in the middle of our budget, you need two more. You're like, this is not a cheap endeavor to do this. I know currently, everything's covered except for, I think there's seven elementary schools or eight elementary schools?
Eight.
Is that eight elementary schools? So what's the plan? Are you going to come to us next week, next month, six months, and say, "The school's in the city of New Bern, it's not covered, we need you to cover it," or are our chiefs going to come to us? So is there a plan in place?
Well, we're a little bit at the mercy of our state budget, to be quite honest with you. You know, we've been fortunate over the last couple of years to receive grant funding to help with some of this. So we're sort of waiting to see what their plan is, to see what input that has for our office. Hopefully, that makes sense. Our plan is to cover all the school. So eventually, we would like to have a new four officer in every campus just now.
But there's not a strategic plan. Right now, we're saying that we're going to add, you know, two per year. It's just, it's all based on state funding, correct?
And so, well, there hasn't been additional state funding, and it hasn't been through grants, so we wait for those grant opportunities, hoping that during the intro, that the General Assembly will step up and say, "We want them, we fund them."
And I'm sorry, I'm going to ask a lot of questions, but I've been trying to do a little bit of research on this, and trying to get a feel for the money, because our constituents ask us that. We just want to make sure, because, again, it's hard to explain to our taxpaying citizen that the school systems are a function of the county, which we totally understand and funded by the county. But our police chief makes an extremely good case to us in saying, "We want our officers in the school system because this is, you know, a way for our young people to develop relationships with our local police enforcement that we want." But every time we add one, there is a cost to us that potentially could be for a full-time patrolman that we need to protect our citizens in other areas. So there's a balance there. And, you know, we need to have all the information we can from the state. So when you talk about grants, is the state doesn't specifically put funds in an SRO budget that they pass along to the county?
They do not.
Okay. Talk to me about lottery funds. So the lottery funds that come to Craven County, it looks like, well, this is 1819. I'm sorry, I don't have 1920, but what I had here was that Craven County, $3.4 million. So of the $3.4 million, you know, non-77, so almost a million dollars had to go for school, to build schools, school construction.
And debt.
Okay. So the remainder of those funds, where do they go? Can they be used for SROs?
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know if I know the answer to that.
I actually think that is a commissioner question.
Right.
And it is my understanding that, I'm going to say it this way, and don't hold me to this, the debt may be greater than the funds that we have, because they were talking about how we used to get higher funds, and now it's been reduced. So I'm making the assumption.
And I don't know how they, like I said, I don't know how they separate. That was one question I couldn't get answered. So much went into capital, and then the difference, what in different places, was not sure how that formula worked, because I see in different counties, different proportions are made. So you're thinking that's more commissioner decision than it is for schools?
The dollars do go to them for distribution, yes.
So we should be talking to our commissioners about potentially additional funding? I'm just, I want to make sure I understand this.
That's my understanding. I'm being serious when I say that, Mayor.
No, I mean, you know, whatever. I think they're extremely good resource. You know, it's important to protect our children. That's what we should be about, but I also have to protect the funding.
We can either take this back and get a clarification.
Yeah, that would be great. I just would like to know so that I can answer those questions.
Alderman, if I could add one thing, we're constantly asking our state representatives and DPI, where the grant funding comes from, what is their long-range plan? Because what we'd like to be able to do is answer your question and say, "Okay, we need to do our plans as well as your plan." And to be quite honest with you, some of the things that are happening now, trying to get those answers, we're not having very much.
And I understand if this is an unfunded mandate from the state, so the state is saying, "Hello, everybody, we want you to have resource officers as well," which I think is a good thing. Then we need to be, then we, as a board, need to be talking to our state legislators to say, "Okay, here's this mandate. You need to at least fund it, whether it comes from lottery or wherever else it comes from, and this should flow through, then, so we can at least equip our officers and do what our chief thinks is necessary to protect our children."
Yep, we agree.
Okay, thank you.
So, before we have any other questions?
Of funding for the New Bern Police Officers that are in the school, how much of that fund, that money come from the county school board? Do y'all put towards, do y'all have any of the county school board money fund these officers?
The officer funding comes through the state allotment now. So none of that money is coming from, now, the county portion, if they pay, like you pay for the city policemen, they pay for that portion, obviously, out of their budget. But all of our funding comes from state allotment, has that right there?
So it's all grant money?
It's grant money, and it's previous money that we had allotted in the budget prior to the grants coming through. But it was all allotted through a state fund.
And the county, they're paying anything toward New Bern?
So the school board, basically, we have four officers. I think that chief is at 38 or 39. I think it's 38 or 39,000 that comes from the school board.
It's.
Then we pick up the difference. The last two, we put on, we got 49.
Right.
So that the percentage cut, but then we have to kick in the rest, and, you know, we're talking about $70,000 an officer.
Per officer.
And in the county, that's the same thing, with the portion within the county.
You mentioned those dollars. The grant dollars were higher, and that's where you got the 49 part, and I believe the other was through the allotment system that's been in being from other counties in for quite a while.
And I researched, tried to find some history on how the $38,000 number was built in years past, and as far back as 2010, 2011, that's what the state allotment was, the 38,000, 39,000 number. That's since gone away. I mean, we don't get a line item in our budget that says SROs anymore. We use a fund, and then we pay the SROs out of that. So that money, however it was built years ago, I really don't know. It's probably arbitrary in how the budget's done, how the state set that budget, but there's really not any history to that number, as far as we can tell, in our district. Hopefully, that makes sense. So some other districts may, and one of the things that I'm doing now is researching other school districts in our area and across the state to see what they actually compensate their SROs and see what that comparison could be for our district.
So right now, you have eight elementary schools that need?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and then dollar amounts. If you had to give us a dollar amount of what is requested, what would that be, that you would need to put the eight in there, like our portion?
Well, I don't know.
They don't have the money to put in, they don't have their money to put in the eight officers.
They don't have matching.
Right, right. So you don't have matching funds, right, but you, they usually, they give us 49,000 towards our other officers.
Per officer or 49,000?
Per officer. Per officer. And then the difference is split between the county and the city?
No.
Let me digress on that, okay? When the grant came up, and correct it from wrong, we asked for 12 SROs. Would they give us the 49, five for each of those 12? Well, obviously, everybody else is good, and for that same grant money, we got three. And so that's the process we go through, and that's the dollars they give us to go toward those three.
But the county doesn't give us a pound for the New Bern Police Officers?
That's what she's saying.
Correct, Susan?
Correct.
Other than the 38 passed through from the state?
That's correct, yes.
So the only, the only money that's paying the SRO is grant money instead?
Which is 30,000 per officer?
Now it's 49, now it's 49.
Or last time. Just 38 isn't enough, as I said, the 38 is an allotment, the 49 is, and that's for two years, correct?
That's right. We're in the second year of the first, the first year of the recent program.
So, but we have eight schools in the city limits that need?
No, not necessarily.
Not at all.
We only need to be concerned about three.
Only three does not.
You would have Creekside, Bayberry, Trent Park, Ben Quinn, the State.
Beatty Quinn, right.
And Mount Bridge.
So those would be the ones in the city.
Okay. So you suggested that we need to talk to our county commissioners?
Banker's statement.
That the general.
I mean, that's Trent Park, Beatty Quinn, Creekside.
Trent Park, it doesn't happen?
Oh, okay.
They already have.
Well, really, you're state legislator, because I think you need to talk with state. They're talking about this, they need to be passing the funds down.
Right, but I feel like until that budget is passed and we have that ability, I feel like if we plan it in the budget for at least this year to cover the three within the city, you know, I think that would be, you know, because the budget is passed in July, but it's not effective until July. So if something comes through in between that, then we're safe, but if we plan for it and we don't need it, it can go back. That's how I feel we should do this, because I do think that the schools in the city limits should be covered by our police officers, given the simple fact that it's going to be dual, double work if we had Craven County sheriffs in there, and then they still have to call our police officers out. That would be just my thought process, and that's the same thought process I had last year when I voted yes to fund the SROs. So prepare for the.
For the three additional, at least, and the others continue, if I hear you correctly.
Adding three?
Well, you don't have to do three, you only get two of it.
And Trent Park.
This year, we didn't, in the three you got this year, we didn't get it. So the three went to two, well, we got two in the previous budget.
Right.
But in the current budget, we, I think the three that you got went to county, or they're in county.
Yeah, you're right. You are correct.
Yeah, Arthur, Ambrose, Fred, and that's where I'm at. Yes, you're correct.
So I think my question would be, is if we look to funding three more, will we get the $49,000 from the state to help us? And the answer is probably not.
Well, here's the thing. I know I'm going to be in DC in March, and I have, I'm going to be having appointments to speak to the legislators, so if there's something we can combine, bring to them, because I have a few topics that I'm going to bring to them. So I'll be in their faces in March, say what's going on, to see if that will help. But again, I just feel we should at least plan, because we want our students to be safe, and, you know, we're here to serve and protect. And then, you know, we really have to, if we have to have ad hoc meeting or getting together and really have a discussion about this money with all entities that are dealing with it, we really need to sit down and have that conversation, because we're going to be here every year with this, and at the end of the day, the children's safety is very important, and the teachers.
I agree. But it's my understanding that meeting that was held with county commissioners, when we asked about funding for SROs, they said, "You're barking at the wrong tree. You need to be barking at the school board."
Everybody wants to point the finger at everybody else.
That's reading my.
Their comments were that they have the money, but you guys create your budget. So if you feel from a strategic standpoint that each school needs an SRO officer, it's up to you, your board, to put it in your budget to then present to the county to make that request. That was.
So, yeah.
Correct me if I'm being wrong.
I reckon you're saying, use your budget for it.
I know what you're saying. You may have to bail me out of this, but what you're really saying, if we are ready to move next year into funding of the remaining schools, it would have to come out of the fund that we have, and then we'd have to ask for matching out of, from the county, from their positions.
Well, or either, and I'm not on the school board, but if I was, I would ask the county commissioners to fund 100% of the SROs.
Well, my take was, that's why I asked about the lottery, and I'm trying to look at this lottery number. What are we doing with all these additional lottery funds? So if X amount of dollars is going towards school construction, you know, out of 3.1, what did I say, $3.4 million that Craven got in this budget, you know, 3.4, you know, less than a million went towards school construction. Well, where's the other 2 million? 2 plus million. What, where is that going? Could that be set aside, a percentage of that? So that's the question.
I think that's on infrastructure.
No, they can use it. It can be, it can be used.
For county chief.
It can, yes, it can be used for other things. And I'm going to clarify that with Buddy, because, you know, Buddy was on the lottery commission, and that's where he provided me this information, but.
So you're in the budget season now, just like we are, so it might be a good time to put your request into the county to fund SROs. I mean, that's what they, that's what they recommended.
Stacy, are you, are you familiar though with the lottery funds, you know, as far as how they're divvied up, or David, are you familiar how they're divvied up?
It was my understanding, there's a stipulation that it only goes toward debt and facilities, and there may be an exclusion for technology. None of that, and that's what I'm saying. I'm not sure they have excess or that it can go to, but I don't want to be the one to say that.
That's okay. Yeah, I want to find out, because I'm finding out that in some school counties, and I'm getting clarification on that, they, they use it for supplements too. So, or they have, in some counties, to make additional supplements. So, you know, the lottery is a $654 billion.
We are aware.
Billion dollar a year venture for the state of North Carolina.
And we get 3 million?
3.4.
4 million?
100 counties.
This becomes inappropriate or political, but the percentage that we get now is much less than when it initially started, and that's something that commissioners bring to our attention, and I can't say where it all goes.
Again, the state, our state officials, our state elected House members in Senate, they're the ones who appropriate these dollars. So the lottery collects them, but it all goes to the state, and then the state appropriates them. So again, these are conversations we should be having with our delegation.
Down to 17%, wasn't initially at, what, 35?
35.
35. So, and so that's the story. I was here, we are not getting the same amount, and I'm making the assumption it just covers debt. There's enough debt, and I actually thought some of the county debt could be used, it could be used for the county, so it's called the state.
Chief, what percentage breakdown of an SRO officer, is time spent doing SRO duties versus doing general duties throughout the city? Is it 80, 20, or?
Doing school setting, 100%.
Well, look at the full year.
The full year, obviously, school is in session.
70%.
10 months out of the year, and some, at least one officer continues working with the school system during that, during the off-season. So I would say 70, about 80% of that.
You have school that's all year-round, too, if you love it.
And, yeah, year-round school, obviously, people. So I think, from my understanding, some of the argument or concerns that's been expressed from our board is the fact that we're supplementing more than what the SRO cost is to the city. So what we need to determine internally is what are those numbers? What does it look like? Take the, all the SROs we have, what's their total salary, benefits, everything, put that together. Let's look at the 75, 80%, figure out what that number is, and if it's, if it's more or less than the 39 and 49,000, I think that's where our concern is, is we, somebody needs to be supplementing that, because essentially, we could tell county, "No," and then the sheriff's department is going to have to put an officer in there, and then the county's going to have to bear the full force of all that cost. So we're trying to be good partners here, but we need to figure out what that true cost is to us, and then we can give you that number and say, "Hey, look, this is what we're looking from the county to supplement."
You said that exactly correctly. I want to correct what I said, when I said there were three that came this time. We look at where do they need to be, and then you go, who would fund them? Two of them going to the sheriff, and the other one's going to Vanceford, I agree. And so Vanceford says, "We can take that out," and that would be the same process when we address New Bern schools.
But the ones we paid for last year are police, are police officers.
Yes, yeah.
But I'm really concerned that school is in session, and there are some that are lacking, especially.
You're so correct.
Within the city. So that's, that's a concern for me. But I'll take that off-line.
And I cannot overstate what the chief said also. It's not just the safety and security, it's the relationship of the students with their SRO, and what they can bring to that school, and that relationship building.
Right.
The other thing you got to think about too is, is the, the school districts are not contiguous with our corporate limits of the city. So even though we're providing an officer right now at Oak Road, and we're providing J.P. Barber, and where's the third elementary, or is that the two that we have, two elementary schools? We have the two elementary schools. So they're probably not as applicable, but if you think of it from a high school level, just because in the city limits, we're providing a resource officer, maybe two, two resource officers at New Bern High School. We're getting funded $39,500, I believe, through the old allotment, but we're serving students that are not part of the city limits of New Bern. Hence the reason why, in my mind, it's even more of the argument of should the, the county be contributing in some way, shape, or form to supplement that, based on a population or census?
Creekside would be, Creekside would be a perfect example. So Creekside's in the city limits, but most of the kids are from James City, that area, that not are in our incorporated area. So is it county? Is it city? How do we look at that, you know?
So when you think about that, when you think about the census of what the school is, the census of the school has, especially New Bern High School, I mean, it's got people from, you know, Riverbend, it's got kids from Trent Woods, it's got kids from all these places, but we're, we're toeing the road on the entire cost of that SR, those two SROs specifically at New Bern High School. Now, as Chief has mentioned to y'all many, many times before, it's huge benefits in having our own officer, and quite frankly, the school extends all the way to the point where the bus stop's at. So the benefit of having our officers there is, most of those bus stops are within our corporate limits, and that's where the kids are getting dropped off. So it's nice to have that relationship at the school level, knowing where the bus stops are. Our officers are very familiar with the area, that the crime that may be associated with it, or where kids may be at risk, so forth and so on. But, you know, again, it goes beyond that they're providing that service at the school level for kids that are not even in our city limits.
And if I may, it goes beyond just salary, because each school needs to have a car, the officer needs to have a car, so that's an expense. Of course, all the tools that the officer carry radios, but.
I'd make the recommendation that staff work to figure out what the all-in cost is for each SRO officer. Find out what the percentage is of the time they're spent in the school versus outside the school. Subtract that from the funding that we get, whether it's the 39 or the 49. Find out what that difference is. We put that number together, and then the board deliberate if we want to ask the county to supplement that.
And then what happens if they say no?
We have a decision. But I think now's the best time to be doing that, because we're all in the budget somehow.
I agree.
Should we go ask the county or the school board the question?
Well, I think we need to send it to the school board.
Okay, I agree.
What I understood from the county commissioners is how it should work.
I agree with that.
I agree. But worst-case scenario, if we're at least in the budget plan, when we get the number, if at the end of the day, they don't want to step up to the plate and help protect the children, can we just plan in the budget so that it's taken care of for at least that budget cycle? Because we can always remove it.
The board, I can put whatever number is needed.
Do you think that we're not voting on it, we're just saying, so, you know, we get to consideration, you know, we're hoping that we can come together and make sure we take care of it, but if not, and we have to make the decision, we don't have to scramble to figure out what is going to, how is it going to affect the budget? It's already in there.
I would, I would tee it up as a request. Put it in the parking lot, if you will, because we're going to hear a lot of requests from everybody.
Over in that parking lot again. Chief, did you have any chance to budget for additional SROs this year?
Uh, no, I did budget for a SRO supervisor, and to me, it's very important. I'm sure you've seen on the news where some SROs have mistreated students, and that's because of lack of supervision. And I think it's important to have a supervisor that can go from school to school, make sure that school resource officers are doing the things that they should be, and also help with scheduling. And then finally, when a school resource officer has to leave for training, or has to leave for, you know, annual leave, there's no one to fill it. So that's supervisors, because also fill in for them.
That's awesome.
I love you guys.
Wasn't so bad, was it?
No, unless.
I could see your face there.
We are in all of the serendos together. We appreciate your interest, your questions, and I wrote down, and we'll have some dialogue on where this is going.
We appreciate the work that Megan Doyle and everybody's doing, trying to.
You know, I do have a quick question. So with the hours training, and I'm sure there was funding for that, well, is there anything left over that can be allocated to SROs, since it kind of has the same effect in regards to protecting the students?
No, not really. That was an expense item of our local budget that we allocated for hours training. It was minimal. It really wasn't that much money, because most of it's all money for staff and such like that. But there's no official funds there.
Good question.
I appreciate all this discussion, and, you know, I've tried to be kind of sour about it, because the whole list here too is, at Cameron, the state's probably not willing to mandate SROs in every school in North Carolina. At the same time, you've got some counties that have city school system, and county school system, we obviously, there's some fragmentation there. The county that I've seen that is championing the calls of security and safety for our children is Stanley County. And I would encourage everybody to look up what Stanley County has done. I think they actually introduced in the General Assembly legislation, site specific to Stanley County, that they are mandated, they have SROs. They don't get into the inequities of, is the county student or the city student obviously have lots, I know in our, I think the last time we really discussed this was year budget time, and I think there was some timing delay in truly knowing the number of grants that the state was going to give, and if that was going to perpetuate or not. So again, I think we've given you some information, and I would encourage you guys to go back and look at the Stanley County model. And also, I know, I appreciate I've had a conversation with the chief, early meeting, the city, the police department would like to see city SROs at the same time. Alderman, Alderman, others bring up the fact that in Vanguard School, where my children went, they have a lot of city residents, even though that's in the town of Trent Woods. So I certainly hope we can equitably bridge the gap here. And again, the main thing is the security and safety of our children.
Thank you. We appreciate your support, and there'll be some follow-up to these questions.
Anything else on the SRO? Thank you guys for being with us. Thanks for what you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, um, real quickly, before we get to our next topic, uh, when we got started, um, I'm happy to announce that, uh, Pro Bono, Mary, uh, is our, our, our new finance director. We offered to her, she was gladly accepted and, uh, she is here with us. Mary Hogan is her name. She comes from the town of Holly Springs, uh, many, many years of governmental financing experience. And I think a little bit in the property sector, with some accounting world experience, CBA. Happy to have her here. She's doing this on her own accord to come down and, and get familiar during our budget retreat sessions so that she can hit the ground running. Anticipate the start date, I think, is still the twenty fourth, is that correct? Twenty fourth of February, so we're coming up fairly quickly on that. And there's nobody more happy than myself and Lori. We were hot vibing each other in the parking lot, uh, talking about how happy we are that things are getting ready to happen. So, but, uh, very happy to have you here, Mary, and welcome to our community and, and we appreciate you coming down and, and visiting with us today.
Happy to be here. I just want to say thank you very much. Thank you for the good choice. And I'm happy to be here and I can't wait. I, I spent the last few days watching the last two months with the council, we need to have more meetings on TV.
Bless your home.
I'm getting up to speed with some of the current issues and I'm still here, so there you go. Thanks, nice to see you.
All right. Uh, so the next item we have on our topics today to discuss the retreat is our city hall annex project. Board requested that we come back, uh, with, uh, the architect, Tripp is here with us today and his, uh, staff that have been looking at, uh, city hall annex project. Uh, as you recall, going back to when this decision was made, uh, we presented the board with, uh, three different options. Because this was the year of the elevator, I think you termed it as mayor. And we're trying to, uh, get better accessibility, uh, ADA accessibility to city hall, being that old historic building, that's very difficult to, to do at times. While it is ADA accessible, it's, it's, it's very difficult ADA accessible. So what we're looking to do is in addition to an elevator, also look at the potential for an annex to be built to potentially house, uh, several different departments. One of them being where we are today, development services and, and HR, uh, potentially the building inspections department, uh, that's, that would also come along with it. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tripp, let him present to you. We, we've made a pretty good, pretty good, uh, headway on where we are with plans. Uh, and we'd invite the board's input, uh, as to, uh, moving forward and the next steps that we need to go through next.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you for inviting us here today. Again, my name is Tripp Hoover, I'm an architect and a principal of MDF Architects here in New Bern. My able-bodied assistant Melissa is going to keep me out of technological trouble. And I also have with me our office project manager, David Griffin. And so, uh, what you've asked us to do is to essentially evaluate the feasibility of using a building annex to solve our accessibility problems on city hall. And it's a, a challenge and a complicated problem, but we think we've got some ideas, um, uh, that may help you get a better understanding of what might be involved. To kind of start with city hall, you need to know a little bit of history. And, um, the building was constructed between eighteen ninety five, I'm sorry, nineteen, yeah, eighteen ninety five and eighteen ninety seven. And many of you know that city hall was originally a post office and courthouse and custom house. Um, you may not know that the clock tower was added around nineteen ten. Peter Sandbeck, he's a local historian. He describes the architecture of city hall as Romanesque revival as well as, and I quote, eclectic late Victorian in style. And so, uh, most of us, uh, really aren't sure what to make of that. But what we all are certain of is this is a landmark, uh, in the city of New Bern and is very important to our community. The interior renovations that you currently enjoy were accomplished somewhere around nineteen ninety. So with that in mind, and Melissa, you can go to the next slide. You've got, we've got to come up with a strategy that, um, historically addresses how you could expand such prominent, important building in a community. And our idea is a historical one. It's called, um, creating an arcade essentially between the historic building and the new building annex. And our architectural lesson for today is an arcade is a series of arches on top of a colonnade, um, that, that was predominant from the eighteen eighties to, uh, roughly nineteen twenties. And it was used to provide cover for pedestrians. Now, even going back to eighteen hundred, there were examples of arcades in Europe. And so it's a, a bona fide historical way of, of dealing with an expansion similar to what you've asked me to investigate. And so I've got two examples of arcades. The one on your left is, uh, the Strand Arcade in Sydney, Australia. That's about an eighteen eighties type of development that is very similar to the mall type idea where you can see the balconies and the walkways and the storefronts are offices on either side. And you see the glass, um, at the roof that allows daylight into the space. And then in the center picture, uh, it's Nichols Arcade, that's actually in Ann Arbor, Michigan, of all places. And that was about, uh, nineteen eighteen, I guess. And that arcade is more of an example of two exterior facades which at some point in time got a cover over to protect pedestrians walking back and forth. So I just share these with you because I think our strategy that we want you to consider is, is essentially a half and half. For example, the best way for us to preserve its historic city hall is to carefully balance how many times we try to connect to it. So on one hand, we want to have that facade, that outdoor facade in the arcade. Then on the other hand, we want to have more of the mall-like balustrades and office spaces where people can circulate and conduct business with the city. So before I move on, any quick questions about arcades or what our thinking is in terms of approaching this problem?
Hey, real quickly, just if you will, detail the reason why the arcade has to be used. I think it's more of a cause of action in, in doing the annex, has to develop that consistency with HBC than age of the building in there.
So the other complexity with this project, uh, not only is this a landmark in our community, it's also a landmark for the Historic Preservation Commission. Obviously, there's a process that we envision, uh, should be undertaking. We suggest you anticipate it only being, uh, lengthy in terms of, uh, getting buy-in and public input. My thought being, much like when the guidelines were updated recently, there were a number of, of public forums where the public was invited to participate as decisions were made. And we, we envision a maybe three to six month process of that type of interactions with, uh, city and New Bern citizens. The other thing, the, the arcade, uh, is advantageous is that, uh, it'll allow daylight to the center of the building, which essentially makes all the windows in existing city halls still have a function. And so that's, you know, another major problem that, uh, we've solved, solved from a historical perspective. Good, thanks. Slide there. So we're going to start at, at the ground level, actually below ground. This is the basement of the existing city hall. Uh, at, at the top of the page is Craven Street. And, uh, to your right is Pollock Street. And so, right up above this area is the long entrance to city hall. And right back in here, once you get up the grade is, uh, the entrance to the basement and the parking behind you. Okay? So essentially, to solve our accessibility problem, uh, we've got a number of issues. First of all, the proposal you're seeing for the building annex is two floors. City hall has three floors. You probably questioned, do we need two elevators? When you last saw some information on this. And, and the answer is yes, we need two elevators in this scheme as long as we want to make the third floor of historic city hall accessible. So we talked a lot about arcades. And here is that arcade, right here between historic city hall and then the building annex around. There's also a central lobby gathering space with a monumental stair. We're dealing with, uh, planning and inspections, um, well, planning department, building and inspections, human resources, uh, potentially accounting and potentially the utility building. So what you're seeing is our first effort that is in progress. It doesn't solve all the problems that we need to address. But we do think that a scheme built on this one will likely accommodate, um, all those departments I just mentioned. And ultimately, what our goal is, is to have planning and inspections, planning and building and inspections on the first floor and then human resources. And, uh, accounting on the second floor and, and utility building also on the first floor. Those are the uses that have the highest traffic. And so as we organize the building, we want to have, uh, the offices most being soft, most readily accessible. And then obviously offices, uh, that have the least amount of public interaction or be more remote from the, um, building entry. The other thing we're able to do, uh, in terms of plumbing and toilet facilities, uh, we're able to solve our, uh, bathroom inadequacy problem in current city hall. And we make connection to the existing building in, in two places. One in this area here on all three floors. Typically, those are the bathrooms that are currently there and we connect through a window open. We will also ultimately make a connection at the second floor only into the courtroom. So we can look at that next. Okay, so here's our courtroom. Essentially, these pieces carry on up and stacked as well as these pieces here. Security is kind of one of the things that we're trying to address in a manner better than we do now. Again, we don't have the exact solution at this point. But we have an awful lot of meetings here, um, in the courtroom in historic city hall. And by having a main public entry, um, here on Craven Street, as, as well as a stair and elevator to get us to the courtroom, we envision that there are ways to restrict pedestrian movements. So when we have our meetings in the evenings, after offices are closed, you can confine the public to a, a reasonable area as opposed to having them run throughout the building. The other thing that kind of solves, we, we've got a fire escape that, um, most of us tend not to appreciate is aesthetic appeal. And so that also allows us to eliminate that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I would not view the elevator on the Pollock Street side as being more secure and easy because then it doesn't put anybody into the office space and gets people up through the courtroom in a better manner than just, say, the meeting started. You don't want somebody walking in, the door opening and walking into the meeting. Whereas if you come from this, my right side over here, it's like it is now. So you're up in that little vestibule area and it's a very, I mean, it's an observation.
That's a very plausible, um, working as well. We envisioned that ultimately, uh, architecture in terms of massing an entry from our primary entrance is going to be from the Craven Street side. So, uh, I believe that's the logic that drew us to have, you know, this area here where we come in downstairs, come up these steps to access the courtroom. That's why we've done that. Now, there's some shortcomings with what I've just showed you. For example, we're, we're still in design iteration. We're going to turn these monumental stairs around so they more directly come up to the courtroom. And we're also going to move, move these toilet facilities back up in here so that we've got a nice little compact space if we choose to make that around. And we want to use things after hours.
I think some of the other issues to your point, Arvin, the angle is, if you come in off the Pollock Street side based on the design that's there, generally speaking, they would enter into that, that, that bathroom that's on the second floor. Well, we, we keep in mind that security is one of the issues. Once you get past that point, you're free rein unless we plan on doing something all the way up to the clock tower, just like it's always been. So, uh, to some extent, by doing the plan that he's looking at, the, the old historic portion and accessibility to all the floors of city hall would be more of an emergency exit and basically maybe for closed session items to where the board can go into that area that wouldn't be subject to, uh, you know, the public. That everything is to the left of, which is the new annex portion where everybody would come in, that's kind of the public space where people can, can go move about and everything else. But the, the security is the main reason is being able to keep the public from roaming all throughout city hall while we're in the middle of a work.
Question, with the capacity increase or decrease?
In the courtroom? Unchanged. Unchanged. So right now, we currently have, uh, twelve feet of space roughly between the rail. Uh, there are room for a couple more benches, in other words, between the first bench we have now and the rail. And, uh, you know, this utilizes that open space so that we don't decrease the capacity at all. I've got two more slides I need to show you quickly just to make sure you understand. We do have a third floor slide. And so you can see how we're up above the two floors here, but we still need the elevator to get to the third floor of historic city hall. And then the last slide is one more. Is, you know, roof plan, so.
Trip, question. If security is such an issue, the, the one elevator off of Craven Street going just to the second floor, why don't you just do a single floor elevator from the second floor to the third floor? Because I really don't see a lot of reason for having anybody coming in off of the ground level when always in the third floor. Maybe you can control, maybe you can control it a little better and possibly save a dollar.
That's a very good point.
So, yeah, essentially that elevator ought to be down here. Even if it's set up like you said, where it starts the second floor going to the third. Just keep in mind that you can't get there from here with this situation. Oh, wait a minute.
Yes, because you could come into the second floor and go to that elevator, take you up to the third floor. So what he, what he was saying is take the elevator off of Craven Street, come up to the second floor. You'd have to transit or some way get to the elevator that's on the second floor to go up to the third floor.
So we'd come down here.
Yes.
Have to go to the elevator on the second floor.
Dancing with the way elevator.
Just want to clarify, it has to be down the center of the building.
Sure.
In this location.
Understood.
To make that, understand that.
But, I mean, really, Mark, we don't anticipate much of anything taking place on the third floor anymore anyway, do we? It's such a.
Where IT's at now unless we build or relocate them somewhere else.
Well.
And, I mean, that's where IT's at, all their server equipment's where all of our connections come. And, and then, you know, unless we plan on taking them out to a different location, their intent is to stay there. And obviously, you know as well as I do, they've been lugging computers up and down those steps for years.
And, and it's probably not the best place in the world to be during storms and everything else, dude. So, I mean, the building, you're putting some of our most valuable resources in a building that was built in the eighteen hundreds. But anyway, just thought, I don't know if it'd save money, of how much money it'd save or I'm thinking more of security reasons than anything else.
And, and again, remember, these are progress drawings, uh, by no stretch of the imagination has Tripp got it quite figured out yet. There are a lot of complicated problems. There's some other issues we're dealing with, just, uh, law and constitutional. I, I need some more space between the Presbyterian Church property line and where we are to get egress.
Don't get confused.
That's probably going to be on TV. To get egress out of the stair. We've got some funny things like this little offset here that obviously isn't desirable. Already mentioned reconfiguring the, uh, grand stair and relocating toilet rooms to, you know, facilitate more secure entrance for after hours meetings. And there are a multitude of other issues like that that, um, still need to be solved and, and we'll still need a lot more of your input going forward.
And Tripp, I'm assuming with modern day technology with elevators, you could put timers to where only certain elevators work and get to certain levels of floor unless you have a key card or something.
Correct. We're anticipating some degree of access control. We're anticipating some degree of access control. You know, we haven't developed our security idea enough to be able to give you some insight on where those locations might be. But your police station already has that type of capability, and it would be something similar. It's not on every door, but it's on key corridors and walkways to secure equipment.
Would we be required to have, this building would be required to be sprinkled with crack?
Don't think so. And so that's, by code, it wouldn't be, well, we're a business occupancy. A business occupancy is the most safe type of building you can build. And because of that, the North Carolina code does not require it to be sprinkled for the amount of floor area that we have.
Stamp height?
I don't think we need a stamp height either, again, because it's business occupancy. And I don't think we've reached the threshold of number of feet above grade.
Well, I bet you if the fire chief had his way, he would love to see it sprinkled. And he would also, nothing else we should really think because of the protection of the third floor and the rest of it, put the stamp hypes in the elevators.
And again, we'd be happy to accommodate.
How much can that cost?
It's, it all adds up surprisingly.
I'm sure it does.
It all adds up. To help you feel a little bit better, the building annex materials would be non-combustible, as you could imagine. So we wouldn't be adding any fuel capability in that region.
I've seen them non-combustible buildings burn, too.
I know you have, Chief.
The contents especially. I know you have.
And certainly, sprinkling a building does offer other advantages in building codes such as reduced protection of structural members, things like that. So that'll all be part of the benefits.
It may be worth it as far as savings for insurance as well.
No, that's good. That's why we're here. This is not a one-way process. We need your feedback. Ultimately, you are the experts in terms of what needs to be in the building. We're here to help you accomplish your goal.
Is that, is that your presentation?
That's what we've got.
Well, my info B is that the city humor does have a budget. And speaking as a builder, I like pulling up here and getting in and getting out with parking space and putting three sets of plans and coming back a little later on and picking up my permit. And that's another area we have to explore is this parking proximity to the building for folks coming in, applying, receiving permits. And I know this, 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 this is working on that. But again, being able to make all these things coordinate together is, I mean, very important.
So I think Mayor brings up a good point. What's the parking situation look like? Because we're eliminating our parking lot that we have now. We're adding staff and personnel, so it's parking garage.
So, well, initially, you know, we've got a pretty significantly sized parking lot that's over across the street from the, that was creating the ATM. The majority of those parking spaces we have, we lease to various individuals. So with bringing those employees back into downtown, obviously, that would probably be the first option is to utilize that existing parking lot that we have. Of course, you know, there's always still the concept that we had of the parking garage. If we were commercially develop that lot along with, if the county wanted to move forward with doing something with the tax office or whatever, we still kind of got that concept plan that's still there. But I can't remember, Lori, do you have an idea how many parking spaces are over there on that lot? I want to say it's 40 some, I believe. Is it 42? I think it's 40.
Check it out.
We can look at that, that parking lot, it's about consistent. And we utilize several of them currently, very few of them actually. Our IT department, we have a couple people that park over there. I think we reserve maybe two other spaces for specific or special events where we may have somebody.
County leases at least, what, 12, 13 spaces at least, if not more.
Yeah, the county leases some. There's quite a few, a couple law offices, they lease several in that lot. But it's, you know.
I guess, I guess my point is, is we're decreasing our inventory and we're going to be increasing our supply. So even though we may own those parking spaces now, they're full a lot of the time. So those folks are going to have to go somewhere else. We're not, no longer going to lease in that space. And I think it's something that we've got to take into consideration. We don't want to build a, you haven't given us a number yet, we're still sitting down, but we don't want to build a multimillion dollar facility and then have to go across the street and go to another multimillion dollar facility for parking.
Well, not only that, how many, how many employees are you talking about bringing down there? I mean, just follow target.
I mean, it's all the same employees. Additionally, you've got, if we were able to get all of those departments, and I'm not so sure, you know, about the utility business office portion, but let's, let's go. I know some of the utility business office now over at Charlie's Place, and we will end some organizational change. But you're talking about eight in accounting, I believe. You've got, what, 17 in Jeff, where's Jeff at? 17 in Jeff, where's Jerry's department? HR's five or six?
Five.
Five.
That's 30. So, and the other problem with that is bringing those departments down, which they're busy departments. You're going to have more people coming in to visit with them, which could also create another issue in traffic. You know, most of the development services that probably have staff vehicles that they're going to park there, and then they're going to drive into work, park their vehicle there, so.
I think HR has one vehicle. I think planning has four, five, maybe? But still, yeah, I mean, you, it's, I'm just, I'm looking back, you know, seven, nine, nine years ago, whenever I first came here, you had the tax office, you had inspections office, you had development services, you had engineering, and you had accounting, all in the dun-dilling, every one of them. So in theory, you know, you're looking at pretty much the same headcount as you had at that time.
But you also have additional parking behind the dun-dillings.
You're true.
So, I mean, but what about the first, I mean, I know First Citizens Bank, I don't see all of that parking being utilized. Is that something that you possibly could use that parking as well?
They're not interested.
They're not interested.
They're more less than we are.
Well, the other issue would be is the county building and the parking on the other side of the county tax office. Because right now, they're, they've done facility needs assessment, that building, they run out of space, and they have some idea about changing that location and doing something on that building. So I just don't know what would, what would end up happening to that.
Yeah, I think parking makes a company she didn't really think about.
While we talk about that, we should talk about elevator.
I would suggest that now that we're at this point, we need to have a meeting with some county representatives and let them know what our thoughts and plans are and give them a heads up that whatever timeframe we're looking at, we may need the space that you're leasing from us now. In addition to that, what are their plans? Because if they no longer need that building, from a temporary standpoint, it could be demolished and that whole lot becomes a certain parking lot.
How about you, Josh, you're in that group, right? With the county commissioners, don't you have that group that meets with the county? Are you meeting like every couple of months?
Well, we decided that we were going to let it be where, if any other alderman wanted to participate in instead of just the same alderman all the time. But I think we were supposed to have a meeting in January, but it didn't happen, so. One rule should be forthcoming.
That would be a good topic to discuss.
Just looking at your new limits, the Law Trust Street has spacious spaces.
And you're gearing up how many spaces we're building for?
Better use.
16.
16. 16, yeah. But I don't know that all of those, I mean, you know, you've got to think, you've got the mayor and alderman's spot, both of those spots, they vacant pretty much most of the time. You've got, you've got.
Well, there's really nobody hardly working in City Hall anyway right now. You might have eight?
Yeah, you don't have buildings there anymore. You don't have public works there anymore. When you think about the traffic, volume of traffic coming in there, I mean, there are quite a bit of traffic. It was coming in whenever a public works was.
I think one thing for me, though, with this whole process, if we do move forward, I do know that we can get some extra space in that courtroom if we do it or overflow because we do have items that come on the board where individuals, whole community comes out and they don't get to actually see what's going on and.
As far as the extra space.
Potential right here. I realize that's not in the courtroom. I think that goes towards the direction you're speaking.
Yeah, unless you do some serious, and I'm talking serious, changes to the existing structure of City Hall, which this plan, other than making the connections, does not really get into historic City Hall. Unless you plan on making some very significant changes in the historic City Hall. Gaining extra space, the only way you're really going to do that is if you eliminate the big dais that y'all sit at during the board meetings and the elevated situation there and stuff like that. It's just, you've got so many structural components you're going to be dealing with, the way that building's constructed as well. All those big thick walls, those are all load-bearing, I would assume, Trip.
I don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're talking about some serious, serious.
We'd have overflow crowd every meeting, I would be concerned and I would be pleased, but that's just not, that's. And that's the exception, not the, not the norm, so.
But you showed the conference.
A few times that way.
There's a conference room that's right outside of.
Room, TV room.
Yeah, like, right where the elevator, the Craven Street elevator side, Craven Street elevator on the new, new plan. No, the Craven Street elevator, yes. On Craven Street, there's a conference room that's situated there that could potentially be used as overflow. Again, we've got, you know, some additional, another conference room on the second floor. And granted, this, obviously, is still a modification plan. There's a large conference room right there that's just around the corner. So on that floor itself, you potentially open up two additional conference rooms for still over if we need to.
And Trip could also, I mean, it would be, I think, I'm not an architect, but you certainly should be able to take that conference room, that large conference room, move it on side and relocate some offices eventually, so it'd be closer, right? I know we had that same issue with fire station a little bit.
That's right. And we're in that process of moving pieces around, which is why it's a little difficult.
So that conference room could serve as a number of entrances that would be adjacent to the courtroom.
What kind of estimated cost figures do you have on that?
12 million. It's $6,575,000, including contract award, contingencies and fees. Of course, you continue to scale it. I think it's roughly 380 some thousand. It's running about $255 a square foot. It shouldn't surprise you because that's what construction is costing these days. And we've got 22,404 square feet.
Which is how much in addition to what we currently have? What does that add of the 22,000, what do we currently have?
We currently have 13,000, roughly.
Upfit requirements and furniture, etc. Have you got any estimates on that?
I think we've included a furniture allowance in our detailed high items that's already in that number. Now, what's important, what's not included would be any significant work through historic City Hall. So I'm going to say, Mayor, we allow about $7.50 a square foot, which is a pretty obvious furniture budget. And I'll check that and share it with the city.
As far as discharge and all that work, I'll figure out.
Absolutely not. I haven't got it figured out yet, but I'm out. But we will, yeah. So essentially, what we've done is a thumbnail study of what our plumbing fixture requirements are. We've done a very abbreviated building code summary to understand egress and what we think our minimum requirements are there. We've gone through and done detailed case studies on this building as well as utility building office and accounting. And taken that information to create a program to re-accommodate that space. We're finding we're able to do it more efficiently than what either of the two buildings offer at the moment. And right now, we're in the process of trying to figure out how those different pieces can best fit together, trying to separate things again on need for accessibility by the public or access plan.
Well, again, I know we're, we're looking at this for the next 100 years, let's say. Obviously, let's say at some point in time, maybe it'll be 50 or 60,000 people. And I know a lot of cities that size have larger courtrooms than we have. They have special meetings they haven't been used. So I would think that the overall planning of the existing and proposed buildings would, would be, would answer with the needs of the future, I would, I would think. But again, to start out, I think some of us were thinking up to a million dollars for a singular elevator to, for once in the city, to have our systems be able to attend meetings. And again, this is, we've dreamed a little bit further than that, that's fine. But again, if the board is not comfortable with these figures, we need to let our staff and architect know that it's kind of, if not we, continue it. This is no different from a lot of churches I've worked with, it's a very big number. It's very hard to consume, but four or five years later, you're glad you did it. And I think this is going to be the same one.
So I guess we've got Mary in here, this is, we're going to legislate her. Figure out how to get the money to do it.
I'll be the person giving my comment. I think it's very important and essential that we do have an elevator. But personally, right now, for me, and I know a lot of the board, high priority for me is affordable housing. And I just personally can't see spending almost $6 million to completely try to upfit City Hall. And we do have prospective buildings for different locations. When we can be trying to, however we're going to fund it, fund affordable housing redevelopment and communities that are suffering. But again, I know the elevator is very important, so if we're able to have a plan that just incorporates an elevator, I think that would be something I can support. But I don't think I can personally support almost $6 million right now.
Mary, what would financing as far as terms, 20, 30 years?
We pull it forward, I would think.
So I figured it's a penny would be a 30-year at a two and a half percent interest rate. So it's a penny on a tax rate to pay for the building in the whole, to give you an idea of what the cost would be.
And you're right, and Mary's right, this is a long-term asset. The long-term assets you're going to finance over multiple years. So you're looking at, you know, six, six and a half million.
What does it cost to our budget? I think that's different than just saying we're laying $6 million out.
A penny.
Are you talking $100,000?
If you want to break down the numbers for the public, I understand financing and I understand that my thing is the same way that we can go ahead and take out money to reconstruct the building, we can find ways like other cities are doing, Wilmington are doing affordable bonds and taking out loans to deal with the infrastructure situations in communities. So like I said, for me personally, if it was a nickel or zero, I just, you know, point backed out, whatever the case may be. I was, I was good with a million, and then we're reaching five extra million. That's a, I don't think I can personally go to my constituents and say, yeah, we're going to put this money in here and it's going to come out of the budget, but we still don't have affordable housing.
Sure. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this to the board.
Right.
Whether we want to even move forward with even him doing this concept stuff because, you know, it's going to cost money to do it. But if they kind of visualize what we're talking about, what can happen on this.
Do we have, what happened, what happened to the original plans of the ideas? I don't know if you threw them up.
Now, we presented you all three, we presented you three options.
That's right.
And the board voted and moved on option three, and that's what this is.
The only, the only problem that, I feel that the elevator is a must, but for our citizens. The only problem I have is that already, we already know we're going to have some parking issues. And then why was it a suggestion of remodeling City Hall and bringing in these other offices? So I think if we, putting in these other offices is taking, is utilizing the space that we already have for parking. So why bring all, what, four, four, four or five offices into this building?
Well, I think one of the reasons behind that is. Well, I think one of the reasons behind that is, is you can get rid of this building if you do that.
Sell it, yes, that's what I was gonna ask.
If you're able to accomplish the goal of, of utilizing this, that, this development here for all the offices that, that Tripp mentioned, you, you could liquidate this property, whether you sell it to a private business and get it on the tax rolls, that's, that's a benefit.
Well, see, that's nothing that we didn't specify, and that wasn't thrown out to us, so we had some idea of what, what to expect. So, that's great.
Yeah, and so you have that, you have the utility business office that exists today. So if we were able to get accounting and utility business office, then basically that would vacate that building either for another city use or for us to liquidate that property. So you've got, you've got the opportunity to take six and a half million dollars, or whatever the number was, that, that, seven, roughly. So you're looking at, you know, seven million dollars, six and a half, seven million dollars on this, this, this project. At that point, you're able to start chipping away based on the sale of that, if you wanted to take all the numbers.
Have you taken into consideration that we, and we all agree, that in the very near future, we're gonna have to build additional fire stations? I mean, that's a six million dollar project there, and then a, you know, fire station, I've heard anywhere between two to five million dollars for that, I mean, it's, it's.
Mary's gonna have her work cut out for her, isn't she?
I'm curious.
It's, uh, yeah.
You can't forget our community center.
Looking at rehabbing this building, what would the cost be in just building a new building, putting everyone in? What would the cost be for something like that?
A one-story building.
We need a piece of land, we're gonna go to a one-story building, but I think it's a fairly easy question that you. I'm looking at numbers right now. That you asked for me to answer, because everything that, the scope we anticipate does not involve any substantial work to this historic City Hall. So you're essentially looking at five, I mean, six million, five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to do a new building. Now, we can spread that two stories tall on a smaller lot, we can make it one story tall on a bigger lot. But Sarah, I, I don't know of a bigger lot, but, you know, that would be another thing we need to anticipate if we do.
So you're saying either way, we were to build a new building, it's still the same amount of money?
Two hundred fifty dollars a square foot is what you should expect in today's climate. We can wish it to be something other than that, but more often than not, we'll be disappointed. And still looking at the same option for selling the building that we're discussing. Well, I, I presume so, we're getting too many pieces moving at one time in the air that an architect can keep track of. But yes, you would still be subtracting any sale of real estate, well, I don't wanna call abandoned, but anything you move out of that you never repeat, for this process. The reason why I say that, because of the strength of the old part versus the new part, like the third floor, it's gonna, work's gonna be needed there as well when we have storms and that sort of thing that would leak and shear in there. So my thought was, looking at something new for the whole entire structure would be a much sounder thing to me. You know, that's just my thought. That's a good thought as well, and it, it's a policy decision, you're all, I'm not gonna tell you what I'm thinking, just for what that's worth. One, I, I don't think you can find a Board of Aldermen that's gonna give up City Hall. I just, and I don't think it's politically.
I would pick up by the tenant that wants to go into the account.
Yeah, but the second thing, from my perspective, is, yes, there are some water intrusion problems, yes. We probably need to be thinking long-term after completion of this work, the City Hall's, historic City Hall, is gonna need some work as a future project. Probably ought to establish a timetable for that. But the advantage of this scheme is it takes half of that building out of the weather. And so we're solving half that problem, but we're not spending any money to rehab it. To, to take care of the water coming through these walls right here. Because it's all inside the building now underneath our arcade, protected from the weather, so. All of you know I'm biased, because you know I'm on your Historic Preservation Commission. And if you don't know, I'm on your Historic Preservation, uh, Commission, I, I am having to be vice chair. I, I'm telling you, this is a challenging project. Personally, as an architect, and then also as someone who has skin in the game, so to speak, in dealing with the HPC, you know, this is the best way, I think, that we can make the case of how you would expand, you know, City Hall. And, and essentially, our strategy, again, just to remind you, is that idea of the arcade, which is a contemporary idea that matches the day of the construction of the building as well. Your, your, your opinion, let's say, five years after that building is constructed, how soon would rehabbing the side that's gonna be in the weather, how soon would that project was starting to take place? The side that's gonna. You know, and weather? Yes. Well, I, I think it needs attention now. Oh, yeah. And so obviously, you know, the sooner the better. I, I don't wanna make this Mary's life too difficult here on her first day of not being paid on the job. She would probably have to help us do some forecasting in terms of, you know, how, how you want to stagger your, your loan. But that was just something that wasn't, you know, discussed, the rehabbing, you know, we're putting all this in on. And then, once that's done, another large cost comes up. So you say, woo, we could almost build one for that. Well, I don't think it would be quite as large as you're anticipating. I don't know. On old City Hall. You know, assuming we don't move laws, and we don't have to change major electrical and mechanical systems, that, that cost would be, I'd anticipate in the eighty-five to a hundred and ten dollars a square foot range if you were just to do painting and new carpet and freshen up, so to speak. Take care of the obvious work that needs to be done with wood windows, that may be leaking and water being driven through the masonry walls. We see some plaster, I've noticed in the conference room, you know, that's got spallings and that fluoresces maybe. You know, to kind of take care of those types of problems.
So you're saying that already factored into this six-point-five million dollar project is the plumbing and electrical in case it needs to be re?
Well, here's the historic building. We're gonna do all the plumbing, electrical, heat and air in this part of the building. That bathroom right there essentially eliminates all the plumbing in historic City Hall, so we've eliminated that problem as well as providing more flexibility for use of facilities, so that the number of people that actually use the building.
We don't have to, we don't have to stand in line anymore.
In the number you provided.
If that's already incorporated.
A very important thing is financing, you know, I do wanna ask Mary, where you're, where you're from, and some of the things that your other cities have done. This is general fund type expenditure here, and I'm very concerned, all, all the women here, it's about affordable housing in Newbury, but could you elaborate the demarcation between general fund buildings, capital improvements, and what your city has done, or other cities near you, as far as affordable housing? In other words, nine percent tax credits, or low interest loans, or state police credit union fundings? Have you had experience that in any way, funds like this would in any way compete with affordable housing? Or are they totally separate?
Affordable housing I've done in the past includes primarily funded money that came outside. It was not general fund obligation money, so we're not using taxpayers' dollars to fund the, the affordable housing.
Have you ever had.
It's all the block grants, so they were, they were separate pots of money, in, in my experience.
But the city does wanna be a little more aggressive about affordable housing, so typically, I'm not aware, other than like Charlotte, that up and above what grants and community blocks, they have actually done some experimental grants of their own internally and have adjusted their tax rates to measure it with it.
And commitment to that.
Yes, so, again, I know, I don't expect you to give me a, a, you know, to, to tell us the position of the city right now, but do you see, in your vision of coming into the city, that a project like this would compete with affordable housing? With the alternative financing opportunities that are available, that you are aware of?
I just did a quick math on my, on my cell phone, and this is a quick math. We, we financed this seven million, because I got six-point-five plus three hundred thousand contingencies.
Three hundred thousand's in there.
Okay, I did it on seven million, it's just a three percent interest rate for forty years, it's about three hundred thousand dollars a year, what our, what our debt payment would be. So, is that, can we, can we hold that? I don't know what our capacity is right now for new debts, but can we, could we, we're gonna look at doing something like raising it a penny? Do we raise it a penny and a quarter, or a penny and a half, and include some commitments, some firm general fund money commitments for affordable housing? I don't see why they have to be, they have to compete with each other, but, but that's gonna be a decision we'll make as we find out the cost that we're looking at for affordable housing and with our current debt. Do we have any debt capacity or debts coming off our books that we didn't, you know, utilize?
Who already spent it, man, that's been gone, we spent it with two and five charges.
Those, we may need debt payments every month, so every month, all of us.
Every time we start dreaming, we can't stop and say, we can't do this because, because the truth is, is we're not gonna be fire station. And the reason is, is the number of housing starts you're gonna get out there, the tax base, we'll probably have a rule of tax bases, the revenue stream is gonna more than support the expansion of fire safety in Newbury. So we can't just stop and, and base this on antiquated numbers, we gotta look at future numbers.
One other thing too, Mary, and I, I think you mentioned that this would be strictly general fund dollars. I think, in, in my mind, you correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think that you could probably spread some of this across some of the others, because you're, you're talking about departments that are functioning within the organization that are providing services to the utilities and solid waste, so forth and so on. So if you have that, and I'm not saying it would be a lot, but you have governing board, which y'all's budget is spread across the divisions or different, different utilities. You've got the administration department, you've got IT department, you've got accounting, you've got, so essentially, a lot of the administrative related functions, I think at some point, and you would probably, I would say, agree with me, that it's not strictly all gonna come general fund, there're probably gonna be some payments of, of shared service from the utilities. That, that would be my expectation.
I would, I would think you would say fifty thousand dollars a year on, on energy utility expenses. I think you're running four or five thousand down there, take what these old buildings are costing, and if you made a very green building, serines of fourteen and sixteen and that type thing, I, I bet you'd say fifty a year on energy related expenses.
You know, I was, I was kind of feeling like Jamie and Johnny for a minute there, maybe we should leave the building, the building somewhere else, you know, and leave City Hall alone. After Tripp was talking about the same, basically the same dollars, City Hall is the building that, that, you know, is, pardon me?
It's, it's the icon, it's our, our icon.
I, I mean, based, and then based on Mary's saying, we're talking three hundred thousand dollars in debt a year, I'm, I'm ready to, to vote, to move forward with this project.
I think we, I think there needs to be some clarification on my part. I'm not saying stop doing this, I'm just saying that when we say affordable housing, we spent a whole year for redevelopment, they did a plan. We wanna make sure that we have funds. Couple of meetings ago, we, you know, transferred some funds from some grants, but to complete that project, they need two million dollars. We sit here and present ideas to the community, but we need the money. So if we're able to go ahead and get, get grants, bonds, take out loans to upfit, I feel at the same time, we should also incorporate the idea of making sure that there's affordable housing bonds or, you know, dealing with, with the housing crisis and people that are living in, you know, homes that are not upfit right now. I just feel like, you know, you can do both at the same time, let's just make sure we're incorporating in that debt, because we have a way right now, even though it's not the best way to get people into City Hall. People are still living in homes that don't have electricity, or they're not up to par, or, you know, stipulation, right? Don't have homes from a hurricane, and that's, that's all I'm saying, so.
Good point.
We need to have, you know, an elevator, because one, we want more people to be able to come to our meetings. That's essential, because we just don't wanna be talking to ourselves. But also, at the same time, the citizens need to know that we just don't wanna beautify City Hall and then not beautify the community. That's, that's the only thing I'm trying to say.
Mary, or Mark, whoever might ask, answer this question. Talking about affordable housing, and I know this is way off subject here, but can you use taxpayers' dollars to do that?
No, it's, it's affordable bonds, Wilmington is doing.
Well, they're, 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 excuse me?
Wilmington Housing Authority.
Yes, yes, Wilmington Housing Authority is doing bonds, but they're part of their city.
And Mary had to step out for a few minutes, so.
Same thing, Charlotte, Charlotte does a bond probably every other year for affordable housing. And they, these, everywhere dealing with affordable housing related issues and, and bonds are a way to do it. But oftentimes, they are run through authorities and that.
And maybe that's the wrong wording, more or less making sure we have an adequate amount of money that we can put in redevelopment.
I think as far as the redevelopment, as far as taxpayer dollars, what taxpayer dollars could be spent on is, is infrastructure related improvements, like the stormwater improvement, or like, you know, street realignment improvements, or whatever it may be. Those, those are all different things that, that for sure, taxpayer dollars could be used to help entice economic development or, or an affordable housing developer to come in, because at that point, you could potentially defer some of the capital costs he would be required to do by doing that infrastructure improvement yourself. So those are all different kind of avenues in which you can explore to, to, to make that happen. The only issue I would say with bonds, yes, bonds, you can do, especially general obligation bonds, where the public has to vote on them. Those take a while to put together, number one, that you're talking about, it takes a while to put it together, get it on the ballot, make sure the wording's correct, you gotta, so there's a lot of things, and then also, you're putting that responsibility to the, to the, to the public, which may say, we don't want, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but they also, I mean, I look at it from a standpoint of, you're also an elected official, that they also elected to make this decision for them. So it's really kind of a, it's kind of a, what, different way you look at things. But bonds are used all the time in, in big projects, and, and quite frankly, this one, if you were looking at this and, and a huge recreation improvements or, or some other kind of things, a lot of times, you combine all these into a large bond issuance, and you have multiple projects that are accomplishing a goal or a strategic goal of what the board wants to do. That's oftentimes what is done. It may be transportation related, it may be stormwater related, it may be public safety related, all those different things. Those are all kinds of, of ways in which you go issue bonds. Typically, your bond, you wouldn't do it, I wouldn't do it, I wouldn't recommend to do it for a six million dollar project. What I would do is, is for a forty million or sixty million dollar project, where you have very large scale ideas and goals, and that's spread over a long period of time.
I agree, I just, you know, at the end of the day, we, we need an elevator, if this is what the majority of the board wants to support, we need to move forward, and I'll have to continue to do what you need to do, and then essentially, there's public hearing, so we'll also get the input of the, of, of the, of the community anyways. But I just, you know, for record, needed to put it out there, that, that's still top priority.
We could get to the point where we find out more exact numbers and make sure that we decide to make an elevator go one floor versus two floors, I don't know. And then, look at the other needs, infrastructure needs, and maybe that's the way we do it. We have four or five projects, and we go ahead and lump them all together, but I don't think what we're saying now is go ahead and spend the money. I think we're saying, get us to the next step. That's what you're looking for, direction to say, the next step.
Essentially, what, what you're getting at is, is Tripp has now produced, I guess, working drawings of what a concept of an annex on this particular site, as directed by the board, could potentially look like. And now he's gone, he went from the massing, now he's gone to specifics about, you know, can I fit all these departments in here? What does an office space layout look like, how are we gonna make the connection to City Hall, so, so forth and so on. Going to the next steps is probably almost, you're getting to the RFQ process, where it's gonna have to be sent out, because that number is gonna be larger than what many groups will allow, so that, 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 at that point, we're probably looking at an RFQ, for certain.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So this layout here, are we gonna look at two things, pulling them together, like just for the elevator? Get a price for just the elevator? I think we, we kinda did a price for the, the addition that's gonna be added to the building.
Yeah, we, we, we provided that when we looked at the three different options. And if I recall correctly, Tripp, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, just the elevator internally was one point three million dollars. If we were to take no annex, leave the parking, go into City Hall and try to find some shaft that we can put an elevator up, and tear out some walls and do this, it's about one point three million dollars. The other option was, we looked. The other option was, we looked at, it's on Pollock Street, where that little elevator area is, is just build kind of a, an elevator with an additional stair casing, and, and kind of almost like a shaft on the exterior of the building, so to speak, and make the connection, and that one was two and a half, I believe, that's what I was.
Is that a bathroom, is that it, right?
They had bathrooms, yes.
Well, I, I like the second, two million with the bathrooms.
And then, we added this price in to show the other, the other portion.
Well, you asked me to give you three ways to solve the problem. You were red, so we gave you three, three ways and three costs. And this was the selection the board wanted to move forward.
Just throw this out here, and I know there has been conversations during parking lot issues of the building across the block, if they, if we were to get rid of that parking and then that building, would there be a way to build a building there to incorporate everybody else and maybe have parking underneath?
Yeah, so.
And still sell these buildings and not have so much touch of City Hall?
The, the, anytime you do development, the most difficult thing is making sure you have land control. I mean, we can dream all day long, who wants, but land control's the most important thing. If, let's, hypothetically, if we had the property and combined that with the part of the lot that we have across the street, we would have a large enough space to where when we investigated it, it was about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy key hotel or whatever? One forty, I, I don't know, it's quite a key being rooms, okay? Anything that you do that's gonna probably be, and, and I'm, the key to it is to maximize what you can get on that site to make it a feasible project. In order to do that, you've got to also provide parking, just like we would for this kind of thing. So in order to have, if it's apartment living, you're gonna have to have parking there. If it's a commercial on the first floor or apartment above, it's gonna have to have parking. If it's hotel, it's gonna have to have parking.
But she's asking, if you took this building and didn't build it in a parking lot and build it across the street, that's what she's saying, build the building, the annex across the street.
So you're saying build the annex across the street.
Yes, and that's to incorporate parking, like a little mini parking garage.
I mean, you.
I mean, I could see millions spent on that, because one, you're alleviating some of the parking issue, and then you're having everyone consolidated over in the building. I know you had the idea of like that cost way to connect.
It'll never, it'll never be, I think you see. What you, what you eliminate with that is the potential to take two non-tax pieces of property and put them on the tax rolls. So what we looked at with the, with the project of whether it's hotels or apartments with commercial on the first floor, whatever, across the street, is you could get that back into the tax roll hands, and as a public benefit, you got a parking garage back behind it, whether that's one, two, three levels, whatever it was, it's based on whatever the use of that site is. So the whole point of that was to entice development and get it on private tax rolls so that we could actually collect taxes on it, because right now, it's sitting there, it's prime real estate in the middle of downtown, that's basically, you get zero money on it.
Mayor? Do we need to give direction?
Yeah, I mean, show hands of those that wanna continue with the, with the proposed plan.
It's just the process, right? We're just talking about continuing with the process, which would be sending out an RFQ for architectural services.
I think it's an RFQ, and then ultimately, it would get you to where you actually have construction documents and specifications that you could bid out if you want. Don't they say you have to bid it for a built thing? It's just, you would have, at that point, complete drawings with bid specifications and everything else.
I'm okay with that, because that doesn't, that doesn't commit us to the final dollar then, correct?
It does not, but it would get you through, it would get you through.
More specific confirmation.
Public engagement, HPC approvals, and finalized drawings.
Well, you have them, and Ms. Ford might not do it, five years down the road might do it. I'm good with Ford.
I just would tell you, I think, I know the faults of the board, I mean, we can't go over the budget, I mean, we don't commit eight or nine million dollars, it's not gonna happen.
Understood.
And the other thing I think everybody all realizes, once this brand building is worth to be built, you don't immediately want to start work on, it's gonna make the present City Hall interior look that much worse. So you just, well, spend a couple of three hundred thousand dollars on dressing City Hall up.
Six million, new building.
Is that not right on the menu?
I hear ya, but my, my old, my old retired age after I'm done with this, you know, I would like for that to be my project, I would personally like to take that on and find.
And pay for it?
You said finance.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna find ways to, to pay for it, so yeah, I'm happy to work on that, because I hate the government, this is what I don't like about government, it costs twice as much to do everything that goes in the private sector, and I just hate that it's that way, but.
Mayor, I would say to, to your point, sort of like a convention center, you couldn't have gone in and fixed a convention center and not fixed and upgraded all the finishes that's there now. With this, this project, really, I think what you're gonna be focusing on is, in the historic building, is gonna be the courtroom. All the other parts will be historic, they won't be utilized like they are today, so, you know, funding, yeah, you could probably spend some more money there, but I think carpet, paint, courtroom, refinish, you know, fix the finishes in the courtroom itself would kind of be the priority, I think everything else would just be, you know, after the dollar. That's my thought.
I'd like to make just one final comment, I'd just like to acknowledge a couple things. I do wanna acknowledge Frank Jerry Havens, who's here with us today. Jerry's been in New Bern now, what, twenty plus years, twenty-eight years, and he's been a lot of the motivation, his health has declined in years and whatever, trying to get up those steps at City Hall, and nobody appreciates the fine architectural structure that Paul Jerry. And his constant point to me is, I can't get in City Hall, I can't get in there. And I think our elderly, and we look at people like Ms. Sampson and everything, but Jerry, thank you for being here today, I know how important this is to you. And then I wanna acknowledge David Griffin, you probably don't know this, but this week it was announced by the North Carolina Main Street Program that David Griffin's going to be awarded a Main Street Champion, just as Matt, what words was, so.
Oh, Bill.
David and Billy Faulkner Berry, for those, for the, you got one issue too?
No.
Oh, oh, years ago? Well, so this is really good, you know, for our Main Street, their work that they're doing in our, our community, so I just thought I'd point that out to them a little.
Congratulations.
Main Street coming up, May, March eighth and then, eighth and maybe eleven.
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else on the annex this time? Do you want to recess, sir?
While we have on the counter, is it a recess?
Sorry?
Yep. I'm scheduled.
Thank you very much. There's things that we live with here that's going.
All right, remaining of the we have left today are our departmental reviews, kind of vision for the next year, as we did last year, we kind of just came in and each department head had an opportunity to share with you kind of their vision and the direction that they wanna move forward with items within the budget, and that will be included in the budget now, whether it makes it out of the budget cuts or not, that's somewhat depending on what the board kind of sees in their vision, if they wanna do, but ultimately, I do have to produce y'all a balanced budget. I know there's a lot of requests, generally speaking, the requests are anywhere from four to five million dollars over what the revenues are, so there's a lot of chopping, a lot of cutting that has to happen, and it's no different any other year than the next. Real quickly, so we'll go through general government first, and then development services, finance, fire, human resources, parks and rec, police, public works, water resources, and electric. We're gonna start with general administration. Some of these will be relatively easy, especially the ones that don't have a lot of changes, a lot of modifications in the budget. Some of them will be a little bit more detailed, so we'll start with, with general administration. No real big significant changes in the governing board or the general administration.
So is this saying that we are aggravating the living daylights out of Scott Davis, if he needs an increase?
No, this is saying that, this is saying that Scott typically does a two-year cycle, and Scott typically does CPI for, over those two years. So two years CPI has been, adds up to be four point eight, I think it was like one point seven and, and two point five or something like that. So essentially, he, he takes those two years, he did not give us an increase last year, so he's doing an increase this year, and he usually relates that to CPI. He, I will say that his current budget that he has, and that's typically all he charges us for, is still less than it was in two thousand, or whatever year it was that he started working for the board. That, at that time, it was three hundred and fifty some thousand dollars, or something like that, and I think he knocked it down significantly at that time, and through, even through the increases that he's had, it's not gone above that point. So, so that's Scott's request there, four point two. No other significant changes that I see, unless the board directs me anything that y'all wanna do within the governing board's budget that you would like me to include. The only thing I will say, I know there's been some discussion about the residency officer, or whether you include something like that. In speaking with Jeff, and he and I kind of brainstormed this a little bit, we thought that rather than put it into budget now, it's probably gonna take at least nine to twelve months for this whole plan, a process with the consultant, the RFQ is on the agenda for y'all to prove Tuesday night. So that will start the, the plan document process, our consultant whom we select will go through public engagement and everything else. At that time, depending on what the outcome of the plan may be, it may greatly sway the difference in how you write a description, if you want to add somebody, or even if you wanna add somebody at all. If everything's more project-based, oriented towards stormwater and flood wall, you may want somebody with a lot more technical base. If you want somebody, if it's more community-based, or business-related, or economic development related things, you know, that, you may want somebody with a completely different characteristic and the assets that they have to bring in. So it was our thoughts that you go through the planning process this year, and either at the time that the document is produced, what, based on their recommendations, you add an employee, or if it takes us, you know, nine to twelve months, it may be entering into the next budget season, so at that point, you would budget for whoever this person is that's gonna implement these strategies. That's the reason why you're not gonna see it in this budget. If the board wishes for us to do so, change that and we will. IT, as far as the general administration budget, they're requesting one addition of a senior IT technician position. As you know, technology's changing and evolving all the time, we have a new unit system we're implementing that includes the, the human resources modules, the finance modules, and the customer service modules. So not only that, they provide a lot of support for a police department on a consistent basis with their mobile units that we have in every single one of the cars, and those require continuous updates, so that they make sure that they have all the criminal information that they need whenever out of field. Same thing with fire and police, and then any other desktop that any of our other people use. We have a lot of cloud-based programs that we're using now to try to reduce what our capital costs are with regards to servers and the need for storage, so we've transitioned a lot of that, so that's helped out. But we've got, as you see, additional eighty, additional eighty computer users, mobile devices that we have, as far as people out in the field, between water resources, public works, inspectors, a lot of people out there now are using in-field technology to be able to do real time, to try to, try to make us more efficient with, with providing permits for development, try to, try to make us more customer-oriented and developer-friendly. So that's some of the things you're seeing. Skating network support in Jordans, it's very critical to them to know what's going on in the system at all times, same thing with electric, and just a myriad of different things that we have that continue, as technology continues to evolve, it's requiring more IT-based support. All the units for contract costs reflected in IT budget requests, that's a change from last year, just because it's easier to capture what that cost is and disperse it within the department to all the different departments based on the usage of the IT softwares. So we already have that split up in that specific department, so it's easy for us to distribute that. Some of our capital projects, obviously, these are just at the request stage, we still have to go through all of these, but our phone systems reaching the end of life, we're looking at that pretty large upgrade, and we're talking about, you know, every, every single phone within the city's organization. PD firewall replacement, two-factor log-on identification, we're running more and more, running into issues with security, y'all all the time having security alerts, some of y'all, Mayor, you've even had some recently with emails that you did or did not generate. So anyways, so we, we run into those all the time, those are always a concern, so it's very important for us to make sure that our log-ons are authenticated properly. And then we've got some cableing replacements we need to do in some of our buildings.
On that hundred and ten thousand dollars, I mean, is that new system, or are you looking at some type of virtual reality phone system, or what?
It's a great question, I wish Tony was here to kind of answer the, the technical ends of that. I know what you've been running, what is that, the old Cisco system, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, several.
Yeah, voice over IP Cisco system, so I think a lot of it has to do with just the newer technology coming out with that, and the fact that it doesn't get supported on software end anymore on, for, for the Cisco stuff, so you have to kind of do those upgrades at times. That's typically what you, what it means by end of life, that they're no longer gonna be supported through their, through our contracts with vendors.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're upgraded from this. I agree, I think it's, that's a reasonable amount, unless we go to a whole new system. But that, that's what you're asking, to look into something, second, second system, the price was?
I don't know, I haven't really looked about it, but I sat down and studied.
It's a lot of, and that's where, you know, that's where the tough decision is, at my level, when Mary gets there, and a lot of us sit down, and we've got four million dollars of, of requests over, you know, sometimes, and the lot of stuff matters, sometimes, you know, it, it, we have to try to let along for another year, because some things take an additional priority. So that's stuff that we'll review, you know, when you weigh things against another, sometimes there's winners, and sometimes there's losers in the budget process, that's for sure. PEG budget and operating expenses, increased approximately eight thousand to cover cloud-based off-site video backup storage. Obviously, we have some, some, all of our, all of our meetings are, are video, we have to store those. Anytime you're talking about three-hour board of altar meetings, I mean, you're talking about major, major gigabytes of file size, so we have a lot of those storage, especially now that they're, that the video is becoming more of an accepted archiving option for us, and people wanna see them, so that's definitely something that we've gotta look at. All the other costs are gonna remain the same. Capital projects that are potentially being looked at are the PEG video storage, and version from standard depth, high-depth broadcast on Sudden Link and Webstream, some of the movies, guys, move with that.
It's like me, calling you, the PEG's video storage, if we're spending eight thousand to cover cloud-based off-site video, what's the difference, and you're talking about PEG video storage at fifty thousand?
The PEG video storage at fifty thousand are the technology components, the pieces of equipment we need, the eight thousand is the cloud-based subscription that you pay for. So that would go in my operating budget.
So the fifty thousand dollars is equipment?
It's equipment, I just confused it, saying storage, you know.
Physical equipment versus, you know, the need to be able to do what she does, you know, physical equipment.
So we could put a cap on our.
Can I ask you a question about the conversion from standard definition to high definition? Does, does Sudden Link on that channel that we broadcast on, are they capable of broadcasting in HD?
Yes. It would require the additional purchase of a transmitter, and they force a PEG channel to absorb that cost. The good thing is the cost of HD, with everybody now moving more towards 4K, the HD transmitters are going down quite a bit in cost. For example, when we looked at going to HD three years ago, I guess, the transmitters cost twice as much.
Are we gonna get to a point where we're gonna need to then again upgrade to 4G?
Probably. It's also becoming more difficult to find standard definition components for a PEG channel, to buy them, because now people are getting away from SD.
Oh, Bobby makes a good point, I mean, more people not, we, it's really hard for us to know who's watching that channel versus other modes, and to spend this kind of money when we can do free through Facebook and those other mediums.
The, through some of the Facebook and web streaming, you would still need some of those common components to be able to do that, and be able to switch from our three courtroom cameras and that sort of thing. You would still need some of those encoders and cam control, switchboards and things like that.
But we wouldn't have to upgrade to the HD, correct?
You could remain SD if you wanted to.
What's the benefits, one way or the other?
Clearer, you know, a lot less blurry, that is one of the comments that we get on our. That is one of the comments that we get, um, on our screen, that, you know, it's not as clear. People are used to that crisp picture of HD.
But the double-edged sword of it is piles are bigger. And you see the other capital costs associated with cloud-based and, and off-site-based storage, and that's, that's the other issues with HD. Uh, so it really becomes more of a, of a quality of service that you want to provide.
What are the other peg channels in the state doing? Yeah, I think most are still SD.
They are. They, some of them are moving to HD on their, uh, Facebook and web streams. That really is a difference of maybe three or four thousand dollars in the cost to go SD. The only thing you're leaving out of it is the Suddenlink transmitter cost, essentially. Um, I did talk pretty significantly, significantly to Kinston. They've done start to finish, uh, through the cable channel, through Facebook and on the website, but they're one of the only cities I could find that had done everything. The other thing to keep in mind, the peg channel is nine years old this year. A lot of the equipment was purchased ten years ago and put into practice as it was being built. So, you'd have to take in the failure rate. Um, you know, that SD equipment, we have had Suddenlink look at it, they think it looks great. You know, we could have a failure next year.
Is there any way of ever finding out how many people actually tune in, view that?
Uh, we've asked Suddenlink, I can't even count how many times we've asked Suddenlink. Most public access and government access channels, they, you know, they don't have the time to supply you the ratings because your audience is small.
Yeah, because they don't utilize enough sense to take that money and upgrade what, you know, websites and, you know, live stream.
Yeah, but you don't have your own utilized. It's like, but I use that, uh, TV three.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we could find out what the, 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 the numbers are, but then again, we're dealing with Suddenlink, and I know you guys had a wonderful time, Bobby and the mayor, but then Suddenlink, so I mean, it's like an act of Congress to get some information from them.
And I'm also looking at it from the perspective of you not, everybody is not Facebook, Twitter.
Does everybody have to go Suddenlink in order to get our station? There's some people that even are on Suddenlink getting more.
Right, you can watch it on the web.
Yeah, who, you know, who does these?
And then having that data will justify whether we actually need to upgrade to HD or we need to...
Well, I support giving it that, but you have your numbers, but until then.
Mark, can you imagine, trying to find out that data for us? Do you have these strings to pull over there?
Uh, well, I certainly can try to call some of those contacts we had from our original discussion, but, uh, you know.
Good old Aaron.
May, maybe they'll, maybe they'll promise us they'll have it in three months and it'll take them nine to get it, so good natured. But I, I certainly can reach out to them.
I just, I mean, I don't, I don't have any idea if there's fifty or fifty thousand people watching that channel.
It's about fifteen thousand households. That doesn't tell us how many people. It's always been about fifteen thousand households.
Fifteen thousand, half the population.
Let me, uh, let me ask a question about the peg channel. Uh, over the last day with all the weather events we've had, has there been any activity for the peg channel as far as any public notices of allergies or anything else? Has, has pegged channel done anything? So, my, my recent answer to that question is I, I get a lot of complaints that what does the peg channel do that Facebook wouldn't do as far as, um, what are other cities doing? In other words, are there cities in North Carolina, how much would it cost to get us to that level that in addition to, um, Co-Rid and others that we are, um, making more public broadcasts for public safety purposes? How can we, or can we incorporate that into the, um, the scope of work of the peg channel? Um, I know that what I've seen mainly today about the weather events in the last day have been through Facebook.
Right.
And I, I just kind of feel like there's, there's things the city should and could be doing that we're not doing as far as particularly when we have catastrophic hurricanes or, um, northeastern, northeasterners or whatever.
Well, we did put some of that on the peg channel, but, so when you post something on Facebook, it can't automatically be posted to the peg channel, it's a separate idea of things. And that's the problem, it's, it's the timing and so, you know, they do better to switch to WCTI, NCT, whatever, ITN, those stations to get local information. We can't put it on the peg station. So, again, you know, spending this kind of money. Now, we have to store our videos, we need to broadcast and do that, but...
Well, that's good. I mean, I think the board should discuss for the ensuing year what, what scope of, um, of public, um, notification of, of, of specific, of nuclear events that we want to cover or don't want to cover or try to do a better job of. I think every time I've asked that question, we just pretty much stayed for what we're doing. So, a big question, um, what's the average, um, citizen doing to stay up on city government if they're going Facebook?
Right, because we, we implemented the chat, people get on there and...
Because they, they can look at archive information there, uh, they can't do that on channel three.
Right, and the only thing which I agree with, um, all the investors, you do have part of the population that doesn't utilize any type of technology except for TV and they may watch, watch there. But if, I mean, if we're going to continue to have the peg, I feel like we really need to bump it up and add some more stuff, like, I'm assuming you were on the big war saying in regards to alerting about the new, you know, the weather and stuff like that, because that entails another employee that specifically deals with putting entertainment and content on the peg channel, and what cost is that?
It's, I think it's a lot more complicated than that because if you're talking about putting weather alerts on, that means somebody has to go at one o'clock in the morning and go down and actually do it, you know? So, I think the weather alerts and stuff like that probably needs to be left to the WCTIs and NCTs and ITNs and Facebook and that kind of stuff because they do all that. You know, they send out the alerts and that's part of their D. Now, one of the things that I've noticed that you see on the local media all the time is that, well, every morning you watch the news, you'll see where there's somebody that's posted, um, Jacksonville or Greenville is posting traffic delays because of the road construction or something like that, you know? Uh, I would like to see more of that press releases done to the local media and keeping our people informed that the bridge is going to be closed for maintenance or something like that, you know, and...
Well, that seems to be getting done through Facebook. I mean, it happens, you see it on Facebook because, I'll be honest, I learn more on Facebook about what's going on in the city sometimes, you know, than through my own emails, but that is, I think it's difficult, like she's saying, she can't get it from there, but it goes back to then what's our peg channel for? It's for our me, you know, board meetings, not all the boards are meeting in the courtroom to, to be on the peg channel, and programming, you know? We've had some really good programming on there that, that people can look at, but should we continue to spend, spend money and expand it if that's all we're doing with it?
Today, there was a major, major, uh, traffic, um, operation, um, that got Martin King Billard in September, and the, it, no TV station's going to go out just for the, for city neighborhood and broadcast that little event right there, but it, it was totally changing the traffic patterns of, uh, that area of town today and causing quite a few delays. Uh, if, if, again, you would have to grow that service if we're going to do it because the public doesn't know that we do that. Now, two, three years down the road, if we, if we started doing it, then people would sit in and say, well, you know, I live in New Bern, hey, let's go to the peg channel and see what's happening. Oh, here's the, um, washout of, there's Bullard that's coming up, or here's the traffic.
Younger cities don't even have cable anymore. That's the problem.
I agree, but I would still, I get what you're saying, if there's a population that utilizes it, good, because like you have, you know, I don't know what we do for Moon Fest, you know, if you got a, the live Moon Fest on peg channels for the elderly that may not be able to come out and, and, and enjoy the festival. I can see if we're adding more content to it, I support it, but just, you know, the, the numbers for me, if the numbers aren't there, I don't support upgrading to HD. If we can maintain with what we have, it, you know, then I'm okay with that, but...
Well, do you pay, um, do you pay out, outsource to, um, manage the Facebook page for things that happen spontaneous or whatever? Um, is it a little wailing for staff to, uh, to do that, or do you outsource that to somebody that does it, that gets in the car, runs over there?
I think that's a great idea, you know?
And does it Facebook?
The college and get a student that's, you know, see, we can get an intern or...
I think each department does it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, each department does, because I, I repost it on my audit page. I appreciate everybody that, that, that does that, but I mean, you're right, you know, it'd be a good idea to maybe outsource that, posting things, because I mean, everyone is on Facebook, uh, majority of people are on Facebook, but...
Again, I think the problem with that is, is that if he, Charlie's real good about posting outages on Facebook and he's got staff that can do it when the outage occurs. If the outage occurs at nine o'clock at night and the dude's home somewhere, somebody got the, you know, that's the issue, then he can go ahead and, and get it done.
Right now, the reason everybody knows what was going on with the grid is Charlie threw it up and then there were a bunch of shares. When I was getting it all last day, it would be a share.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
Well, even the outage today was...
Well, it was like three thousand on that thing today. And then we showed a whole grid down from Port Airport Road, again, to Allison.
Okay.
So, so, Colleen, with us staying with the standard definition that we have now, we could continue on with the peg channel, uh, and we could, that would include that sixty thousand dollar cost?
Right.
And we still can provide a service to the population of our city that is not computer, have a computer in their home and Facebook and Twitter and all of that. We wouldn't have to include that sixty thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay? And it would not affect the capability of that peg channel, just the picture won't be as clear.
Until a piece of equipment fails.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
See, it's my understanding that it had to be the two hundred channels or the one hundred channels or something like that to be delivered in HD. Because I got like channel nine, and then I got channel one oh nine, and the one oh nine is the HD and the nine is the, the regular, is it called analog or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
So, do we have a HD channel on channel three?
I'm not sure where we would fall in the spectrum or if we would change. It would probably require us, you know, making that decision and then saying, you know, where do we end up?
Yeah, I reckon my, my, my question is, there's no need to find HD equipment if they can't broadcast it and transmit it in HD.
So, Mr. Stevens, what are you hearing the board tell you that they want in a peg channel next year?
Great question, Mayor.
They want, they want the status quo, with at least, at least amount of additional expense because a lot of people wanting to Facebook and other names and getting their information because they don't feel like the peg channel, um, it's not that it's reliable, it's that the, um, the city is probably not on top of the game like the city of Wilmington or others. And that's, that's okay if that's what we want to do. But, um, I think we could do better, but, um, you know, I think, I, I think we're no different than most cities. I mean, we're not really behind and we're not on top of the game either. So, now, what we're doing right now, this will come back to, I'll say, under the budget.
Hopefully.
So, what are you looking for from us as we go through the retreat on issues like this when money comes up, knowing we will re-discuss this?
I, I guess, if, if, to be honest with you, what, what I'm not hearing is a lot of consensus. So, if we want to make sure that something's in the budget or we want to make sure that something's not in the budget, then if, if it has become a very discussionary type thing, I mean, it, it really boils down to what, what is the board want as a consensus. I mean, I can make recommendations because I provide y'all a recommended budget, but like I said, I'm going to weigh Colleen's stuff on here, just like I do whenever I look at Tucson's or I look at, at Bobby Boyd's or I look at Jeffrey Jerry's. And sometimes it's based on the priorities of what the board wants to get accomplished. Right now, we've got some...
I think I'm hearing the board, for any outdated ten-year-old equipment, we probably need to update it, but as far as spending sixty thousand dollars or whatever to up, upfit and upgrade the image that is on the peg channel, I don't know that I'm hearing to spend that money.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Yes.
And, and also if, uh, Mr. Stevens is willing to buy America or get some data from Suddenlink, um, in regards to...
Well, I'll, I'll re-assure you, I'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah.
But, so, so, Colleen, we do need the eight thousand dollars to cover our cloud storage.
Yes, and that video storage equipment that was also under capital.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it's equipment, not storage?
It's both.
Because we're not the storage, oh, okay.
It's a literal piece of equipment and then also cloud-based.
Okay.
All right, uh, moving on to the next, uh, department, we have to develop services alternative to Mr. Jerry's for his department presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Um, some broad goals for the department over the coming fiscal year. We do have from our state legislature, some required, rather robust changes to our land development ordinance that Scott Davis and I will be working on throughout the year. We have another year and a half to get those implemented before we're not in compliance with the state statute. Part of that is a long-range comprehensive plan. Part of that one sixty D, um, requirements in that is that every municipality has to have an up-to-date comprehensive plan. If they fail to do so, their zoning code is, uh, is, is, uh, is not enforceable. So, we are currently under, operating under a comprehensive plan. We call it our Camel Land Use Plan. It is currently ten years old. Um, that ten-year number seems to be, um, where the state starts to waiver on whether our plan is updated or not. Um, when I try to get what that, uh, what that real number is, it's somewhere between ten and fifteen years. Um, so, we're at a prime, uh, position right now to, uh, either now or in the coming years, uh, a full update to our comprehensive plan. Now, that comprehensive plan can be simply an update to our existing Camel Plan, which would be relatively inexpensive, um, though not very useful, um, to the board to make the land use-type decisions or growth decisions in the future, or to the, or to the citizens themselves because it's pretty limited, um, public engagement in, in that Camel Plan. It's essentially a survey of what is developed, what is not developed, and what cannot be developed on, and that's pretty much what it is. Um, in wetlands and our water is essentially the only thing that, uh, pretty much is not available in our Camel Land Use Plan. So, that's a, that's a policy decision. We'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We have the redevelopment plan coming up, um, whether we, what parts of that we're implementing. We'll have those discussions that may be part of the budget coming up. We have the residency plan on next Tuesday. Y'all will be given Mark's direction to negotiate with our, with the consultants. We've gone through the RFQ process, um, ranked those respondents. We have a, a ranking of those and we'll be moving forward, but entering the contract with one of those respondents to start our residency plan. Could take anywhere between, as Mark said, nine, twelve, fifteen months in order to complete that. Also, we continue to provide support for eight boards within the department. That's, uh, two boards within the NPL. Everyone's familiar with HBC, Board of Justice, Planning and Zoning, our Development and New Committee, though it's not a board per se, does require a lot of, um, a lot of effort and a lot of communication between, uh, city staff and our external clients and customers in the development world, the Development Commission and, uh, Screen and Development Advisory Committee, which is required, um, as we are a CDG city. And that's just the community.
Can I ask you a question about that? I know that as a city, we try to refine things and, and make things more expeditious for customer base, et cetera. Um, several years ago, when the board of aldermen quit approving the plans and the zoning board did, the zoning board and their scope of work is concerned with one set of issues and the board of aldermen should be concerned with another set of issues when a proposed development is coming on board. Um, I think that, that is, has proved, has served, uh, the developers well and has continued to build a relationship between the city and developers to come to New Bern and do business. The flip side of that is that, um, there are some things that have, I've observed about that, um, and particularly when I have signed off on plans, before I do, I've always tried to get with the element, review the plan if they have issues with it, get with the, um, legal counsel or the engineer that designed the whole system and work through it. Um, but again... Um, but again, I, I think I've stressed to the board, um, concerns not specific about any development, but I, I, I am concerned that, um, that as the city continues to grow and we partner with storm systems, uh, retention ponds, secondary, primary systems, and the dynamics and the failures of them causes the tight material and the ability of the developer to pay the same engineer that designed it to feed the compliance officer. Um, I have some future concerns with the ability of the, um, the Board of Almond and the mayor, particularly whoever that may be, to sign off on this stuff and in the city be responsible for mass amounts of, uh, of failure. That is going to be a responsibility of the city. So, I just lay that, if anybody wants to pick up on that, or if you're comfortable with the way that is right now, I just wanted to point that out.
Are we talking about pipes now?
Um, pipes and road barriers and subbase materials and collars that are, um, sometimes not properly, uh, fitted or, um, uh, I mean, a, a host of issues that come up. Um, and again, it's not the duty of any elected official, particularly the mayor, to, to micromanage staff or, uh, tell developers how to, how to be developed. But you, you have some issues right now, and you're aware of one of them. Your ward, Armin Astor, that, um, the general fund and the taxpayers are, are paying for, for failures. So, again, uh, I, I don't know that I'm sitting here setting time to just recommend that we go back to the Board of Almond reviewing these things, but there's questions that I don't think are being asked at times by the plant, by, by the zoning board that will come back homeless. Um, and, and again, you, you guys are not necessarily getting direction, and you're kind of in a catch twenty-two, well, the staff, the elected officials didn't tell us what to do. The policy was set by the elected officials, the, uh, all these things are all set by the board, and so you guys have no choice but to implement what we've, uh, set policy for, and then when the failure comes, um, citizens and New Bern are going to eat that cost to the general fund.
I, um, I know that we've been aboard for what, two and a half years, and I know you brought this up. I think it, you know, is very important, basically what we're saying, I feel like maybe we need to, you know, really start looking into some of these issues and see how we can, you know, go over the ordinance and see if there's something that needs to be adjusted or, you know, uh, just like really dive deep, maybe having, I know we don't have to keep having meetings.
Is that the revision of the land use ordinance that you want to do?
Let me tell you, an issue comes up, uh, this, this is the kind of the no man's land, no woman's land. Um, the time between when, uh, development is built and the developer is the homeowners' association, and then that homeowners' association being taken over by the citizens, there's that gray area there. And what happens is that with the HOA, uh, being controlled by the developer, then the fox is in the hen house. And then when it is a certain number of, uh, homeowners are there and it's turned over to the HOA, well, then the HOA, unless they're on top of the game, they don't know that there are problems. And then the developer or builder built that last house and left it, he's gone Greensboro, then either the city, or the HOA is stuck with issues. And so, um, one solution I, I would have is that, and I don't know if general statutes allow it, is that in the very beginning, that a, and, and they supposedly have it, but while not there, I don't know, is there be a, a sensory HOA representative that is in lockstep with that developer that is in control of HOA? As in such a mistake and other, so they can be the...
HOA usually formed after all that stuff is finished and it's too late. So, you're saying acquire, acquire the HOA prior to the...
The developer is the HOA.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Typically, typically HOA is formed whenever the subdivision is created, when, and is required. At that time, the HOA, most of the time, the way it's written, is the ownership lies with the developer until a certain percentage of homes have been sold, and, and once that percentage is done, he vacates the ownership of the HOA and pretty much hands it over to people.
So, is, is it...
But that could be five years, that could be twenty-five years.
But the main point, though, you're saying is for someone to be evaluating the work that's going on from the city, so why wouldn't we try to look at implementing more employment with the city?
There's a lot there, there's a lot that the city has, is doing, and Matt, we're diving into the weeds on this one, but, I mean, Matt has an inspector out there now that we've never had before, um, which is making a great headway into these issues that the mayor's discussing, although issues are still there. Um, both Scott, Scott Davis, myself, and Matt have been meeting over the past week discussing our bonding requirements, because that's essentially where we can make these changes and improvements, fixing things that are broken before the city takes it over. Our bonding requirements are very flexible and are very geared towards the developer to be developer-friendly, uh, but we're finding that that's not always working in the best interest of the taxpayers of the city. So, we're looking at changing those and tightening those up. It's one thing, and the mayor's original concern is about who, who approves the subdivision plan.
Right.
In the past, it was, um, the Board of Almond. It was changed a few years ago to go to the Planning and Zoning Board. And, uh, we can, we can change that. Uh, we did a, we did a survey when, when we made that switch. We did a survey of surrounding communities and found that a vast majority of the communities, um, that approval was either at the plant, planning and zoning level, or even more so at the staff level. Having elected officials approve a subdivision final was a, was an oddity throughout the state. Not to say that it, it's not the right thing to do, it's just that we switched to be more in line with other people around us. Um, but that can easily change, um, with another, with another ordinance change. There, there's a lot of layers to this conversation and we're well aware of them, um, and we're working on trying to be responsive and trying to, uh, and, and trying to give the citizens, when they buy into a community, the assurance that everything's going to work once the developer leaves and the city takes over the infrastructure.
This is probably a conversation to take offline, because it can get deeper.
Yeah, we, we're fully prepared to have that.
Well, it's probably a good workshop.
Yeah, I agree. We're talking about affordable housing, so we want to get it right from the foundation, because like, like you, like the mayor said, I, I have one over in my area.
Sure.
That's, you know, they got it and houses are...
And then, and then, we do a workshop, the HOA representative comes to the city and then the city says, well, that's, that's the developer's fault. Well, then you see the developer, and the developer says, well, now that was, we told the HOA this.
Right.
So, anyway, um, we could talk about that for hours. I appreciate what y'all are doing, and I know that a couple of situations that were of concern, you, you changed policy on, or the board changed policy on. But again, I'm just looking for some additional checks and bounces to make sure that we move forward with quite a good, uh, future development, that we, uh, don't get caught like we are presently on a couple of development steps.
So, added step before you have to sign off on it?
Well, and that's, that's the, that's the other part of, of the discussion is, is I'm, uh, I'm, I'm required, I'm obligated to sign off on this, and, and if I know there's a, a sister development that's experiencing problems because, um, uh, street manholes are discharging through common areas of HOA, and when the HOA fails, then your street fails and your street floods because a private retention pond is backed up. And so, in order to get the water off the road, what does the city do? It has to go in and repair, uh, non-city-owned public railways. So, anyway, thank you.
So, this can be eliminated now, somewhat eliminated now since, um, Matt would just have over her staff an inspector in, in place.
A lot of the problems are being caught, yes. But it doesn't mean that our process is still, it can be a lot better. Now, the fun stuff. Um, we have eighteen full-time positions in the department, two of which are funded through our NPL, I believe six general fund-funded positions, uh, sixteen, sorry. Uh, there's one vacancy, uh, when I wrote this slide, the office was extended, it has since been, um, accepted pending Mark's approval. Remind me to talk to you about that one. Um, and, uh, this, I'll, I'll, I'll be requesting three additional staff members. Before I hear any groans, let me explain. So, one, administrative support for our community and economic development, um, section of, of the department. That'll also help Amanda out, but also help us with our minutes for those, uh, seven boards that we have to provide minutes to, um, which is a tremendous amount of staff time, and I am a terrible community staffer. Uh, a nuisance abatement officer to help with, um, the redevelopment plan, uh, the goals and objectives of, of that, and also just throughout the city. Our nuisance abatement officer is, uh, is very responsive and does a great job, and we can easily use another one in the community. And a GIS technician for Alice. Alice is the beginning, middle, and end of our GIS, um, program here in the city. Uh, she does an excellent job from providing tiny little maps to anybody to maintaining our database and, and, uh, and looking forward and preparing the city, um, to be, uh, always on the cutting edge of GIS, um, of, of what's coming next. And, uh, at this point of our growth as a community, um, it's time to expand, um, our GIS capabilities so we can actually get the most out of, of the great, um, program here that Alice has built. So, when, when, uh, just go back a little bit about the positions in these eighteen, um, FTEs that we currently have. Well, my, the year before I came here, um, planning and development had nineteen FTEs in it. That was before NPL, that was before community and economic development came. So, over that time, um, we've been able to trim that number down, uh, through attrition and cross-training and hiring some great people. Um, but knowing fully well, I knew, um, that this day would come, that I would be, uh, in order to provide the same level of service that we've been providing over the past eight years that I've been here, and our expanding roles, um, and responsibilities that we've had from NPO, um, to economic development, to CDVG, to redevelopment, um, to offer, it's time to ask for some new positions in this year's budget, and whether they get approved or not is up to market. Um, so, as far as revenues coming from, revenues have been pretty steady. Um, I'm anticipating a pretty modest increase in revenues. They've been going up, um, pretty steadily over the past few years, um, from our earning side. Possibly some rede, some, um, implementation funds for the redevelopment plan, depending on how that goes next, next Tuesday. As I talked earlier about, um, the new long-range plan and what that could look like, a simple update to the plan will cost probably somewhere no more than fifty thousand dollars, all the way to the full community engagement, um, you know, soup to nuts, comprehensive plan for the community and for the city, that will cost about a hundred and fifty thousand. There will be ways to dovetail a lot of the effort that will, that we'll be endeavoring on through the residency planning process, so we'll be able to take a lot of that data, a lot of that time, and kind of dovetail that into the long-range comprehensive planning process, and that will save time and money. But again, it's something that we'll, uh, we'll be trying to get accomplished in the next few years. Otherwise, our zoning will not be enforceable. Um, and we also, I'll be on the capital side, we're putting in replace one vehicle. We have a fifteen-year-old vehicle sitting out back that my staff refers to as the death mobile. So, it's on its way over to the garage for the second or third time, because the brakes are having some issues and it doesn't always stop when it should, so, uh, it's probably time to replace that one.
Like tomorrow?
Yeah. Nobody's driving it right now.
Oh.
Uh, but, so, uh, that is, that is, that is it. If you have any questions.
Hi, Jeff.
Yes.
Are you planning on rewriting or upgrading the, um, HPC guidelines this, this next bunch of years?
Not, not as you can, no, no. We just did a few years ago.
That's what I thought, but I talked to somebody yesterday that...
Um, we're, we're looking for a grant to assist with some HPC-related guidelines as they relate to flooding and storage structures.
Because I had a citizen who has a background in that, who offered to do it so that the city didn't have to pay. Is that money that's in your budget?
Uh, we're going for a grant for that one.
Okay.
It's simply, it's almost an asking-received kind of grant. And it'll just be really focused, it'll just really be focused on just flooding and those issues related to flooding, not, not the guidelines themselves.
I'll refer to that person.
Sure, or Matt, Matt's on top of it.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
Do you have a perspective on why the general assembly might be so concerned about revision of city zoning when, uh, a considerable amount of growth is in, uh, non-urban areas as far as being in the city limits, and there are many counties like Craven that still are not zoned? I mean, would they have a little more concern about, uh, land use of, of adjacent cities that are, are under trouble with no zoning than worry about revising zoning within a city? Are you getting any feedback on that?
I've never been able to understand why cities get the hammer and counties don't in the state.
When you're talking about the redevelopment commission, uh, implementation funds, what, what kind of funding are you speaking of?
It depends on, yeah, I mean, it depends on what's in the, in the plan itself. It could be some capital funds, um, it depends on, on how, what, what gets approved on Tuesday. So, we don't really have that answer yet. Could be some improvements to Main Street that we wanted to kick off really early in the process to show, you know, we can, we can unify that area, things like that.
But where were those, where are you looking for those funds to come from?
Those would be capital funds, but, uh, that would be out of the budget right out of general fund.
Okay.
At, at this point, we're rarely meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jeff?
All right.
Thank you. Since Mary has not technically been here, Jill technically is not here, we won't ask her to get in the hot seat, so, uh, we'll let her, uh, observe her, her second-in-command here and see how that goes, and no, no pressure. Okay. Hit the sound button, it's all yours.
Here's our twenty budget, um, position nine for accounting, four for warehouse, twenty-seven for UVO. We're not asking for any changes. Um, the SARS personnel just went for purchasing the warehouse. And, um, there's just not, there's very capital items, we're just continuing on with the EOP project, which is pretty satisfied at this point. Now, once Mary gets in and has a chance to review things, that is subject to change.
Is the, is the UVO portion potentially having some of those positions? I don't know if, are you, some people already over to Calro?
So, so, working through some of those, obviously, I'd love to end the, of this lady here behind us, who has many years of experience. I've been working with Charlie, we've been working on some things. Um, there, for sure, I've already made the decision, the metering's going over there, they're already over there, they're operating from over there. To me, it's, it's, that, that one's a no-brainer from the standpoint of we provide the power, we read the meter and, and do the interchanges, takeouts, you know, cutoffs, shutoffs, everything else, especially now that you moved to AMI. What we've got to work through at this point, what we've got to work through at this point is, uh, the billing portions and, and also the payment and customer service portions of the utility business office and how we want to structure that. Um, I, I'd, I'd be a little bit early on to say exactly what my thoughts are right now. Uh, we've discussed it, but I have not really got an opportunity to discuss it with Mary, and I would like to do that, uh, prior to me making the final decisions, which will be reflected in the...
So, if anything, this budget would probably decrease rather than...
Uh, well, either way...
If you take some of the positions away.
Well, if, if we, if, the, the positions, yes. So, what we've got to do is we've got to figure out, okay, are there positions that are, you know, fat? Do they, do they need to be reduced down? But, but first off, before you start thinking about any of that thing, you've got to start thinking about the organizational structure of the department and how the functions and if everything worked. And that's one of, that's kind of where we are now, thinking through, uh, some of that, eventually leading to what we, we could identify some efficiencies within the department. Either way, in the budgetary process, it doesn't really matter because most of, if not all, actually all, of the utility business office functions are paid for by your enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, electric, and swamp, uh, and sawlings. Because they're the, they're doing the work of, uh, the utilities in paying or billing and receiving payments for them. So, it, either way, it, it, it comes in the fact of, it shows up in the finance department's budget now. Um, if it, if certain portions of it were to move, say, to the electric department, those would be reflected in the electric department's budget, but ultimately, the, the money's going to wash out about the same unless we reduce in operations or reduce in, in staff, which is still yet to be determined.
So, so, I'll, I'll make this comment, I'll be the unpopular one. So, with twenty-seven in the UVO, it's extremely heavy. So, Jeff's asking for three people, for example. So, if Jeff, if there was some opportunity in the UVO office for an employee whose position could potentially be eliminated, to shift over to a different department, you would offer that to internal staff as an opportunity if they have the skill set, I'm assuming. offer that to internal staff as an opportunity, if they have the skill set, I'm assuming, to fill those positions. But we would need to keep in mind that those positions are currently coming from the utilities enterprise fund that we transfer to a general fund, which means you've got to find money in the general fund to pay for it.
Completely different, Jeff. I mean, development services, fire, police, parks and recreation, all of those functions are all general government functions which would come out of your general fund. One hundred percent.
If I had given time with four hundred and sixty employees to four hundred and seventy, how many vacancies do you have on?
I'd say we probably run, what, about nine or ten? Do you work five at ten at a time?
Totally.
Vacancies like on a rolling average, how many do we have?
About twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Police department's about ninety percent of that.
That's, I think, we have the four. And, you know, it comes, that's come from a lot of different things. I mean, you, like Bobby Boyd would say, he had three people retire within a month or another, and I mean, you hardly have any attrition in fire department, so he had three vacancies at one time. So I mean, there's a lot of different things you have. We just had somebody retiring in the police department. Some people leave on their own accord, some people don't leave on their own accord.
Anybody else want to add?
Sorry, again, thanks for everything you did.
All right. All right, so next up will be Bobby Boyd, and he's got what he has promised to be a thirteen-minute presentation. We shall see. I want to time him, I'll put the clock on.
I want an alman, Boyd, so he's good.
And we're gonna see it.
Hey, don't be, don't be taking on our battle of the...
I'll break your time, so...
We try to be done by five o'clock, so whoever can get it so fast.
Whether I go or not, I got to say what I got to say right now, and then after that, I'm gonna move on through it. But yesterday was a milestone for me. My twenty-ninth year, rear firefighter was yesterday. I had additional five to six years of volunteer with this same department before that, so I got thirty-four, thirty-five years in this great city and being part of this department. And I thank the manager and the board for having the confidence in me about five years ago, appointing me as fire chief, and I hope that I can continue to provide the leadership that needs to be there.
I just do like the tire on.
What about the guy that hired you?
That...
I was just gonna say, he has some little shoes or flip flops to fill, so...
All right, so just keep going so I can make my boss man.
That is helpful.
Well, I'm sorry. But basically, today, we're gonna be, I'm gonna provide you some goals of where we are. Give you some data from where, from two thousand and nineteen. I'm also gonna show you some things that we have identified, some gaps in coverage, and what we think we need to do both internally, externally, to correct some of the gaps through all different ways and also with some personnel. So basically, UBO Fire Rescue Strategic Plan objectives along with goal places of high priority on fire prevention, rescue, emergency medical services, and fire suppression. Build, strengthen, improve, and advance the fire and rescue service delivery system for citizens of need and understand the importance of response times for saving lives. We also approve service delivery by determining strategic location and design of fire service facilities, performing objective analysis of current fire stations to determine current future gaps in coverage, maintain adequate staffing structure for emergency operations, support staff and non-emergency programs through the fire prevention administration, determine best staffing structure that mirrors other growing fire departments, incorporate the National Fire Safety Association, the NFPA, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, ESS. And we're also glad to say after five years of some hard work that hopefully we're going to obtain accreditation through the Center of Public Safety Excellence, March of two thousand and twenty-one. Current data, we, of course, we had over nineteen hundred inspections and I had to report for giving us a inspector a couple of years back, that's helped us to do back turns. Number of investigations is down to about twenty-seven. Number of permits is about fifty-eight. Public education, we educated over eight thousand people in two thousand and nineteen. We're sure to continue to try to improve that, and we understand that fire prevention and education is our number-one tool in reducing everything. Smoke warrant, we installed a hundred and sixty-three. We recorded over twenty-nine thousand hours of training in two thousand and nineteen. Did a maintenance of flows of over fourteen hundred hydrants in two thousand and nineteen. We performed maintenance and updated keys and all locations with knockspots, and did about a hundred and thirty-two pre-plans and updates and removed. Everybody understand what a knockspot is?
Yeah, I was just here to ask you that.
Basically, a few years back, we created a new system where a new business comes in, they put a knockspot up on the wall that has their keys in it, and we have a key in a box that can only be opened by radio transmission, and it's reported. That keeps us from tearing up doors. Basically, if you've got a law of mativation going on and you can't see what's in there, and somebody's not there with a key, and we're concerned there might be a fire, that allows us to be able to give an opening without tearing the door open. It's been a great system. So we, but what we have to do on that is, because managers change, they'll change the keys in there, so we periodically got to go and make sure the keys are current. Incident data, we had a thousand and ten calls in headquarters area. It was actually decreased, but that was due to hurricane influence. If you go back to two thousand and seventeen, there was actually a thirty percent increase. So most of that, like I say, in two thousand and eighteen, we had two, almost three hundred calls just in that area. Incident for Elizabeth Avenue was seven hundred and ninety-nine, it's a ten percent increase in two thousand and nineteen. Total incident for Thurmond Road, it was two hundred and five, we had a thirty-one percent increase.
I see most of them are medical-related, though.
Yes, it is. A lot of, a lot of, I'd say about fifty to fifty-five percent, even closer to sixty percent of our calls.
Is that just the city, or is that mutual aid included?
That's mutual aid too. If it responds out of that district, no matter what, if it's mutual aid or not, it's counted as an incident. For heat initiative one, we've got the one C, initiative four, we've got the four D. Analyze the performance for each district with each of the following criteria: baseline and benchmark, response times, define areas not meeting performance objectives, perform an objective analysis of current fire stations to determine current future gaps in coverage. As you know, a couple of years ago, we adopted NFPA seventeen-ten as our benchmark time. This is where we are currently in each one of the stations. I highlighted a couple of them that we need to pay attention to, that kind of red flag committee, that's the second dude in Thurmond Road, he bought it, driven through James City, trying to get to the Thurmond Road station, understands that's a, that's a determinant itself, so that's why that number's down. And then the sixty-five percent for first dudes, again, Elizabeth Avenue is grown, it's seventeen, forty-three, fifty-five, and that's why those numbers are down.
Second dude was how many minutes?
I'm sorry?
How many minutes?
That's four minutes. That's four minutes for NFPA, so if you can first do.
Now, this information, does this include the, where you actually don't come out, but it's like the ENT that comes out? Or is this specifically for the fire truck command?
This is where the fire truck rolls out. Residential growth in two thousand and nineteen, fifty-one percent of residential property is Elizabeth Avenue, car blocks area, well, another four percent Thurmond, and then another nine percent growth in headquarters. Really stood out to me thanks to Alice, she provided me the growth value. Even though Elizabeth is twenty-four homes larger, I mean, twenty-four more homes being built, the Thurmond was almost double, which made me look at it even more so. Why is that occurring? Average homes being built, Elizabeth Avenue area, response areas, somewhere between fifteen hundred to two thousand square foot, where the homes being built in Thurmond Road, response this area, twenty-five to four thousand square foot of homes. And that's why there's so much difference in the cost there. Commercial growth in two thousand and nineteen, we had forty-eight percent of commercial growth in Elizabeth Avenue, thirty-four percent was in headquarters, another eight, excuse me, in Thurmond Road, and another eighteen percent in headquarters. Elizabeth Avenue, we all know why that's going seventeen, four, or through there, I mean, all the commercial growth, that's why that's a lot. But what's catching my eye in Thurmond Road, it lifted last year, I meant to put it in here, but, you know, it's quite a bit of growth. Thurmond Road's starting to see it now, that's because there's a lot, you had the Harris Teeter come in, you've got several other places that are happening, so I think next year, you'll see even Thurmond Road's starting, catching up with Elizabeth a while, but I think it's still starting to see some more growth. All right, we want to maintain adequate staffing for emergency operations, support staff and non-emergency programs, including fire prevention and administration. We want to determine the best staffing structure that mirrors other growing fire departments, and again, we want to incorporate NFPA as less than we can. And that tells us we need fifteen firefighters on small residential structures. When I looked up what small residential structure, I said, what is that? Subjective to me. Now, look it up, and it's anything below two thousand square foot. So basically, they're telling us we need fifteen people on anything that's two thousand square foot or less. Go back to the previous slide where we talked about Thurmond Road, what we said about those homes. So that tells me, as a fire chief, when I'm looking at planning things, that I need more people for those size homes. Also, did a survey of some benchmark cities that were close to our population. If you look at the average, you know, we're right at average of thirty thousand. Square miles, we're quite a bit, in the twenty-one, average of thirty square miles. Number of fire stations, four, with the average of thirty-three, and we're almost doubling the square miles of coverage for the station.
Go back that side, man. Everybody needs to make note of that. The square mile covered per each fire station, the very last column, look, look at, start at the top, three point three, three point seven, four miles, four miles, five miles, and then you get to the very bottom where New Bern's at, ten miles. So that means that each one of New Bern's fire stations, they have to cover a ten square mile area. Well, one thing I don't know, there was like, one time, you had Fort Totten, and you had National Avenue. Now, obviously, the size and the functionality of those stations, we, you know, I don't know what they are for all those benchmark cities, I assume they're, they're standard-sized. Well, they used to be all at least two base stations, is that what you're counting?
Might only have one apparatus in it.
But at least two base. Most departments now do. I understand what you're saying, and I understand that's, we're off the mark there, but same time, there, I don't know about the, we ourselves voluntarily went from four stations down to three when we built the main station, right? So that number itself of the...
Yeah, but a lot of that due to the location, proximity, you know, of that. I mean, basically, you've got two stations on top of each other, you really are not, you might have four stations, but you're really not getting credit, because you're not strategically locating those stations outside in areas.
And that's been over twenty years ago that we did that.
All right, now the hard part. I've been doing this for, I think this is even the fifth or sixth year, and every year, I mean, I've come to you with the requests for a fire station. And I think, you know, as a whole, that everybody here understands that there are gaps and there are covers, and we need a fire station. And I think the big question is when and how. I think it's what happens. There are a few things that have occurred, have happened since the last time I presented through this, and I'd like to bring this to your attention. Number one is there are two new proposed construction efforts beginning soon in and out of the western New Bern area. Two hundred and fifty homes to be built, hopefully, in the next little bit. And also, next week, as part of the plan review, there will be a large apartment complex that's going to be proposed, being built out there, that's five stories tall, that's probably supposed to be three hundred apartments. So that, that kind of stuff is, we're looking at in...
Where is that?
In western New Bern area, which used to be Craven Thirty. I mean, that's up the plan review. I mean, again, you know, I'm just trying to keep my radar on things and things that are occurring that have changed. And of course, the other thing that I noticed that's different than the last time I presented this was the south of Burney corridor, the first do out of Elizabeth Avenue Fire Station. Typically, on the, if you do the heat map of where all the calls are happening, it's been occurring on south of Burney, you know, within a mile of the fire station. So we've been, our times have been fairly decent, but now what we're seeing is happening is down seventeen, we're starting to see more calls, forty-three and fifty-five, which that's why you saw that sixty-five percent in that previous slide. I mean, I think if you just went to what historical data was in the past, I think this number would have been higher. So now we're starting to see this call continue to do that. But I want you to understand too, this is, this is, my job is to present to you of things that we need to, gaps that we may have in our services, and what we think we need to fill those gaps. And after that, I mean, that's me, but I want you to also understand, we have worked diligently, I feel like, on things to internally and externally to reduce those gaps too. So it's not just this. We've got the gaps here, yes, the fire station's going to help us fill it, yes, but we are doing other things. And one of those things is, and I'm very proud of, to be a part of, and that's, we've been holding special meetings with the county fire chiefs forever, but for the past six months, we've been really, really hard on improving our mutual aid plans. This past Wednesday night, we had a meeting, and it was a milestone as far as I'm concerned, because every chief was there except for one department, and they had a part of that search, and that's the only reason that was going on that day after, and they weren't there, and their command staff was there. So one of the things we did was, we went around the table and said, all right, what do we want to do to make this better? And we did a roll call and asked if everybody was on board on moving forward with the mutual aid plan, and everybody agreed. So it's not just about proving the fire, the fire side thing. So we came up with a way to put together a resource list that we're going to go through in emergency management. So basically, every department will provide that list of resources to them, and now we'll bring that back to the table and do a plan. There's no sense, for example, there's no sense of having a swiftwater rescue team in every single department. There's no sense, most departments probably can't even afford it, but we need it in the county, right? We need it in our city, we need it as a community. So why not have us have this, that they can be trained in swiftwater, and they can come augment our teams, or vice versa? We might not want to do land searches for resources, but Vanceboro's got all the resources, but we want to have our personnel trained, so now we can take those personnel and be a part of those, the land search team. So I think, I'm really think it's, I think you're really going to see some major changes coming in the, in our community and the whole, and I think, after I talked to Darrell, Raina, which is a DOI, there's a good possibility where all of them are already just from this one project that we're working on or something. And of course, we continue to still utilize fire departments and all stress fires above Brute Origin, and we continue, and we've responded to their help and assistance about twenty-five times. And CAD to CAD is occurring, as a matter of fact, I just talked to Marquise just a minute ago, and there's some testing on that today, and again, that's going to eliminate some of that timeframe too. So we are doing some things internally and externally to try to reduce the times and bring us into compliance and reduce those gaps. Next hard one is, is six additional firefighters?
Well, chief, on that, on the nine-one-one response, I know that we talked, you know, the police versus fire, and, you know, a couple of years ago, when I was known about that with a lot of your chiefs, and how are we doing, working on the nine-one-one response?
We're, it's better. I mean, the EMD and EFD set us back just a little bit because there were some new protocols, some tank changes happened, but we're getting better with it, but you've got to understand that they've got a high turnover, and it's like they're constantly trained, but there is progress being made, and to be as long as progress is being made is something, we're heading toward our objective.
Is there anything the city needs to be looking into to assist in, in the response time at the nine-one-one level, either personnel or...
Personnel would be, personnel's going to be the question. I mean, we're barely making, and I would, I would refer chief on that, but personnel, because what's happening now is they're getting inundated, and for example, instead of having a designated person for fire, they might have one person take the call and then, and then back forth, really should be done if you do it correctly, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but if the call comes in, should be another person already over there kind of sending out the dispatch to get things moving, and unfortunately, they're not able to do that because of the number of people and the turnover that they have.
But probability-wise and statistically speaking, are there certain, you know, obviously certain times of day where there's more reponderance of that type activity?
I would refer to that question, because she's the expert into that, and so is the chief, so. The chief's kind of seen it, but from my perspective, what we see on our part of it is the number of people.
Well, and back to mutual aid, and again, I know we've been through this before many times, talking about nine-one-one. As far as calls coming in, you know, there's, there's Elizabeth Avenue in New Bern, Elizabeth Street, how long, and the way that all routes and all that. and Elizabeth Street, Havilock, and the way that all routes and all that, is there any call sharing in our 911 that, again, looking at the volume, are we, are we paying for and providing 911 that's routing to us, that is more out of the city, that we could work some kind of accounting, pro-rata type of reimbursement, that we can increase the personnel to increase the reliability and response time?
Again, I'd have to refer to Chief on that.
Well, I don't know that, even though it's always easier about the route.
Well, it's, I mean, if it's, if.
You're, you're telling us all about it, right?
It's certainly true.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're the experts. I, I'm looking at it from the fire side of things, and they, they understand more, I mean, that's, that's kind of, that's under her jurisdiction.
Or mutual aid as well? With the mayor's something on it?
Now, now, the CAD to CAD part of it, you know, you understand what we're talking about with that, right?
I give you some detail.
Okay, CAD to CAD, basically, in the past, you'd be in Tarna, you'd make a phone call, and it routes, because they're on a cell phone, it routes to the county. So the county would then have to actually get on the telephone, call New Bern, pay that same information that they just collected, and say it in verbal.
Wasting precious time.
So this, what this is going to happen, they can push it immediately, as soon as it come in. So all that information that they had to take, all that time to sit there and talk to a person, or wait for them to answer the phone, it's going to be automatic, invite a person. And I think it's Havilock, the county, and the city, all, where you just experimented today, to make sure they all talk, right?
Right.
So again, that's, that's just going to reduce that amount of time from the time the call comes in until the time we can get there.
We, we have talked about this in a few retreats, and I think it's really important, because I'm going to tell you, because I meant to get with you, it took 10 minutes for someone to come to my house when we called, and I was pumping on my dad's heart, this was three months ago. And I forgot to, to talk to you about it, because the fire department, or wherever the mutual aid is, I'm literally right there by the Elizabeth Avenue one. So I feel like what you just said about the process of, my husband's on the phone talking, and then they have to get the information, that's ridiculous. So I feel like this has to be the year 2020 vision of tackling some of these things we keep talking about. And I know the mayor has been big on it, I know the mayor's been big on it, about consolidating or getting more staff, we need to pay more money for the, the 911 center, or whatever we've got to do, I feel like we've really got to sit and have a conversation, because the safety of our citizens, it's got to be at the top.
I think what I'm saying, put the line on one center.
Right, I mean, we, we got to have these tough, these tough conversations.
I'll tell you this, and I mean this with all heart, whatever it takes to provide the best search for, for the citizen to get done correctly, and then the right process and method, I'll support 100%.
Yeah, me too. Yes, it is. And I think, did you all get anywhere with the county, was that on your list of topics? The 911 center, did you all talk about that?
This is, yes, we've talked about it. I think all three boards prior have talked about it. The issue is, is the coding that the police department uses versus sheriff's department, is the radio system that we have versus the radio system they have. So if, I, I would say this, if you are looking to consolidate 911 as a call-saving initiative, it's not going to happen. If you're looking to consolidate 911 to improve the service.
Yes.
And spend more money, then yeah, you could probably consolidate it and move forward.
Yeah, and I'd say the second is most important.
If, if I can add, as Chief talked about, CAD to CAD system, that's what we use, we're a big part of Fairfax County. And when someone called in and it went to Fairfax County, the Fairfax County dispatcher would take all the information, but it's just like our dispatcher taking it, because all they did was hit the button, and it goes straight to our dispatcher, and that's what he's talking about. So now, it goes to Craven, goes to Havilock, they would still take the information, and so if ours, if dispatcher is taken, and it goes straight to our center, and it gets dispatched immediately. So as far as time-saving, it, it's kind of like consolidating in a sense, but it's not consolidation. So that CAD to CAD, I think is, is important per, per step, and then we just need to get terminology and stuff down, as far as like, if we ever going to have a true 911 center, but as Alman O'Gorman said, you're not going to save any money, because you still got those admin calls, which takes up the bulk of the calls, which makes you going to still need people.
Right. And, and there's one more key thing, too, that just happened, remember, the run card and dispatching through ABL, which that means, instead of dispatching a fire station, if an apparatus is riding down the road, that's where we're headed to, that, it will kick up, that that apparatus is right here beside your call, and it would dispatch that apparatus rather than looking at the station, same thing with police officer, to wherever it closest one. Well, back to the discussion I had with the county fire chief, we're looking at trying to do that as a whole, because you've got Chelsea Road, you've got the vineyards, which is in the city of New Bern, which are duplexes, right across the street from their fire station. So why not have it in the system and have a plan put in place that they're a part of our run card? Now, they're both their fire station, they may not be there 24/7, but it might be that one call that they're having their meeting.
Otherwise, that's your way.
And you've got 10 people, you've got 10 people right across the road, so you've got a 30-second response time. So that, so we are trying, and I know I'm asking for a lot, but we are trying things to, to make things better and try to reduce some of those gaps internally as much as possible. And if something like that occurs, then you know about it, please call us, because that way, we can go back and look at that call, we can pull that call up and find out exactly why it took 10 minutes. Was it an error over here, or error over here? So anytime that, you know, and we constantly go back and look at our data, just, we pull out anything that's above our, our NFPA, and pull out, so why did this happen? And we have our, our communication meeting, which has been great, that we meet and we discuss how we can make it better.
And if, I know this is the chief's, if you don't mind seeing.
Give me some other bits.
As far as service to our community, the emergency police, the emergency fire, and emergency medical dispatchers, it's a huge improvement, in that before, our dispatchers would, telecommunicators would just take information and dispatch officers. Now, they have a protocol to ask, what's the emergency to gain vital information for first responders to be prepared for when they arrive on the scene. So it's, it's much better. It sounds to the caller like, why are you asking all these questions, send, send an officer or send a fireman? But they're in route, we're gathering data as well, is it a gunman, how many guns you have, which way did it go, all that stuff. Before, all we did was just, your name, phone number, address, okay, someone's on the way. So we've really improved, and that leads to what the chief was saying, as far as why we really need to increase staffing and that constantly, because now we're getting a lot more information, and they're doing a lot more things than they were doing in the past.
What's the number of communicators, telecommunicators you have now?
We have 14, I believe.
Exactly.
And I think before I got here, it was up to like 19, 20.
What is recommended on the, the call volumes?
I'd be honest with you, Chief, I'd have to, Alman, I'd have to look back at what the DOI, when you did the inspection, but I, I've got a report for it, so it says on how many people.
Do you all know how we scored on that?
Yeah, I mean, we got like, it's about half, half credit, I think, for the number of personnel, is what we, we kind of scored us. We improved in some other areas, so it didn't hurt us as bad.
Right.
But the number of personnel was about half credit.
Weren't we having an issue with turnover rate with the, because the massive amount of calls as well, though? I know we just, I don't know.
It's a tough job.
That's what I'm saying, it's a very.
My hat's off to them, this, when you think about dealing with mercy in front of, now you're dealing with mercy over a phone, that you can't do anything to hopefully talk them through. Well, we just saw in our, the other day, at our ward, where they, they made a difference, they got CPR started, and that's part of what saved that, that gentleman's life, is they were able to get CPR started. They got a phone, we had at our wards.
And before, again, they would just take the name, address, and sit there, and now we're giving CPR instructions, now we're giving instructions on how to deliver a baby. We're doing a lot of stuff, that type of stuff.
You know how we do our promotional thing with the PD and fire, we, we recognize the telecommunicator, some firefighters, and some DNT personnel, and they, that made a difference, that saved a person's life, and it all started with that telecommunicator.
Oh, okay, I thought you were saying someone needed CPR.
Actually, talking that person through CPR.
That CAD to CAD is probably the most valuable thing, which we've done years and years and years. I mean, to be able to dial 911 morning, and it goes to the county dispatch versus going to the city dispatch, and then that person is sitting there watching their loved one is in trouble, or their house is on fire, getting put on hold while they transfer, that's, that's terrible.
Yeah, I do have to say, they did really well, because my husband was just calm, on the phone, they were talking through, so I can imagine what they go through and what they have to hear and deal with.
Chief, a question for you, I look forward to this retreat every year, because it's like a fire lesson, we usually spend quite a bit of time on this. So I, I've learned over the years that when there's a fire, you have to send a certain number of personnel.
That's correct.
From a medical call, is there a requirement on how many personnel you have to send to a medical call?
Too minimal, four recommended.
Okay, so, when, when you go back to, you don't have to, but when you go back and look at your, your chart of your calls, Alman Bingo brought it up, that a lot of our calls are medical calls. We're, I'm assuming you're running six guys in a truck to a medical call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what are we doing?
Right now, that station, and I'm going to get into this a little bit here, what we're, would you like me to just answer the question, or would you?
No, you, you, if you're going to get into it, that's.
I mean, and that's, that's part of what, I was going to kind of tell you where the six firefighters, how they're being utilized now, so I was going to start with that station. Right now, we, we've got four people on the engine, and we took our old support truck and put it out, and put the other two on there. So basically, what we've got now is if it's a full alarm, they're there to augment each other. If it's a medical, those two guys are gals, or, you know, go to, go to medical call, and that leaves me four people on that apparatus for that first do on alarm activations, where I've got to have an apparatus and four people. Now, it's, it's working, I'll be honest with you, it's working, but what's happening, and I think you'll see here, there's some other factors that have come into the picture. Now, I'm all about, you know, this, looking at maybe some quick response, but I'm very adamant that we don't split up company to make that work. I mean, that's almost addition, too, and, and yes, it would take the wear and tear off a fire apparatus, and yes, it would help us in some other areas, but, but if you split up an engine company to make that work, what's going to happen is they both got to go to the alarm activation, so now, instead of having one vehicle ride to that alarm activation, they've got to take two, that same alarm activation, put there again, it's about that one apparatus and four people in four minutes. All right, so now, we're talking about the Turner Road Response District, we all know the issue that we've got with the highway currently, and it's getting ready to be worse, but again, with that temporary, I'm hoping the new flyer, to be honest with you, will create us a quick response, and we will have reduced in time, but right now, I know what we're facing. I talked to a lot of other fire chiefs around the state that have satellite annexation, and it's a nightmare. I'll be honest with you, it, it is a nightmare for emergency services, because you've got a piece of the city sitting out five, six miles outside of the typical or incorporated area, that you've got to provide services to, and it's a nightmare, and they're facing the same dilemma. It's almost like that you have to look at it, become self-sufficient, for whatever resource you use, whether it's voluntary, your own resources, or other, you almost kind of got to make it, you know, self-sufficient, and that's kind of where I'm trying to go with this. But one of the things that has identified, been identified to me is the, and that just came to my attention, is, just like we talked about the apartment, now, we're talking about assisted living, it's hopefully going to be going out there, their proposal of that, and, and along with other, other things, anytime you have more than five structures that are 35 feet in height, or either require more than 3,500 GPMs, you're required to have a ladder service company, okay? Now, we've gotten by somewhat with that now, until this assisted living came into the picture, by doing a half-credit on our truck that's out there, we do half-credit for, for a ladder service company, and we do full-credit for an engine company. I know that's probably what he's talking about, but that's just ways of what, that you can get scoring, you either can score 100% engine, or you can do vice versa, you can do, you know, 100% truck and 50% engine, but you can't do 100% both. And it's all about equipment that you put on, and all the things. So, but what's happening now is anytime you're outside of two and a half miles and you have this, now that we're getting to the point where we've got to start thinking in our planning process of putting a, a tower, a ladder service company out there, which we have with our quints, it's just a matter of having the people on. But the positive side of that, that would stop us from having to take our tower all the way from headquarters, six or seven miles through all that traffic to get over there, but again, it's talking about people. But about to answer your question, I, I'm okay with, I think it's working out there, for the medical causes, it's been working. Now, you get a CPR case, hopefully, you've got EMS coming there pretty quick, because CPR, if you've ever done it before, it'll wear you out.
Yes, it will.
And it's all about efficiency on CPR, without you make the person put in back there. And within just a couple of minutes, you're done, and that's why I'd recommend four, is just getting that rotation. You've got somebody dealing with a customer, and you get that rotation on CPR. So that's where we are at, but again, we're, we're doing everything within our power, we're still collaborating with the volunteer departments out there, and one thing, and one thing we do different out in that area with the volunteers, inner city, we do what we call sec alarm, or if it's beyond room and contents, and we see we've got a large fire, we'll do the sec alarm, the volunteers come in and help us. But out there, because of the sheer distance, it's, it's the initial alarm, we're already striking, we saw the, the 4,000 square foot of house over there in Tarna that burnt, and the time it took us to get there, so now, we, we get them rolling, and that up to that. So we have, and again, the CAD to CAD, so all things, so we, we continue to work, but we're, we're needing six firefighters, and that's, and kind of, and I, you know, I asked you, I, I went and wrote in depth in the support document, if you'll look at that, it kind of, I'm getting my hand over here, I've got to speed this thing up a little bit, my running out of time, I don't want to.
13 minutes.
It's been long gone, it's been long gone.
I told him, I told him he's going to lose, lose one personnel request per minute he's been over, and I think he's going to lose more, uh, on, people on staff right now.
All right, that, that brings us to, to, and we're about to wrap this thing up, is we also need some personnel internally. If you, if you do, if you can't get things internally working efficiently and properly, I can have all the firefighters in the world, and that's going to stop that from being efficient. So right now, we need a training accreditation manager, anybody that has, does accreditation, whether it's Foster's group or Chief Summer's group, understand that it's a job to maintain and keep it where it needs to be. You don't want to spend the monies and the effort of going for accreditation, and then have five years go by, and you lose it all. So it's important that we have that, but we're also short in our training division, and we ensure personnel are professionally trained. And we also need the addition of an office assistant for data entry, and, you know, I put it on here, where you can find it in justification for it, and in all reality, we had an office assistant about several years ago, and then when the city's reserves dropped, and there were some tough decisions had to be made, that was one of the positions that got taken away. And it, we need it back, we're growing, there's things that are had, we're growing it, and we need additional staff. Our department assistant now, office assistant now, is workload is extremely, she's working long hours, she's having to do overtime, not only to maintain her own workload, but also new tasks, products, as for, but what I have come, and the manager kind of mentioned it, I, I can show you that this will not impact our budget at all by adding these two positions. And it's because, I hang my hat on this, you know, we have one of the lowest attrition rates in the city and in eastern North Carolina. When I did, when I talked to other fire chiefs, we've got a very low attrition rate, the attrition that we do is the retirement. And anytime you have a third-year employee retire, and you promote within, you're going to have his savings. But now, if I was promoting from outside, whatever it makes it, but when you promote within inside, and if you look at page 10, I've taken the time, put together a really nice spreadsheet that shows you where we just had two retire, we've got two coming up retire, and guess what, over the, I can project over the next five to 10 years, there's probably going to be another 15 to 18 people retiring, because what was happening in the 90s, we started hiring one person, we started hiring in groups, because we needed one person per shift, so that means three. And then we, you know, we got a little father, we hired, and started, we started hiring, we hired nine, and then the most recent one, we did a six, you guys approved, but before that one, we had a safer plan, where we did 15. So these people are going to be coming up on retirement, also, I think it's, and I know it's not, I don't think, it's sustainable, we can add these positions and make this department a lot stronger internally, without any additional cost, to my ability. Actually, it's a $20,000, actually, a $20,000 reduction.
Excluding the six purposes.
No, I'm talking about each two.
Right.
I'm talking about those six purposes. That's a different outfit.
I can tell you.
That's a.
Poor Linda, poor Linda, I mean, she's one office assistant for 77 employees. And they all, and she's doing it all for them. You know, so I don't know if any other department can, that would have one office assistant for 77 employees.
Well, for forecasting, you've got six new firemen in 2018, 19, and you want six. So three years from now, let's say, when a new station's built, how many additional personnel in addition to the six you got in 18, 19?
If they're correct, 15, 15 there. It's a lot. And I understand it. Trust me, I understand it. Yeah.
Reason I'm asking is, at that point in time, you'll have four stations. And again, I know nothing about management of the fire department, but I just was wondering if there's any type of reconfiguration of personnel and reciprocity?
Once you get to the fifth station, that's when you have to start looking at your org chart and how it's laid out, because you get to span of control. And you have to look at your organization and determine, you know, do you need a deputy chief, do you need this, do you need this, you need all the different things. So basically.
So we're about a hybrid here. In other words, like, where you got six, you need six, you'll need 15 more. If you get a new station, from a hybrid perspective of all four stations, there's no way to take the 15 needed in, that'd be 12, from spreading the positions and the services.
I won't be franking honest with you about that. There's lots of different ways you can do that. But where you gotta look at it from my perspective and the citizen's perspective, do I want to have five trucks to go to this call, that's responded from all over, or do I want to have four trucks? But you still need the same number of people in the fire.
Well, Keith, I'm thinking about those 300 new homes and those three in our new apartment units. I'm thinking of the tax base for offset.
And you go back to the fire station. I knew that, I mean, y'all said today, you know, just build a fire station. I mean, I understand, that's a long process. But there's other things we can do. We can look at a temporary, you know, facility with a modular unit, and if some of these needs outweigh the timeframe, that we can actually put a fire station. And that, trust me, I understand, y'all got, you got annex to deal with, you got police department. I know I'm just one portion of this big pie. But I feel like, you know, it's my job, I mean, being my 29 year, I could easily say, you know what, I'm gonna take one more year, and not worry about all this. I mean, I could easily do that. But that's not what, I mean, I'm very, I wouldn't do it anyway, because I'm passionate. But that's not what you pay me for. You pay me to identify where we are and where we need to be going.
You mentioned earlier, we're like a mutual aid with the county departments, and you mentioned something about ratings would improve. Obviously, we're at two. Were you talking about ISO ratings, or were you talking about?
Yes, that's right. I think, well, I know it's gonna help these. Okay.
Some of them were four or six.
I mean, I know it's gonna help them, but, you know, if you do the math, again, it's all about the numbers you get and the consistency of those numbers. But there's a possibility, if this thing really works good, that we could actually have a program for, there's gonna be an overall, it might not be new per se, but you know what, if I can say I had a part of, in these departments, a better rating in this county?
Sure.
I'm gonna do whatever I can.
Chief, I may figure you off when I asked you that question earlier, but the six firemen that you're requesting for Thurmond Road, what would they do? Like, you explain what the six do now?
I'm sorry, I apologize. We'd pull them off the quick response, and they would come back together with those other six and make it a separate company. So we'd end up having a ladder company and an engine company. So we'd have eight people.
So you'd be able to run your second two out of the same station?
Well, that, I'm looking at all different options. I'm at the airport, I am looking at other options, you know, partnering.
But basically, the answer is, yeah, you'll be able to, there'll be.
They'll be dedicated for that part of town.
The truth, the biggest expenditure from a sustainability is employee, not the capital improvement of the building. So are you thinking long-term that the Thurmond Road is still the ideal location for, as the growth goes? So are you looking?
It's not probably my tenure, and it's probably not my, but eventually, somebody's gonna have to look at it, the way that area's growing, is doing a good analysis to determine if that station's in the location, which I personally don't think it is.
I don't think it is either.
And probably close out, or reutilize for something else, and put one out here, and put one out here.
But wouldn't that location, a future location, coming to, from a whole geographic area of what other mutual aid stations are doing? In other words, you wouldn't just sit right beside a Thurmond Road or something? You would?
Unless you wanted to partner with that station, partner with that, you mean, that was the only thing. But, you know, you're foolish to put one on the, unless you know that there's potential growth going ways up there. You're foolish to put it on the edge because you're losing one and a half miles of the road miles of credit.
And last year, during the same request, you requested 12 firefighters.
Initially, and I realized what happened, so I figured six is better than none. And it's been working great. It really has. I mean, it's made a big difference over there. And back.
You're talking about getting the employees.
Unless you've got some questions. I mean, please take the time to read the supporting document, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to, you know, go more in depth.
I think you prepared an excellent presentation and completed your case, so.
Thank you. That's all I can ask.
So Chief, right now, from what I've heard you say, and you explained everything really well, I'm looking at it from, right now, a dire need that we have is to get the CAD to CAD in place.
And that's happening, that's happening as we speak.
All right. So with that, would that, and that would not require any additional personnel?
That's happening, that's happening right now.
All right, thank you.
Anything else on fire?
What are you doing, me?
All right, thank you.
Great job.
No problem.
Thanks, thanks, Chief.
Sonya, HR department.
Everything I was going to ask before, you can just give it to Chief for it.
I'll give it to one.
Yours takes 13 minutes. I'm gonna see you in my office tomorrow.
Monday. Monday, yeah. All right. So I'm not gonna be before you for just a couple seconds. The HR department, as you know, is a very small department of five employees. I am not requesting any additional personnel, or any capital for fiscal year 2021, and our operational budget should remain relatively flat. Just a couple things I wanted to update you on, as far as continued goals for the coming year. Ongoing implementation of MUNIS, and planning to complete the implementation of NeoGov, and I'll give you just a couple things, and then I will be out of your way. The HCM, Human Capital Management Go Live, we are still working towards that. It has been a tremendous feat. We had a great internal team working on this project. I, along with my assistant director of HR, the accounting manager, the IT manager, two IT systems analysts, and Tyler Tech staff, we have spent countless hours on this project. So we are getting very close to going live. And this coming year, there will be multiple features that we'll want to introduce along with MUNIS as well as we continue the implementation. So things like the electronic workflows, that'll be very important. Whereas, personal transaction notices will go through the workflow process, and we'll be able to do away with paper. Employee self-service, we're very excited about that. Employees have the access right now to the current system to get to some information, but this will be enhanced with MUNIS, so they'll be able to go in and make them graphic data changes, request leave, they'll be able to make benefit election changes, so forth and so on. And one other piece here that we're excited about implementing, hopefully it will all come together for the next budget, you will be automating our performance evaluation system through MUNIS. Insight NeoGov, we had to kinda put that on the back burner because of the demand and the countless hours we've had to spend on MUNIS, but we are still very, very pleased with what we're getting from Insight NeoGov, and we are planning this year to proceed with the online hiring portion of the software, which will allow the hiring managers to have more access to request vacancies, vacancies to be advertised through the system. They'll also be able to access applications, schedule interviews, things along those lines. So those are two technology pieces that we are planning to continuously put in place for the upcoming fiscal year. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
One question, yes. So is the insight, what, you know, everything's so fabulous and much to do, but the only complaint I ever hear is that people apply for something that the city of New Bern, and they don't hear anything. So will Insight or something either send an automatic response saying, we've received your application, it will be reviewed, it won't be reviewed, sorry, the job is filled? I just feel like if we could, you know, have a way to respond to them.
If anyone applies through Insight at this point, they do get an email to say, we've received your application. If the application has been referred to the hiring manager, they do get notification that the application has been referred. And we do send notifications, thank you for applying. Once the position has been filled and closed, then we do send notifications through Insight.
And just says, you know, you applied, but thank you.
Right, right, right. Sometimes it may take a little bit longer, just depending upon how long it takes to fill the position, but those notifications we do automatically have accepted.
Is it almost like a, we'll call it an explanation page, so when you go into that, it says, if you're applying for a job to the city of New Bern, you know, these are the steps, expect to get an email, expect to not receive an email until the job is closed. Might just, again, make things a little easier. I don't know if we do anything like that.
What we can do is we can look at the communication piece that we have that goes to the applicant, to let them know that your application has been received, and we can look at maybe putting a couple bullet points in there about what the expectations are going for.
I think that'd make it easier. I don't know if anybody else has had that issue brought to them, but I.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Sonya, I guess it was last year here at Bullash, you have some good information about some savings, I guess, prescription drug program, or insurance. What do you see as far as overall happening with that this year?
We're continuing to monitor that. We have realized some savings by switching over to a new PBM, prescription benefit management company. So we're pleased, I think we're pleased with the savings that we're realizing through that. So we're continuing to keep our things on the pulse and monitoring where we are with that.
They script this well about 100,000 or 15,000.
Are they using, staff using the Teladoc?
Yes, we do get some utilization reports. So yes, they are using it. I've actually used it a couple of times, and we're getting some good reviews.
We'd like to want them to use it more.
Yes.
It's great.
It's great.
I'd use it to it again.
It's great. Literally, they, for your normal stuff, call Teladoc, and they can even write prescriptions for certain ailments, obviously. Some things may require further analysis, so it will require you to come in. But your common things, they can write it like that, and it's no cost to the employee at all. None. But yes, Sonya and her staff, and Lori and her staff, they have done, and IT department, they've done a tremendous job on this MUNIS implementation, because it's not like QuickBooks and putting in a CD and installing software on your thing. It's a completely different animal. So a lot of kudos to them. They've put in a lot of hard work there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I need that Teladoc.
Anything else for Sonya? All right. We will move on to Parks and Recreation, if you want.
Okay, everybody ready? All right, we're Parks and Recreation, so let's have a little bit of fun. Okay, so I want to start off by going over our mission. This past year, we changed that a little bit to reflect more of what we're doing. And our mission is to enhance the quality of life for all citizens through the development of sustainable facilities, parks, programs, and services to promote a lifestyle of cultural arts, physical activity, and wellness for all. And I feel more comfortable right now than I did two years ago when I got here. And we still got a long way to go, but we're moving in the right direction. I feel very good about that. So just to give you an overview, we currently have 29 full-time employees. We have one vacant position, and that was a, that's a custodian position. We're gonna hold that open for a while, because we really don't need two custodians, as long as the other recreation center is down. There are about 38,000 and change cities and towns across the US. There are 172 accredited Parks and Recreation agencies in the country, 12 in North Carolina, and New Bern Parks and Recreation is one of those 12. So we're going through the process now for reaccreditation. We've been working literally for the past two years on that. Our visitation team is gonna be coming in right after Memorial Day this year to visit us and see if we're compliant. Hopefully, we'll be compliant with everything, can retain our accreditation for another five years. So that's coming up, and we're really looking forward to that. So in Parks and Recreation, we do have three divisions, administration, and that also includes athletics and special events, Parks and Grounds, which also includes cemeteries, and then Recreation, which covers the Aquatic Center and the Recreation Center. And so our park system maintains five cemeteries. We've got a lot of green spaces, and we maintain a lot of the ridgeways for mowing. We have 35 parks in our system, and we have several special use facilities, such as the Dog Park, Splash Path, Aquatic Center, Recreation Center, River Walk. And this year, we're reopening the community garden after several years of inactivity. And so we've already got folks signed up for that, and we're really excited about that. Just to give you an idea, and this includes Martin Marietta Park, we currently have 1,123 acres of property that we maintain for Parks and Recreation. Oh, that's some of mine that's us. So I can give you my. So our overall goal for this coming year is to work towards our mission, support the efforts of the Appearance Commission, aggressive accessibility issues in all of our parks, and we've got several of those issues, focus on park renovations. Our priority will be on development of all phases of Martin Marietta Park. Our first phase will be open this summer. Expand partnerships with community partners, continue our staff training, and of course, maintain all parks and facilities to a higher standard. So some of our things we're gonna be looking at for the budget this year, vehicle replacement and administration. We've got an old vehicle, still pushing for a mobile recreation unit, basically a trailer that includes a wide variety of games and activities that we can take out all over the city and just have a pop-up park for an afternoon or whatnot to get community engagement. And our ADA upgrades, such as, and we started, we're doing this with every new amenity we're putting in, such as the expansion to the River Walk. We're gonna be doing a grand opening for that, once I get confirmation from the state, when they can come down. But when we put the canoe kayak launch in, that's ADA accessible. We've got accessible parking lot in Parks and Recreation, so handicap parking and things like that. But we've got sidewalks to nowhere in some of our parks. So if you try to get into some of our restrooms, you know, it's kinda hard for someone in a wheelchair. So we're trying to clean those things up. We're very comfortable with special events that we're doing. And I think we've really come on the scene a lot with all of our activities that we're doing. We want to continue to do that. And of course, Martin Marietta Park really does play heavily. In Parks and Grounds, we've got some equipment needs. We've got a lot of equipment that's worn out, so we're gonna be having several requests for that. We have a few vehicles that have a considerable amount of age on those that we're gonna be requesting to be replaced. Playground improvements, we're looking at two playgrounds that we're gonna have to improve this year. Henderson Park and Fort Cotton, those are our oldest playgrounds, and so they're gonna need a little work. Those are also higher priority parks. Parks that don't get a lot of use, we're not really worried about the playgrounds and those. If they had a lot of use, then it would be a higher priority. So that's kinda how we're looking at that. General park upgrades, Fort Cotton, we're definitely looking at some things with that. We've got a lot of concerns from that area around Fort Cotton. They'd like to see some enhancements there. So we're looking possibly going to shelter, having a pollinator gardens there, and things like that, and probably shrinking the size of the ball field itself to add more parking, because there's really not a lot of parking in Fort Cotton, and that park is heavily used. Henderson Park, one of the biggest issues we've got, I don't know if anyone's ridden by there after this rain, but it's a lake out behind the Recreation Center, the basketball courts. We're definitely gonna look at elevating those courts. And that's something we need to do, because the basketball is one of the heaviest used amenities over at that park. Also, better access to the playgrounds. Cemetery preservation, we're gonna continue working on that. We've done several projects, such as replacement fences at Greenwood Cemetery, also working on the fence and the fountains over at Cedar Grove, and also doing some work over at New Bern Memorial Cemetery. So at all of our cemeteries, we're working on putting meditation locations with benches and things like that, increasing the trees that we're planting, taking down a lot of old 60-foot stumps that have been in places like Greenwood Cemetery for many years. So trying to do a lot of cleanup on those parks, those cemeteries. Increasing the trees that we're planting, taking down a lot of old sixty-foot stumps that have been in places like Greenwood Cemetery for, for many years, so trying to do a lot of cleanup on those parks, uh, those cemeteries. Security cameras in parks. So last year, I, I'll pretty much call it our first phase, we, we received funding to put security cameras at West New Bern Recreation Center and also out at Fort Cotton. We've got security cameras, uh, in parts of Lynn Burney Park, so we wanna look at putting some at Union Point Park, Henderson Park, and Fort Cotton as well, as we continue moving forward. All of the parks that, that are high visibility, we'd like to have some type of presence with cameras as, as we move forward. It only helps, it helps us, it helps police. If we've got an issue, we can go back and look and see exactly what's going on. Uh, let's see here, recreation. Bus replacement. The bus, one of our bu- oh, sorry about that. One of our buses is thirty-three years old this year, and we have constant breakdowns. Literally, uh, for, for MUM Fest, that thing broke down after, after twenty minutes in operation, couldn't use it again, and it was out of service for a while because it's hard to get parts for that thing. But our buses are heavily used, not only in summertime, but when we're, uh, doing things like transportation for MUM Fest and other activities. Um, our other bus is twenty-two years old, so that, that's gonna be a, something that we're gonna have to address this year. I'm not necessarily looking at a brand-new bus, I don't think we need that, but we're probably gonna look at a used bus to help get us through the next ten or fifteen years. In our master plan, and also in our most recent public input, um, meetings, we've had a lot of interest for a community center at Pleasant Hill Park. So, budget, budget-wise for, for community center, five thousand square foot, uh, metal building with brick facade, we're looking at about five hundred thousand, five hundred, five hundred fifty thousand dollars to, to complete that. And that, that is a valid budget number. I spoke with one of the builders and they gave me a pretty good number on that. So we're looking at that. Technology for new programs, we're gonna be looking at including that. Um, esports and gaming, that, that's starting to be a huge trend in parks and recreation. As we're seeing the, the participation in esports decrease, we're seeing esports increase all over the country, and so we'd like to take advantage of that. I, I had no idea until several months ago that they're offering college scholarships in esports now. Good figure, and all, and it's all in gaming. And we're also trying to come up with ways to, if every kid has a, has a smartphone, to include some type of technology in our parks where we can get kids out there to at least use their smartphones to, to go and do a scavenger hunts and things like that.
Go ahead now.
Yeah, those, those are some of the things that we're working on. So, does anyone have any questions?
I have a question about our cemeteries, and, and do you have any ideas on how we can get, um, folks to quit using our cemeteries for their dogs to go walking through and disrespecting our great sites? Do you, is there any additional policy that the city can?
You know, the, the ordinance can be changed, but I don't think, shy of having a police officer out there that's gonna stop any from, when, just, just like it's not gonna stop folks that live in those communities that have, uh, a cemetery from walking around it, that's just a common thing. We can, we can add more doggy wastebags there, we can have more suitable signage that would, that we can encourage people to pick up after their pets, but that's, the, the enforcement part is hard, hard to do with that.
Do you, um, are you thinking at some point that you would like to get some type of partnership with somebody that have a, a dog park out at the, at the Rock Park?
Absolutely, that's one of the phases coming up.
I don't know, y'all, I, I get a lot of complaints still about residents that are taking their dogs out and disrespecting.
Mostly New Bern Memorial, it seems, so that's where I get the complaints as well.
If there's a. If there's any, any, uh, again, you're, I'm sure you have, uh, other recreation operators that have that problem, if you have any ideas on what we can do along with our police department to be more respectful of our deceased, I'd certainly be interested in knowing what we can do.
Officer, I just wanted to say thank you. You just said, you know, it's, I thank you, and Mark, and you, but, uh, Alderman Astor were working hard on trying to find some means of getting a community center in the Pleasant Hill community. Um, I think I'll go home and have a drink of scotch tonight.
It's a suggestion, that ain't mean we.
No, no, but just to get it here, to get it here is a plus. And I know the, with the December twelve, uh, meeting input that you had held for the public to come out, I, I could not, I couldn't stay the whole duration of the, the meeting, but from the hour that I was there. And I looked at the board, and I just saw all the, the comments and what the folk, the, the citizens on the west end, and a lot of, from a lot of other areas of the city responded to that board and, and, and the demand and, and the wanting this, this park, this community center that they have been promised for over twenty-seven years, to just to see it on paper i- is a plus. And I appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate all of the board's efforts and hope that you will continue to take this park, this community center here, and think about it, and hopefully we all agree on it. Um, 'cause it really would be a plus for the west end of New Bern, because there are so many homes coming up out there. We all know the, the growth that's coming on the west end of New Bern, and this center could serve as a distribution center, which we all know how that. We had some problems during Hurricane Florence about a distribution center, and it can also serve as a shelter, which we wouldn't possibly have to occupy our schools for so long, and even the West New Bern Rec Center. So I think it would be a great plus to our citizens and to the city, and I thank you very much for just having me here on paper.
And I'll say, you know, when, when you, when the city manager gets my full, full budget request, I mean, we're gonna request a lot, not as much as I'd like to, because, because I am mindful of all the other departments that have needs, and a lot of those needs are, are greater than Parks and Recreation. And one thing I almost forgot to tell you is, we are requesting three, three positions. Now, I was sat here a year ago and said, we're not requesting any positions last year, but, but we are this year. Uh, we have a need in, in our parks and grounds maintenance for more skilled la- skilled labor to help with some of the maintenance and construction issues that we've got. You know, I've, I've been very fortunate for the last two years to hire some very good superintendents, we were able to do a lot of good projects. Uh, some things like the mum arts you saw at the MUM Fest, uh, the Christmas lights that we did out of Union Point Park, that was all done in-house for a fraction of the cost of what it would be to purchase those things retail. Our guys built bridges, all kinds of things, they're out in Martin Marietta Park now, putting a lot of structures in place, and, and we're doing that in-house, and mainly because, you know, we didn't get a lot of money for that first phase for, for Martin Marietta Park, so really couldn't afford contractor going out and doing things other than some of the buildings and things like that. But we're saving a lot of money by doing this type of thing in-house, and, and it's a necessity on our part, so.
Well, you had a great staff during the phase of Kidsville, I worked with them personally, and I know a lot of them were temping the transition and stuff, so, yeah, I support that.
The Marines were also.
Yeah, Marines, so I'm saying that, that city employees that I worked with that were temporary, some of them are no longer because we didn't have it as a budget goal.
Our, our parks are absolutely in the best shape than they've ever been, and it's all because of you and your staff. You, you do a wonderful job, I mean, I don't know if any of y'all noticed or not, but the sale book's now gone off the jackdown, all done in-house. You know, so I, I appreciate everything you do and your staff, and I told you, you need to get that other guy raised, he's gonna build all this stuff.
He did a good job.
He deserves it, if anybody don't.
Officer, I've got a couple of things for you. One, I'm talking about cameras in parks, I know you're looking at the bigger ones, but sometimes our smaller parks are havened for crimes. And to me, um, I think it's important, and the one I'm concerned about is the Don Miller Park in Riverside, you know, we, we had a death, a shooting and a death there this week. Um, and I think cameras in there might deter, there's a lot of drug activity going on at the end of that street, and the neighbors have been calling me and they're very concerned, so. Well, I know we're looking at the bigger parks, having it in smaller parks might be a deterrent where we think there might be that kind of activity, so I would ask you to maybe potentially look at putting cameras down there. It is a, you know, small little park at the end of the street, but it might help assist us.
I agree with you, and that is a hotbed, and so, yes, we will see, Sonia, that cameras will go there.
So I would really appreciate that, and then on behalf of my colleague over here, because it's in my ward, um, the chess park at the intersection of Queen and Pollock. Um, we didn't get the grant, but, um, I think there's other grants we can write, you've talked about this, um, so, and I don't know what the end number would be, but I would like to see if we could potentially put that somewhere in the budget.
Just phase one, some benches, the trees, and, and, well, I mean, the tables. We already got it planned out, just got the numbers.
Unfortunately, there's no, no plan that, I spoke with him, and they can't find that plan, but we just have to look and see what, what we're talking about in terms of the plan for that.
The, the grant that we sent, they don't know where the plan is?
I think they, I think that once they get, got the grant, they, they should do something with that file, but, but yeah, I'd like to just see an overall view, what you're, what you're wanting to do.
Oh, please take the camera off me. Okay, that's crazy. Okay, that's awesome, okay.
Officer, I'll leave it at that. This may not be a question for you, but the, the little park, I think the United Way, is that still moving forward? I know they put a sidewalk in and a bench, but, or was that it?
They paid for a sidewalk and bench, they wanna put a sign, we'll probably end up putting a sign up because it's just been too long, but they have paid along the way for that, I don't think. They did do a grand opening, I believe, uh, about a year ago, I think they did a, I, I didn't even have a clue about it, but, but yeah, that, that's nice little.
Officer, where the jet used to be on Martin's King? Uh, I know we're not doing anything there other than maintaining it, is there any way that we can possibly, if you're not gonna use it, get that to the property owners on either side? And just, just give it in there or sell it? Carson Grove Seaford School, where the old jet used to be.
That, uh, spot where I showed you the dog park?
No, that was terrible dog for it, that was Halloween.
We, we can definitely look at it, I can talk to the city manager.
I mean, what would you ever use it for there?
You know, I haven't really analyzed it, since it's green space, I haven't really looked, looked at that property very well, I just found out where it was, hard as past stuff.
We'll, we'll look at it, I, I'm almost certain that that's listed on our surplus properties for sale, but I, we'll look at it and see.
Any other recreation things?
Anything else for Foster?
I would like, uh, we'd like to mention over at Union Point, I had mentioned to Mr. Stevens and Alderman Dingle that, uh, the new fence is kind of, there's some issues with some paint, you checking that out?
I have, we spoke into the contractor, so they're gonna be taking care of that.
And one of the things that I understand policy, I know there, when fundraising was being held for the, uh, for Union Point years ago, the, you could buy brick pavers, and is there a limit to how many granite plaques or where they, they are that are gonna be around kind of the perimeter of Union Point? I was just wondering why, if, if folks are buying these, these monument locations, why they're not buying or we're not selling the brick pavers? There's plenty of brick pavers, and I don't, is there a limit to how many of these, these in-place, uh, granite markers are gonna be sold? And are you selling them, or is another apartment in there?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Swiss Bear or the chamber was doing that at that time, so Parks and Recreation, I believe, I don't believe Parks and Recreation handled that, I had no.
They did not, it was a separate fundraising arm that had it.
But, but we can definitely look in that, look at that.
What is the board, and of course, I've been, being with your ward, um.
No, but we have an issue, I mean, many people ask me too, you know, how do I, and what the mayor's referring to, you know, everybody and their brother now is buying little plaques and putting them where they want to, on a tree, on this, on that, so how do we tell the public that you can't do that, or if you want to do that, these are the steps you have to follow through. You know, you might not be able to put a little plaque here, but you can buy a brick here, or you can buy a paver and, and, and work on that, so.
Right, and so what I can tell you right now is we do have a few opportunities at Union Point Park for, for bench, your name on your pla- plaque for benches, and there are some trees still available. We sold several trees over the past few years. Um, of course, a lot of records were gone, so we had to go back and do, really do a lot of research for that. But there is opportunity for, uh, for your names on brick fa- pavers, there are quite a few pavers down there that, that we could do something like that with. We haven't done anything since I've been here, but we're, we're more.
So if tomorrow, if Swiss Bear, whoever is selling these granite markers, that they would be sold and installed and perceived and even know about it?
No, they're not selling it, that, it was, um, I'm sure it was in Union Point committed.
I think what the mayor's trying to say is, is he doesn't want Union Point Park to turn into a cemetery look.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's a couple of new ones there in the last year or two, and so, um, I, I just myself from ten years ago, so, um, saw one or two of them. And they're, and the original ones, um, were not particularly, yeah, I don't think they were delineated in any particular area, they were just spontaneously put in places, and, and now there are some that are, um, they're, they seem to be along where the trees are. So I'm just saying, you know, next time when we're having a retreat a year from now, and there's, there's ten or fifteen more of them, I'd like to have a little bit better understanding of procedurally why we're not selling the pavers, and, um, I just think there's a limit to how many of those type markers you're gonna wanna see at Union Point.
Sure, and, and as far as the trees, yes, some have been done on the trees, the, the granite markers have been placed in, in front of trees, which is part of one of our programs that we have, uh, basically a memorial program that we do in all of our parks. Uh, I am not aware of any that have been placed in, in the walkway itself, and so that's true, we'll definitely look into that, because I don't know who would have put any of those in.
Uh, I'm just, I'm gonna mention this, if, if the board wants to give the staff any direction, if you're following the way things are, just bring this up.
I think nobody knows what's going on, that's the issue, is that, you know, the, Foster has done, people were coming in and doing it on their own, so he coalesced it and said, okay, we're gonna have ten trees in Union Point Park, which means we'll allow for ten plaques, when those trees are planted, you won't allow anymore in there. But if somebody wants to memorialize somebody or do something, they could potentially buy a paver in the ground, you just have to figure out how to do that, because hey, if you can generate some money, I should do that.
Does anybody know how to buy a paver right now?
See, and, and right now, the only thing we're doing, we, we've still got a program at, uh, for Kidsville, that's the only thing we're actively doing anything for. We can do that, and we can promote it, if, if, if one of us to do that.
Well, are you still selling benches?
Yes, we are.
And are they like, what is it, how much is? It used to be twenty-five hundred, I don't know if it's still.
I, I could not quote that off the top of my head.
I think it was twenty-five hundred, but, um, you know, that, I think we do need to have that on the website or do something so people know, so people just start going out there, and if they are, then have it removed if they haven't gone through the process.
I think the improvements that Foster has made since he's been here has been very evident, and I think our citizens have picked up on that. I would make the suggestion that you look at opportunities like that in all of our parks, and put together a comprehensive, um, donation, or, um, whatever you wanna call it, some sort of form that if anybody says, hey, I wanna participate in something, you can hand them a packet and say, hey, here's ten pages of all of our parks and things that you can do, from benches to trees, anything else, but I think what the mayor's trying to get at is, let's have that enumerated, what it is, how many there are, and once they're gone, they're gone.
Part like, we don't wanna, if you like ten trees, we don't see, we want to see twenty come along just to, you know, uh, because we are concerned, we don't want to be bringing in flowers with all our markers. Not, we're bringing in cemeteries up here, but it's, you got a marker, appreciate, but in the walkway, certainly, there's opportunity to go.
Hey, timeline on the bridge, going back underneath the, uh, under the bridge to connect the convention center to Union Point.
So we had a meeting this past week with FEMA, and, and, and I asked if there was anything to prevent me from going ahead and, and starting that process, and I was told that there was not, so RFPs are going after that, so.
The public will be very excited.
They will, they will, definitely will be. I wouldn't say times are a guesst, but I know people would love to see that back.
Yes.
We expressed our same concern from the meeting. Spring, springtime coming up, and, you know, we, we need to have it as parks ready for in the summer.
Anything else, Foster? Alright. We've got, uh, four, four more divisions to go.
Excuse me, can we take a break, please?
Yeah, make a motion, uh, well.
Make a motion that we take a break, please?
Motion second.
Ten minutes.
Uh, so the next item, uh, is the police department, so I'll remember, Chief Summer, if you have anything.
Okay, good afternoon, in the spirit of the battle of the badges, the police department will win tonight, because we're not gonna take as long as the fire department.
It was fifty-five minutes, I think.
No, it wasn't, it was, alright, that's for five more minutes.
So first, just, uh, we could go over our mission statement, obviously the highlights of our mission statement is partnering with citizens and businesses, and, and we only, we don't only deal with, uh, criminal and traffic violations, but we also look at quality of life issues, and that's very important, because if you address quality of life issues upfront, sometimes that negates your criminal activities and your, and your traffic problems. And all that is to, uh.
And all that is to, uh, in our effort to protect life and property. Uh, strategies, just like any police department, and obviously, as well as working in partnership with our communities, uh, we have to be able to, to investigate and apprehend offenders, uh, implement traffic safety, uh, count measures. Again, the partnerships is a big part of what we do. And a very difficult part of our, uh, uh, office is maintaining, uh, staffing levels. Uh, that's not only with the New Hampshire Police Department, but you're finding that's across the country. Police departments are really struggling finding men and women who want to do this job. It's just not, it's, it's not a fun job. It's a very dangerous job. It's a job that most folks are, are video doing all the time and it's just, uh, stressful. Tires up your family life, like, go on, 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 on. So obviously, our number one goal is for compliance to law, all laws and criminal and traffic, uh, criminal and traffic. And we try to accomplish, uh, that again through partnerships. And this budget, our budget goal is to, uh, focus our operating expenses on maintaining staff, staff that is well-trained, properly equipped, uh, adequately supported by technology. Technology really enhances our efficiency, so we really try to focus on that. So other the area of well-trained staff and, uh, properly equipped staff. Uh, our training budget, what you'll see in our upcoming, uh, budget, our training budget will probably increase slightly, uh, given the fact that we have, uh, a lot of retirements, uh, a lot of, uh, new people in positions. All the two supervisors on our department have less than three years' experience in their rank. Specialized physicians have, uh, limited experience in our vice and our cops and our detective divisions and our forensic divisions. They are all new people, which means they got to get trained. They got to go to school and schools cost money. So you'll see a little uptick in that as far as we getting our, uh, getting our supervisors up to, uh, speed, our specialized physicians up to speed. Uh, vehicle replacements, same as we've been doing over the years, try to replace ten vehicles a year. And again, we use a point system, uh, that takes into account the year, mileage and the annual repair cost.
Chief, I saw, I'm going to ask you, I saw one of the old white cruisers this past week. I thought, oh, you got to rent all of those?
We keep one. We have one which is an animal control vehicle. And the reason we keep that is because the mileage is somewhat low, not really the fact that we have a cage in it.
Okay.
Uh, also, we have included an animal control vehicle, but animal control vehicle that we tried to replace last year has two hundred, excuse me, it's a two thousand eight, over a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. Uh, and in the life, as far as our special, uh, our SRT team, the special, uh, equipment sets, is their helmets, their vests, uh, and their shields all reaching in the life, so they need to be replaced, obviously for officer safety. Technology, we have, uh, several things are coming to the end of life. One being our building, uh, PD building security camera. That was, I assume, placed when the building was, uh, opened and I guess it was opened in two thousand nine. Uh, the platform that, we have purchased cameras over the years, but the platform that operates on is, is now obsolete and cannot be supported. Our radio system, our entire radio system needs to be replaced. We're going from a mic to a, to simply a system. Uh, and we've been meeting with the nine-one-one board. My tech, we just met with them yesterday. It looks like probably eighty to ninety percent of that will probably be covered by them, so that's, that's good news. Uh, uh, we have, uh, it, we're in need of replacing our craft and crime scene, uh, mapping laser. Uh, the one that we have is, is, again, can't be supported anymore. Uh, the one that we have also requires three to four officers to operate. It's kind of like a surveying tool. Some of you might know how that works. You carry, you hold it and you measure between distance. The new technology now, you can just set one in the middle room and it can just hit objects and do it. So it will reduce manpower and it will also increase efficiency, efficiency when we, uh, investigate crime scenes as well as traffic accidents. And then continuing to improve our police department command center. Some of you have had the opportunity to go in there. We've really upgraded that. We're trying to get it to the point where we can have, uh, live camera feeds, uh, for somewhere I events and other type of improvements. Uh, some technology, uh, efficiencies that we're going to put in our capital budget. It's going to be over and, over cam- camera system. Uh, I think some of you had opportunity to go in, uh, command center again. We had to borrow some cameras to, to put at the entrances to Mumfest and in the middle. Camera cameras will be used at, at other events, uh, and throughout the city such as parks when we need to. And when I say over, it's going, it's something that obviously you can see that's there, but we want it portable. We want something that's, so I might need downtown, uh, this week, I might need it in Lawson Creek next week. I might need it in Miller Park then next week. We want to be able to move it around and we want it to be able to feed into our command center so we can see what's going on. Uh, it, you know, something like a Mumfest, if we can identify some bad actors and notify officers, uh, in real time, that would really save us a lot of time. We were able to do that some of what we borrowed, but it wasn't exactly what we needed, so we have identified some things that we need to use. Message boards, again, we can use that for city events and, uh, use that for, uh, emergency notifications. And I look at mess- message boards as something that everybody in the city could use. I know from time to time Matt needs to use our message boards to put up, uh, road closure signs and things of that nature. City really needs message boards and it would be really good if we could have that, especially on the temporary street closings or if we want to put out, uh, don't drink and drive messages and things of that nature.
Chief, is that something that could be purchased using funds from both departments?
I'm just going to see that.
Yeah, so you can use them in both.
He likes, is are you going to be mine, 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 even with cameras?
Doesn't matter who pays for it, that's how hopefully.
I, I don't mind, mine, mine now because then Public Works has used, has used it a couple of times. And I'm sure if, uh, Chief Boyd wants to use it, if he pays me, I'll let him use it.
Well, I want to say this, so it was a really good utilization of that message board when you put it up in Taverna about the battle of the badges, vote for the police department.
Yes.
I thought that was kind of sneaky.
Uh, and the Fire Department vandalized that sign by cutting it off. Um, and then finally, speeding trailers. It's common knowledge that speeding in our neighborhoods is probably the number one problem. If we can get our speed spies and our speed trailers, we need more because, uh, I'm all constantly here and have to put the trailer in my community yet, but we got it in another community. We don't have enough to really, uh, accommodate all the communities, so that's some of our, uh, capital expenses. Uh, now, personnel wise, um, I'm so glad to hear, you know, the police department has had some comments. I'm so glad to hear that my, my buddy, uh, Chief Boyd has said that his department is losing some high-paid personnel, so he can absorb extra personnel, so I'm sure he'll share some of his extra savings that allow us to per, to increase our staffing, but that's our current staffing level. We have not, I've been here eight, eight years, we have not placed any additional officers on the street in eight years. I mean, now we have increased the size, but that was going to schools and other areas, but no additional officers on the street.
Can you go back to that? Can you tell me, uh, just twenty-six and a half civilians? What are your, are, are these all administrative people? What, what do you consider civilians?
We've got comm personnel, we've got records personnel.
So you're talking about in your, like, telecommunications?
Right, right. And the point five is animal control.
Right.
The, the person or the dog?
No, 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 no. Oh, I'm, we have one and a half, a part-time person.
I was like, that is so.
Part-time.
Now, now it's just downright rude, right?
No, I just thought it was, okay.
Okay, um.
It's Friday.
Budget will also reflect, uh, I'm noting currently this year we're running, uh, short in overtime, uh, as far as the, the amount. I think we have budget, it's, so our budget next year will, uh, reflect an increase in overtime. Uh, unlike most departments, uh, officers have to go to training most of the time on their off time because I have to have the street staff, uh, and we're twenty-four seven operation. So I have to have a street staff and I have to have my specialized units staff. So it's not like they can go, not patrol the streets, but go to training. They got, they got, they, they don't sleep and eat and, no, excuse me. They, they, they have to work the street and then on their off time, then they have to go training, which is overtime. So we also have to deal with, uh, fellow family, family medical leave and sick leave and annual leave and all that. So it makes it difficult for us to staff our streets without overtime. Uh, and there was also our, uh, uh, use of officers for city-sponsored events coming up, uh, are, are rising. And that's because of the state that we live in now, you know? Before, when I could probably staff Mumfest with eight officers, now given the present state of our, uh, society and all the terrorists out there, you'd rather have more people than less. So I, I are on the side of having more people so that we have, um, our community safe when we, you know, attend events. So I'm asking for three, uh, positions. I would like to have three school resource officers, uh, because we've already talked about that. That would take in those three, uh, three schools, uh, three elementary schools that we're going to have.
But that would be, are you asking for that without funding, without funding from any source or us, funding a hundred percent of that?
That's, that's a hundred percent.
So if you are incorporating a budget?
I'm asking whatever. And I will, I will get the figures as, as was directed earlier and get to the city manager. Uh, with, with the, uh, and I always mentioned the fact that we need a supervisor, uh, for, uh, our SROs. I, I think that's very, very, very important that we have a supervisor supervising our school resource officers because again, you've got offices dealing with kids daily. Sergeant needs to be going from school to school to school, make sure that they, they don't have to, supposed to be doing that also. So even if we don't get the three, we just have the six SROs, we still need a sergeant supervising. If we get the three, then we'll have sergeant supervising nine SROs. And then I would like if two police officers for the street, if possible. Again, I'm staying that I'm one department and there's other considerations. Uh, to, to achieve one officer twenty-four hours a day, I need four officers. Because we're twenty-four hour, so I'm just asking for two. Uh, Chief Boyd made a very good argument and, uh, going to use his data as far as the growth commercially and residentially that we have to continue with. Also, uh, equally important is the land area that we have to cover. It's just getting increasingly difficult. Officers are getting burned out, um, in terms of, again, training on their off time. And I just checked, we, we performed over five thousand hours of extra duty work. That means officers working off duty at the request of citizens who want extra police protection. Five thousand hours and, uh, average employee works two hundred and eighty hours a year, so that's two police officers right there. Who, basically, that, that takes up the time for two police officers right there. Now, I'm not saying that those two police officers do the extra duty, but what I'm saying is it would relieve some of the officers' tension as far as giving them some time off and some time to work. Uh, as far as civilian positions, um, I'm requesting one civilian unit supervisor. And I've already explained how the EMD and EPB and EFD works, uh, in terms of now that we're giving instructions over the phone, life-saving instructions over the phone. After the instructions or after the calls are, 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 are dispatched, later on, a supervisor goes back and evaluates the calls. They listen to the calls, they make sure that we followed the proper protocol, and then they counsel or train the dispatchers to make sure next time we are even more efficient. So supervisors in this position are very important. Uh, if the supervisor's off, and they have to take lead, we've got one supervisor per team. If they have to take lead, then that team don't have a supervisor at all. So I would like to have at least one supervisor and one police, uh, service technician that is a telecommunicator. But again, will help us, uh, do, um, help us in taking calls. Now, if I can go back to the police officer position. A creative, if, if I can't have two extra police officers, one of the things, I'm going back on my previous experience as a chief. I had a ceiling, an authorized strength of, let's say, ninety people. The city there would allow me to over-hire by two, knowing that I always going to have a vacancy. So, so if there's a rare time that I can get up to ninety-one and I have good candidates there, they would allow me over-hire because they know within the next two or three weeks, I'm going to have a vacancy. So if I could even have that ability to be able to say, okay, you've got, Chief, you've got ninety-one officers, but you can over-hire two. If you ever get full, we'll allow you to over-hire two because I can guarantee those two positions, two, two over-hires won't last that long because we have constant turnover. So that's something else that you could be so not appreciated. And then finally, uh, just going up future needs, future budgets. Uh, we have to, again, address staffing because the city is growing. Most residential and commercial development. Continue our replacement schedule for, uh, vehicles and in life technology. As you know, personnel and technology are big expenses in that area. One day, I don't know if we're here yet, we need to look at body worn cameras and that's quite an expensive, um, undertaking. Uh, I do know one of the aldermen had questions about shot spider. We, we get, uh, I can say average three to five shot spider calls a day that we respond to. Uh, most of the time, we can't find where the location was supposedly the shot spider. Spider will aid us in that. I don't know how accurate it is, but it will aid us in that. Uh, it's, it's supposed to direct a suit location for, slip, there's a seven hundred and fifty feet, something like that, which we're going to, you know. Um, so that's very expensive stuff. Something that might be a future need is introducing it. Uh, continue funding for, uh, our narcotics investigations and also for Narcan. And one of the things, the Red Devil, I really need to kind of look at is, we, I've deployed my SRT team, my special response team, which some people call SWAT, probably more in the last two years than I've had in all the years here. And, uh, they arrive on the scene in just a regular vehicle that's not armored plated or anything. So if they were to arrive on the scene and a person starts shooting at the house, it's going to go right through that vehicle now. We did one time, because we had the time, borrow the armored vehicle from Jacksonville. But it's not always that you have the time if there's a hostage situation or something. Those guys need to go through that situation. They need to get as close to that house as they can so they can enter. You can't just use a regular vehicle and drive up to a house or man and shoot that. So that's something that, uh, hopefully the city will be able to look at in the future. Any questions?
I, I don't have a question, but I'm going to talk to all the aldermen. We, we don't have a DARE program, right? Where whose officers go in and they talk about, right, there may be a.
A DARE program?
DARE program.
Okay, if, if, uh, you had a presentation on Project Safe Neighborhoods a couple of weeks ago.
So that's the same.
Included in Project Safe Neighborhood Grant is implementing a DARE one.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, so I was thinking if you were able to couple that, finding grant to be able to implement that, you may be able to get some officers that can do, 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 do dual duty of being a SRO and then implementing that program and exclusives, and so that's another.
That's how I was going to be teaching.
Okay, perfect.
Chief, just so, just so I'm clear, staffing, you were asking, is it for eight positions? Or are you asking for five positions? Because you had three, you know, it broke down as to a sergeant and two officers.
Yeah.
Or is it?
I, I have to admit that was a type over, it's a five, but since I do this, you are. Since you're going to just type a lot of.
All right, so three SROs and two deputies, not, not, the, the three SROs is a sergeant and two police officers.
Right.
Chief, in, um, in relationship with Public Works and the manager, you know, I think all of the pastor had talked a little bit after the hurricane force about having some generators in key locations around the city. And also, uh, you know, we had to do curfew during hurricane force. Are you, in this budget, looking from a future standpoint of, of our overall resilience, the planet of the city? Are there things that we should consider incorporating in the future as far as, uh, future planning for weather events?
Now, I didn't address that. I'm hoping that that's something maybe Public Works will address, but that is important to have those generators.
We, we had made some contacts, uh, to DOT regarding, um, uh, the particular cabinets that they run at, at certain locations. Chief was, and his staff.
that they run at, at certain locations, chief was, and his staff were fortunate enough to provide us with the ideal locations that they would like to see, um, I guess, a, a generator, so that we don't have to put staff in the middle of the intersection, so essentially we would hook that generator up to that intersection, that intersection would operate, not saying the power would be turned on everywhere, but at least that intersection would be. So, we had kind of identified that, to be honest with you, I don't see that being a, a, a large capital expense, I mean, we could roll some Public Works guys with some little Honda generators, the cost of it, what we've got to investigate is each one of those cabinets may be completely different, so each one of those cabinets have to be evaluated, and DOT did reach back out to us and said that those cabinets can be, can be retrofitted, but it has to be done with electrician, so, um, the electrician basically allows for a hookup where you had a generator into it and the generator can operate that intersection, so.
And, uh-
Definitely something we're looking at.
The only other thing, the police department, I know, uh, all of them being going, oh, we, we ran a, ran a, last Sunday, and, and the more things we can do as a city, uh, to partner with the county, and I really appreciate your neighborhood, um, you know, working with neighborhoods and the churches, so, again, uh, even though it's not police related, it is an abatement of sorts, that, uh, the opioid crisis and your program with Narcan and others, there are things like that that we, uh, intend to, you're digging with, as far as making adjustments.
And, Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned that, one of the things I failed to mention, we do, we do a joint operation with the sheriff department at least once a month, and that also increases our overtime, we get, I use off-duty officers to do that, uh, so, and we use the target drug type places and things of that nature.
Another thing, I think Community College is working on simulation, is there, any update on that, or anybody, does anybody have an update on that?
We're looking at some grant opportunities, we've been, uh, talking with the Community College, and, uh, I've got some ideas I'll present to the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, the, uh, animal control vehicle, is that another one?
Yeah, we never bought, we never bought.
But it was in the budget.
Hey, we took it out.
You took it out. You took, the, the instructions I had was ten vehicles and X amount of dollars, if I can squeeze the animal control vehicle in there to do so.
Okay, well, just so staff knows, the approved budget that's online, isn't it?
Okay.
Oh, can I, can I?
Yeah, well, I remember us taking it out, that was one of the things we did.
In fact, I think you made the recommendation that we just give them the money for the ten vehicles, don't buy one.
I think that was, that's what I remember, it was, it was an amount of money for ten vehicles that included the outfit and everything else that they required, and if we were able to cull that number down to where we had some savings in what the capital number was, if you had enough to go buy the animal control vehicle, we could, so that's the reason, the reason why we put it in the budget is because it has to be in there in order for us to go buy that vehicle as a capital item, otherwise, typically, the way I work is, is if it's, if you, if you have something that is not listed in your capital item and, and the board approved the whole budget, if that item is not in the capital, then I'll always want to bring it back to y'all and purchase that capital item.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, so what we did was purchase ten vehicles and we didn't buy that.
So my, my last question is on that over hiring, Mark, how does that come into play when we don't budget for the full amount anyway? It's just a number game, right?
You just budget a little bit more, I mean, typically, uh, so, so, don't quote me on the exact numbers, but I, typically, I would say chief's personnel budget as far as salaries line on runs around four point six million dollars, four point five million dollars every year, is that around?
That sounds like a close to five.
That plus four, four and a half, five. So, uh, typically, we will fund that maybe at a, at a four point two or four point one level, knowing that he's going to have that constant attrition and, and turnover, uh, so, so generally, we don't fund it fully.
So he's asking to fund it fully, so you have the ability to over-
I wouldn't say fully.
I, I don't know if you need to fund it fully, I just would like to, if I get to ninety-one, which is only a month since I've been here, and I have some good candidates I can go ahead and over-hire, knowing that my turnover rate every year is ten to twelve people.
What he's trying, what he's trying to do, what he's trying to do is, he wants to have a certain set number of, of officers in the field at any given time.
Right.
The way he does that and the way he accomplishes it is that, that is a base number, and then he has two extras, so let's say, you know, employee A leaves, and he can put in sub B, and sub B goes in there, and then he would start hiring for sub B who, who left that-
Right, so if we did that, would that alleviate the two police officer costs that you implemented here?
D door, D door.
And then-
Okay, okay. I was saying, can you not develop a roster when you hire and put three, four people on a roster, and then if you have an open this year, tell them college and say, come on, right?
It doesn't work that way, everybody's looking for police officers, if, if there's a good person out there, they're going to go and get a job somewhere. I mean, most good police officers that you want to hire, they're being identified early on, if not before they even get into the BLT program. It's not, it's different than the fire industry, fire industry, you gotta, you gotta gauge on those guys for five years, working for a volunteer department before they ever set foot in your department, because every one of them won't come in there, it's not the case with them.
You got-
Such turnover, they have to identify the, you know, the, the diamonds at the BLT program. Any other questions for chief? All right, roll in Public Works. Public Works, and then we have-
It's consistent about the two guys.
Police Department, Liz again.
Hey, I got, for a quick, I got a question for, uh, Jeff.
He's gone.
Jeffrey Jerry.
He's gone.
He's gone? Damn, gone.
How you doing? All right.
Table is the Tuesday, day eleven.
All right, Public Works, uh, overall budget for the Public Works Department, what I'm going to do is, uh, just kind of briefly hit on this fiscal year, what our budget was, and some of the things we have accomplished, and then get into our goals and objectives and proposed budget, uh, stuff for the next budget year, so. Overall, the budget for this fiscal year is ten point eight million dollars, our staffing level is forty-eight and a half employees, that's not a dog.
All right now.
And we also utilized, you know-
Oh, I'm going to hear you some Facebook.
Forty-eight and a half employees, but we also utilized three to five inmates at any given time. So, uh, with Public Works Department, we've got the administration division, insurance, the city garage, public buildings, streets, solid waste, and stormwater. Uh, for FY twenty, there's, uh, just kind of a breakout of what the ten point mi- ten point eight million dollar budget was, as you can see, the streets division was three million dollars, and solid waste was three point three million dollars, so the two, uh, largest divisions within Public Works. Uh, of the three point three million dollars for solid waste, about two point one million dollars of that is contracted out for, uh, refuge collection services. And then below that, you've got a breakdown of our staffing employees, uh, that range anywhere from four for our administration division all the way up to nineteen in our streets division.
Are's it zero for insurance, does it hand in the-
It falls under administration.
Actually, but not necessarily insurance.
That's right.
She's the insurance guru.
She is. Uh, for this, this past budget year, as far as staffing, we reclassified one senior maintenance worker to the staff engineer position, which brought George Charles on. We also reclassified one seasonal position, which was our part-time inspector, into a full-time employee, and then we also transferred our heavy equipment mechanic from the streets division over to the city garage. And then with our capital purchases, we had four capital purchases that includes a boom lift, a route truck, one flatbed truck, and one service vehicle. Uh, just some accomplishments for this year, I think everybody's pretty familiar with most of them, uh, first off, we finished the design work and began construction of the old airport road project, uh, we had the Omega Center, which we completed back in December.
While you're on that, do we have an idea on when we're supposed to implement the things out of the Omega Center, for the-
That's right.
Yeah, the park, the rec park, because it was done in September, and-
So what I can tell you is, uh, what we're getting ready to do now is, is clean the HVA system, the ductwork, once that's done, we'll get another air quality test done, that comes back clean, program start.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yes, just to hit on that, once, once we finish all of our work, we did have an air quality test done, did come back with some issues with the HVAC system, so Foster has been working with the, uh, the building, uh, to get those, uh, issues taken care of.
And no added money, who was needed to do all that?
I'd say that's too determined.
Oh, so you have to come back to the board with something, then?
We could probably absorb it into budget, it's thirty-eight hundred bucks.
Oh, okay.
Just to do it.
Thank you, I just only, I appreciate it.
We also had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Golden Link, which we incorporated to stormwater improvement projects, uh, the one on Roanoke, uh, was completed several months ago, and then one on Metcalf Street is scheduled, is scheduled to begin Monday, uh, all the piping equipment's been, uh, delivered, and they anticipate beginning next week. We have also completed most of the major repairs of city buildings caused by hurricane Florence, we begin the initial phases of the thirty-two point seven million dollar FEMA project, FEMA ditch project, and then we've done three hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of street resurfacing this budget.
Well, you have to add additional personnel because of the state project.
Contractors?
Yeah, it's all contracted out, monitored by contractors. Uh, in addition, uh, when Hurricane Dorian came, we did all the, uh, collection of storm debris in-house with city staff, and also provided mutual aid to the town of Emerald Isle when they have a tornado, good through, we saw the North Carolina Supreme Court visit, installed three new generators at the West Newton Works Center, Thurman Road Fire Station, and also the Public Works Facility, and then, as you were aware, last budget year, we moved into this new city garage, and so far over this budget year, we have seen a tw- twenty percent increase in the number of vehicles that were taken care of in-house with our staff. And then finally, we have relocated our public building staff from Second Street, they used to be located next to the city garage, we relocated them over to the Public Works Facility.
And before you change tables, um, the mutual aid for town of Benwell, was that a declaration? Was there a declaration for that?
It did end up being declared, so we did end up, uh, originally, what we did is, we billed them for, uh, all of our labor and all of our time, and once they came declared, we went ahead and billed them for all the equipment, time, and swell based on FEMA rates.
Get my money.
Looking to FY twenty-one, um, we've had some preliminary meetings on insurance rates, and we're looking at about a seven to ten percent increase on insurance rates this year, uh, and that's partially due because a lot of the hurricane Florence stuff is now starting to hit, as well as one major claim we've had this past budget year. Uh, we're looking to upgrade three or four HVA systems around the city, I'll tell you, two of them are located at City Hall, there's two generators we're looking to replace, and then, as we do every year, we'll budget a million dollars for a pavement project or a resurfacing project this year, but, uh, we're looking to budget about a hundred thousand dollars for various sidewalk improvements, uh, one of the issues worth of Jeffrey Jerry that we've had is they've built the services as required, that sidewalks being installed anywhere it's in within our sidewalk or our pedestrian corridor, and we tend to have now a lot of gaps between properties and right-of-way, it's a handicap, uh, area, so we're looking to go in and fill some of those gaps this coming year. We've got some equipment at the city garage we need to upgrade that are set to expire this coming budget year. Uh, we'll be budgeting for additional Christmas decorations, um, as we compare it for this year, we came to the, uh, once we put up Christmas decorations this year, we had fifty light poles that didn't get reached throughout the downtown, whether it was on Broad Street or on Spencer Avenue that we normally put them on, so we're looking to budget between thirty and fifty thousand dollars for additional Christmas decorations, and then we have got four, four or five pieces of equipment that we'll be, uh, budgeting as well, a pack of, one tractor, one low boy, and then two or three service vehicles. Uh, as far as staffing goes for this coming budget year, uh, we've started evaluating our staffing levels to see if we've got adequate staffing, uh, staffing numbers within our departments, and as of now, we're looking to request three additional positions, uh, two within our streets division, and one within our stormwater division, and just a quick little note on that, uh, I'll echo kind of what the fire chief said earlier, as we begin to grow, um, the streets division maintains all streets in city of New Haven, uh, back in two thousand and eleven, we're somewhere between a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy miles of streets, uh, we're right at about two hundred miles of streets now, so we've increased that many streets, and the other thing that we've done is in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, streets division had thirty-one employees, this year they've got nineteen, so we've continued to reduce and reduce and reduce, and every year since I've been here, and probably since Mark has been here, uh, I don't think a employee has been added to the Public Works Department since then, so trying to add a couple this year. In addition, we are, we've got one seasonal position within our, one of our divisions that we are looking to make full-time as well. So that's our budget, that's our staffing, just a couple of goals, I'll try to hit on ten goals for this coming year, uh, complete old airport road project, uh, phase one is well under construction, phase two, we've got a, uh, pre-construction meeting next week, hopefully get that project started, uh, in the next couple of weeks. We've got the Trent Road widening project, we've got some design costs for that, so at the direction of the board, if they want to move forward with that, we're looking to move forward with that while widening project as well. Uh, sidewalk improvements, as I mentioned before, we'll try to budget a hundred thousand dollars to fill in some of those gaps in various locations, there is a downtown pedestrian crossing project, will actually probably start this year completed, uh, as we get into next budget year, uh, the City Hall Annex Building, uh, been working with Mark on that, and if we continue to move forward with that, we'll be working on that with Mark, uh, stormwater audit compliance, uh, in FY twenty-one, so we'll be doing some things in this next budget year to make sure we're compliant for that, continue to upgrade our HVA systems and generators around the street, uh, working with Amanda Owens-Zalen and Jeff Rageri's office to make improvements to the old city garage, as the, uh, college is looking to take that over as part of the campus with the vault center, and then begin the implementation of the FEMA related drainage ditch project, um, which should be kicking off sometime at the beginning of this, uh, this next fiscal year, and then finally, working with the MSD and the grant they've received to do improvements to Federal Alley. With that, no questions?
Well, I just would like to give you, uh, my birthday's coming up in June, and part of that, my old birthday, you get done like a fountain, no joke, at East Front Street and, uh, Front Street, I mean-
The Bear Fountain?
I think you have.
I'm sure they dreamed of that one up.
Like a fountain there, and that's, I'm not stealing any of those thunder, that's I think the city manager came up with that one.
And the state's-
And talking with a lot of our residents in New Haven, uh, I think people are really getting excited about, um, the safety of our city, the, the neighborhoods are, seem to be, uh, kind of joining each other, and the workforce development at sidewalks, but more so, um, I think that we need to pay really serious look at, I like your piece of equipment you got, but that was, uh, we could do much better with the, with the edging, uh, equipment that you purchased, and the more we find and define the conditions of these sidewalks, the more we, we have got to get, I mean, a couple hundred feet of this building are some sidewalks that haven't been repaired in fifty years, and, um, I hope that the board can, and staff and finance director can find a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalks this year, not a hundred thousand dollars worth, so, um, that was just pretty much, um, I was associated with Public Works, I wanted to discuss, I think, um, I'm just really, I think, again, thank staff, I'm up, and, and everybody, uh, from Senator Till and some down, that have, um, gotten that payment of thirty-three million dollars, that's, you're going to see a lot of difference in this city with drainage in the next couple of years, you know, the main thing with that, again, something to talk about in Public Works is, is this once in fifty to a hundred years, we, we, we've got this opportunity, we've got to draw on it, we've got to identify it, and we've got to keep these, uh, these, these strange ditches, now that we can get to them accessible and, and properly managed. I mean, we can't just really go right back to what it, what it is.
So, Matt, with the, with the ditch part, that are you going to hire contractors, or just going to-
Yeah, the way-
Any kind of surface-
It'll, it'll all be contract, the way that's going to work is, we're right now in the beginning of the initial phase, where we're identifying, uh, permanent damages for CATD work, uh, the contractors have ninety days to finish that work, and they're about, uh, three weeks into that, and they were, I'd say, seventy-five percent of the way through it for identifying that, so, once we identify all the CATD work, permanent work, we'll submit that to FEMA, that'll go through the review process, and then, at the same time, the FEMA's doing that, the, uh, engineers will begin doing the identification of the CATA work, that's the sediment removal, the debris removal, and they'll start that phase of it, and of course, once that's done, it'll go to FEMA too. Uh, and then as soon as it goes through the FEMA process, I've been told it probably take a couple of months to do that, we'll, we'll start doing design work for some of the permanent repairs, and getting projects designed for contractors to come in and make the repairs, and also to do the, uh, CATA vegetative work. I will tell you that seventy-five percent of the way through the eighty miles of ditches they're traveling, they have- I will tell you that seventy-five percent of the way through the eighty miles of ditches they're traveling, they have identified six-hundred-plus locations that need some type of protection. So, it's, it's a big project, it'll be, as the mayor said, it'll be several years, uh, this project will take.
Several years?
Several years. Years.
Even if we have the project...
Years, yes.
Wow. But you, you're putting the level of importance of who goes first though, right?
Uh, well, when, when you do it, you gotta start downstream. It makes no sense that you, to a certain point, you've gotta start. It does no sense, it doesn't make sense to start upstream if the downstream's blocked. So, you've gotta start, we've basically got ten drainage basins. We'll start at the bottom end of those drainage basins and then we're growing up. And just happen to be the...
There's getting professional contractors who do this for a living, so they know exactly what they're doing.
I mean, that's, and that, there's, I mean, there's headwalls that need to be repaired, there are bulkheads that need to be repaired, pipe coves that need to be repaired, so it's all being included.
And the Duffy Field Canal is included in that, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's, you gotta be careful how, what work you can do that. There is some work that will be done there, but that's a green line string, so there's, you gotta be careful what you can and can't do there. But yes, that is included within the...
Some of the debris and stuff in there, I think if we could just get that cleaned out and make it just, I think that would make a lot of difference in the world. Because again, part of, I think, the redevelopment question is walkways and making that an amenity, as it should be.
I think uh, one thing I would like to work on is confusion between private, property owners and the city. As to what the city is responsible for and private ownership are responsible for. And uh, having said that, um, I hope that during this project and with the staff and the elected officials, we can communicate. And I mean, if you did not see the TV report in last week, and this, this understanding about the drainage and who's responsible for it. So, I just hope that, uh, again, this is not just an opportunity for the public, waterways to get repaired, but for us to partner and, and work with the private owners to uh, uh, their retention funds, their, their, uh, what used to be drainage. That's now, um, leak the land that had been deposited in the backyard and is still, where ditches up, that we can uh figure out how, how to work through this.
Right. So, Mr. Matt, once all of the, the data is compiled, will we get like a game plan of the years, like say where you're gonna start? Because I can just see potentially people calling and saying, well, why is this getting done? Mine's not getting done, when am I slated to get done? Because we're already receiving that type of information.
I think what you'll get is you'll get the contracts as they come through, so you'll know exactly what's coming up first and what's gonna be next as, as we start doing the projects. Uh, it'll be broken out into several different projects, starting in several different locations, but each one of these contracts will have to go to the board for approval.
Okay.
Uh, because of dollar values and plus because of what the project is, so you'll, you'll see them, and you'll know exactly where we are and where we're working.
Perfect, thank you so much.
A lot of it might too be dictated by the contractor. Because he's gonna look at that as to, I mean, if you, ultimately, if you've got a contractor who's bidding, and you can put certain things in the bid documents, but if you've got a thirty-million-dollar ditch clearing project or whatever, you know, he's gonna need to do that in a certain meticulous way and whatever for him to be profitable in ways to.
Right.
He's not, he's not gonna look at it literally in Lot Ward and this area of town and that area of town.
Right, that's what I wanted to show.
And all that kind of stuff. He's, he's gonna go based on getting as most efficient way he can get everything done as quickly as he can. Because that's...
There's also, there's also the possibility of breaking this out into multiple projects, having multiple contractors out here, so you're working in several areas at one time. Uh, there's not ten, we wouldn't get ten different contractors, uh, but to get, you know, two or three different contractors who work in multiple locations, that's definitely uh something that's been discussed.
Matt, on the permanent work, have you, are the engineers identifying, um, some of the headwalls and stuff that can be mitigated?
They're identifying, they're identifying everything that is damaged, what needs to be done to fix the problem, and what mitigation opportunities exist.
Okay, because I think it's automatic in uh, in this permanent work that they qualify for mitigation.
Almost. I'd say probably fifty percent of them, they've identified some type of mitigation which can be done.
I see, that's great. This is the best thing to have in New Bern in a long time. So, that, what, that, what he means is if there's a, just an example, if there's a headwall there now that's got rock and it washed out, they can go back and maybe concrete, you know, and pay, and be paid for by FEMA.
I'll tell you one of the things I've seen a lot of when there's a headwall is the mitigation topic of outdoor weed walls. Yeah. So, that's...
Washing around.
That's another possibility.
Man, I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but had a lot of complaints about the recycling program. And I know, I know when that happened, you guys did some investigation. I, I'm curious if, if the board would have an appetite, the, the bins are there, um, they have the trucks now. If you could get us maybe a price of what it would cost the citizens of New Bern customers to have an additional pickup once a month, or, or maybe even a price for once a week? So, we can share that with the public and then give them the option, because I, it, it's a constant thing that I'm getting complaints about. You know, I understand why the county chose the once every so many weeks versus once a month, because I think it was like, it would be a few months that somebody wouldn't get picked up or whatever. But I can tell you right now, I couldn't tell you what day or, I mean, I know what day because of stickers on top of it, but I can't tell you what week of the month they pick mine up. And that's the biggest complaint I get.
Get the letter on top of the bin?
And, and, yeah, but...
Match your color.
Yeah. And, and everybody kept that letter for the first month, is what we're finding out, because we get, we get a hundred calls a week in recycling. And the girls, the girls at the office...
Steven gets three hundred.
Yeah, well, they try to answer them themselves and not push them to the county, but the calls don't stop. So, yeah, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I mean, then it's up to us, and we can put it out in the public and say, look, this is what it would cost, if you wanna pay it, then so be it.
And for the people that are really...
Sixty.
Yeah. Yes, I have a concern. The same situation that, uh, Alderman Astor had over there in his district, that the buses coming by on Race Track Road, had buses doing the same thing. And uh, that's something that I would like for you and the manager and myself to take a look at, and we could bring it back to the board. Can you share the information with the board to look at, see what can you do about that? Us kids are actually walking in the street as well.
Same as Old Airport, where it's the widening project.
The same thing, with that cost and funding.
What we get from the street connected to the community college from your school, that's what I want. Because of the kids from early college, like, some of, you see a lot of, possibly that highway, that little bit of highway, it would be nice to partner and have a connection, um, somehow, some way between the college and that, that school and that community. I was just starting out, I was up in McKenzie, my guy.
She's talking about right there on, uh, Glen Burne Road. The kids are walking from the college in the street where the grass is high. And is there anywhere that we can look at putting sidewalks there to keep the kids? It's anywhere from twenty-five to thirty kids that's walking a day to the community college that's walking in the street because where the grass is very high, they have to walk in the street because grass is tall.
Excuse me? From the colony and state's direction?
Yes. Just on the right-hand side.
Stops at the forest.
Yeah, yeah, stops at the forest station from Elizabeth to the bypass.
And you already have the lights there, so, I mean, I, I think it's a great partnership to talk to the college to see if they, you know, because you're that community.
And that overpass is getting replaced in the next ten years, because that overpass isn't at interstate height. And with that being Interstate forty-two is gonna be coming through there, and they're actually gotta replace that overpass, so...
Won't be in my ten years. Add a street in there.
This is, that's, I have those for everybody. All these heating and air conditioning systems that's being installed throughout the city, which have, what, it's got to be somewhere in the past couple of years now, ten, fifteen of them or better?
Okay, Matt, we guess.
Yeah, are, are being installed at no cost of labor, because Matt's staff has, he has a heating and air technician, licensed heating and air technician on board now. And he's doing all these installations and saving us thousands of dollars.
Anything else for Matt?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Give me a brief word.
Is there any reason why that he came up with the departments that are finished, got one up? Or, I mean, you wanna be here for him?
I, I, I couldn't foresee any reason why, I think, unless y'all have...
Unless they're here to support their other...
No.
That's a wonderful idea.
Now that you're sitting there.
Support, yeah.
Now that he's sitting here supporting them through all of them.
Friday night, there's nothing else for him to do. I'm not making a motion.
Jordan's going.
You stay a couple of times, so I can...
It's gonna be a brief forty-two slides?
Whatever. We have a motion. I'm gonna ask for a motion. Does anybody want to second the motion? Okay, uh, Matt, did you get the, uh, motion?
I did.
Uh, would you read the motion?
Yes, the department heads who have already presented be allowed to read.
Hey, uh, any discussion, all favor the motion, say aye and aye.
Aye.
All those...
It was at six-oh-eight.
Mr. Stevens, we have one with water resources, uh, one, one question I had, and I don't know where this will fall in, because it was water resources, is the old water plant building. Uh, that, I heard some discussion about the police department training, and so are we kinda like going off all that for the next year or so, or...
Hold on, chief.
Well, I mean...
Chief, don't win.
Did, I, I think the board oughta...
We need you to...
Chief, chief.
Be refreshed, freshened up on those ones.
Well, there, you know, I, I've gotten conflicting, uh, ideals. I know Mr. McKenzie is very up for doing something potentially in that building, or having some, the old, the water, old water resources building. Uh, but then also here that we visited this place and saw lots of lead-based paint, and, and this is an old, worn-out building and everything else. So, um, if, if the board wants us to spend money to fix that up, put the police department there, then, then that, we can definitely take that direction and, and build, we would be glad to implement it. Uh, but right now, um, I'd, I'd ask chief actually be prepared for this discussion, which was, uh, if you wanna, if you wanna talk about that all now, then, um, but...
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's a retreat-type item that I know that there's staff and Alderman are not aware of that.
At six-ten.
So, if you wanna lock...
I would look at it a lot more so than, uh, just as a training facility of if there's an opportunity to where we can get out of the mall. We need to look at a lot of different things with parking, um, the, the...
If, if I may, I, my vision of training for police, and I wish Chief Boyd was here, would have more of a, uh, public safety training facility. Where police and fire, so we got duplicating efforts, can train together, use some of the same instructors, use obviously the same classroom, uh, and that builder would not wait for that.
Would not.
No, uh, actually somewhere over there at Glen Burne and the, uh...
What, what have we looked at and what I asked chief...
About Pleasantville Community Center.
What I had asked chief to look at, uh, potentially, uh, Chief Boyd, um, right now, we have, uh, as you recall, Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Florence, we lost the fire training facility. Okay, uh, right now, we have a temporary facility that's there, um, that was, uh, provided for through FEMA funding with the intent that a permanent facility will be reconstructed there utilizing FEMA funds. So, it would be our hopes that in the process of providing that back for the fire, that it could potentially be also used at a large enough space to be used for police training as well. So, but ultimately, you know, um, we've gotta look at, I mean, there's a lot of different options and things we need to look at. I mean, when we look at this new fire station, should we have a little police substation all the way out there? I mean, you know, it's, you think about the commercial growth area and where the majority of your calls for service are, are gonna be on your high-volume corridors and your high commercial districts. Because, you know, seventeen at MLK, uh, along between basically seventy and Glen Burne, that probably would represent a very significant amount of your phone call volume as far as calls for service. Uh, so, if you see the commercial area, uh, starting to, to take hold and take shape for the West New Bern project, then that's just meaning you're gonna have that much more commercial volumes out there. So, you're gonna need to look at, and, and in building it and, and creating it in our own facility, we won't be paying lease to the mall, or we wouldn't be paying whatever, so...
So, we can look at cleaning up that building, cleaning up the area outside, summer's coming, and then try to find something that we can utilize the building for.
I, I'll tell you one thing that I think we can use the building for, I mean, we, we need space to just store stuff. We've got a ton of stuff that we are required to maintain, records, uh, documents, just, I mean, the fire department has all kinds of trailers and things like that. We've got decorations, we've got all these other things that we have to store. And, I mean, I think fire department, police department are using two, three of the bays over there at the new garage that we built in that little middle bay area, or the middle storage area that used to be one of the water resources. I mean, we just are starting to get to the point where we're gonna have to build something to store stuff.
Well, that's good then, let's, let's, let's go ahead and start that and get the yard cleaned up. Dress it up a little bit. You know, let's dress it up, you know, look like you live here, I mean, you know, I mean...
I will, Foster left, but I will make a note, and I will get with him and tell him to send his guys over there, we'll put some mulch out, we'll plant some trubs, we'll do whatever to make it look at least, uh, presentable.
Absolutely.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Am I pretty good?
Am I pretty good?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We still need some retention.
Chief, please be gone with her, please.
I do have my certificate.
All right, we've got everybody ready, we'll move on to a, a quick go-through of the water resources. Um, water resource has, as in past years, you'll be surprised, with the same five divisions, uh, water resources administration, treatment, distribution, base of sewer treatment, and sewer collections. Uh, essentially, some of all of these divisions provide all the turnkey ser, the turnkey operations needed to provide water and sanitary sewer service for eighteen thousand seven hundred customers located in New Bern and surrounding areas. Including Trent Woods, most of James City, some unincorporated areas like Rocky Run and Alfred, uh, Cove City as well. Our budget for this current year is a little over twenty-two-point-seven million dollars, turn for the entire operation, has a little less than the previous year. Um, forecasting for going into our FY twenty-one budget, looks like that number's gonna uptick a little bit, will still probably be right under the twenty-three-million-dollar mark. Uh, total staff is seventy-eight, is what we have, uh, this year. Uh, we don't anticipate any increases in that moving into next fiscal year. Our goals for next fiscal year is one of our, our, kind of main theme of the operation, is to continue our investment rehabilitation, replacement of our aging water and sewer infrastructure. We're a very old system, we've got, uh, one of the oldest water and sewer, sanitary sewer systems in the state of Carolina. It's an old city, we've got old pipes, we've got old pumps, we've got old infrastructure, so it's a, it's a constant headache to keep that stuff operational. Our, we have some, our topography and geography really compounds that, we're a very flat system, we're a very long system, so in the, in water and sewer, in the world of water and sewer, that, uh, creates some additional problems that, uh, that decreases our maintenance needs every year. So, we'll continue to put a, a good chunk of money in replacing the small-hander pipes, rehab and replacing sewer mains, and some, uh, an uptick in the number for our replacement rehab of infrastructure, our mains where Voice Water Treatment Plant. Uh, the last major upgrade of this plant was in the two thousand to two thousand and two window when they went through that upgrade. All of our existing equipment there, all the moving parts, our large gearboxes, motors, they're rolling over the twenty-year mark this year. So, it's time to put some of that stuff and start aging out and, and get replaced. Uh, so you'll see some, some bigger numbers at our, our Voice Water Treatment Plant, our sewer treatment budget this year. Also, we have two large projects we've been working on for several years, uh, going through several struggles with lays and alignment. We finally think that we had all that ironed out this year, working with adjacent proprietors and also trying to coordinate both these projects, ongoing DOT projects. Uh, so this summer, we will hope to move into construction with our West New Bern Water Improvement Project, which completes a kind of loop of the Western Barby Water System to increase capacity and firefighting capabilities down the Highway fifty-five area, uh, Highway seventeen and the forty-three corridor. And our Township Seven Sewer Improvement Stage Three, this is kind of the fix-all, uh, solution that ends all of our sewer capacity problems in the James City area. Uh, this is something we've been shipping away at for the last fifteen years or so, and this is the last piece of that puzzle that will gain us all the sewer capacity we need to serve all of our, uh, current commitments and everything that we anticipate growing into, uh, that, you know, that's in the New Bern City limits or that would be in the New Bern sort of limits now.
It doesn't impact like, we have to take over all that step system and stuff?
It's part of this, so yeah, this has been a phased project.
We'll get these people off of stepping onto sewer.
No, man, they're still, they're still, still, still being set, and now we have to go, once this project's complete, we'll have the transmission capacity, get all that sewer, all that sewer's doing, get over the river, uh, and get to our main treatment plant. So, we'll have a very small portion that'll be collected, and if stays in James City, gets treated, the reclamation facility in James City, the rest of it, we have to trans... The rest of it we have to transport, uh, through a single eight-inch pipe now, over the Trent River and into our main treatment plant. That's our limiting factor today of how much flow we can push across of that single eight-inch pipe that's hung over the Twins Ban Bridge.
So, I mean, in reality, in, in the vision, in the next twenty, thirty, forty years, there really needs to be a plan on that side of the river.
No, ma'am, we, we should, we should be fine, with what we're doing, this is, we've got some very long-range plans, look at available land for development, potential impacts. Um, fortunately or unfortunately, we kinda run into some dead ends with growth and development. You, you start bumping up into the croatan, into the national forest, you're really not going any further. Uh, outside of county line road, there's a little bit of private property left for development, but then it's vast expanses of, of just land that's not gonna be developed, it's a national forest. So we kinda have a real good idea of what our, our coverage footprint will be, uh, pretty much indefinitely in that area. So with these, uh, these improvements once they're in place, you know, our, our forty and fifty-year projections, we should be fine with capacity in that area.
Awesome.
Uh, so some challenges moving into next fiscal year, and these are really some, some challenges we're starting to see already. Our resources and funding impact from upcoming DOT projects, uh, there's an item on the agenda next week for the board meeting, uh, looking at a, a utility construction agreement with DOT. You'll start to see some of the financial impacts of these highway projects. Most of our current water and sewer infrastructure in these areas sits within existing DOT rights of way, and when the DOT comes to man, you can make a highway improvement in those rights of way, we basically have to get our stuff kinda out of the way for the highway construction. Uh, still be located in the right of way, but we gotta get it out of the way so it's not in conflict. Um, fortunately for us, we don't have to foot the entire bill for that, the, the way that things are set up in North Carolina, general statute requires NTDOT to pick up seventy-five percent of the bill, but we set to come back and pick up twenty-five percent. Um, the forty-three project is the one we're looking at next week. That's a very small project, very little conflict, uh, and our portion of that's almost three hundred thousand dollars. When you get into the James City work, we will have large impacts, we will have miles of pipeline that need to be relocated, big pipeline need to be relocated. Those will be big numbers, so that, that's a financial challenge and also a resource challenge. Um, we're already starting to see a lot of our staff time is getting taken up, working with, coordinating with DOT, there's the design teams, that's starting to get contractors in doing subsoul investigation, doing geotech boring, we're having to go out there and constantly find and locate our lines, show when the steps it'll be hit. So we're already starting to see kind of that, those highway improvements, and they were a long ways from the actual highway construction starting. They're, they're starting to kind of take effect and it's something we're, we're mindful of, and it's gonna be a challenge for us going into the next probably four- or five-year window before we fully get through all these highway projects. Um, we've made a lot of improvements in the last year with reductions to infill infiltration to our sewer system, this has been a great thing for us. This cuts down on operating expenses of the treatment plant, and also helps us maintain ample capacity in our sewer system. We've put some dedicated resources, we got a, we've got a team, this is all they do is try to identify and remove sources of IIN, it worked very well. We're gonna continue those efforts because we've got a very old system, and with a very old system, it comes a lot of leaking joints, a lot of sources of infiltration. And lastly, I think this is something everybody's kind of hinted to today, um, regional construction demand continues to grow, costs are increasing, later in your last line, available labor is decreasing. I think everybody that's set up here today has mentioned the challenges in hiring staff, retaining staff, and that's something that comes with the great economy. Things are going smooth, especially construction, there's a lot of construction going on right now, the private demand for construction labor is very high, so it gives us a very small pull, labor pull, to try to get new candidates from. So as we move into the next couple of years, I think that demand's gonna increase here in the region, just talking with, uh, some builders and engineers and developers, a lot that's gonna happen in the New Bern area in the next two to three years. Um, so it should be more important for us to retain the, the staff we've got here, and we'll continue our efforts with career development programs, apprenticeship programs, do everything we can to hire, train, and retain the staff we need to get through this time. Uh, just a couple of things that I like to put here every year to kind of keep up the speed, um, these, these are just our customer trends, as you can see, green sewer, blue water, we're continuing to head in the right direction, the New Bern is growing, the system is growing. Um, one bump in the road there, uh, you know, a couple, a couple of years back, you can see the dip, and that really is just a loss of customer after Florence, houses that don't exist anymore, um, places that have been taken offline and have to get rebuilt, so you can really see the, you know, financial impact, the customer base impact from, from the hurricane. We, we have since regained, we're back to where we were post-France, so even with those homes, a lot of those homes still not being rebuilt and bad at new customers, we're kind of back to where we were pre-France. The other good thing is you'll see, these are our revenue trends, they're the same period of time, green sewer, again, blue water. Um, we're, we're through a very long, flat period of four or five years, extremely flat revenues. We're finally starting to see kind of coming up off the bottom of what I call the kind of conservation curve with our revenue. So we're finally to the point now where new growth is exceeding what we're losing in, uh, water conservation every year. Um, so for the first time in a long time, we're starting to get back on a type upward tick in revenue, which couldn't come at a better time, more than some of the challenges we've got ahead from this, uh, this, you know, this projected increase in revenue moving next year really helped offset some of these, these costs.
Jordan, is that data from, measured from what we supply or from what we build?
This is revenue, this is bill, this is just bill, uh, but the customer counts are actual customer counts. So this is bill, so if there's issues with the bills, that's baked in there.
Okay.
The last one here though, it gives you a little better picture, this is the actual production treatment numbers, so blue line is actual water coming out of the plant. And it's hard to see, but there is a very slight uptick in last year, so here, the red line represents kind of the last twelve months. Um, everything on the right of that's the last twelve months, you'll see we're, we're starting to slightly increase up with the water, which is the direction we want to head. We're really finally getting out of the bottom of that curve, we're heading in the right direction. Uh, and the real thing that really, I, I really like is that's, the green was our, our sewer treatment number, uh, that number is really the finest. Our IIN efforts are really starting to take hold, we're doing a lot there to get that back and, you know, back under control. So that's one of the best initiatives we've undertaken in the last few years, is put a dedicated team and try to search out and, you know, make repairs to our IIN sources. So if that's really all I've gotten, with now, I'll answer any questions if I ask for next year's budget.
Jordan, on the road construction that's gonna take place, are you gonna have to do any of the relocating in-house, or are you gonna be out there by time of time?
No, the way the DOT contract works in James City is, the James City contract is, it's a design bill, so the contractor, the, the building team that the DOT has hired is in charge for all the design work, all the highway construction, and take care of all the wet utility locations, that's all the water and sewer line. Um, so they'll do their work, they'll design it, we'll approve it, they'll relocate it, and they'll essentially send us a bill when they're done, say, here's your twenty-five percent of the cost. And we're working with them throughout the process to make sure this is, you know, streamlined as possible, that it's gonna be as cost-effective as possible, knowing that we still have to pick up twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of ten million silver number. So we want to make sure that number is, is cost-effective as possible. We're, we're finding ways where we can cut costs from their original plans, and where DOT allows, we'll continue to try to chip away at that number.
Awesome.
How many amount of pipe maybe, uh, worth do you want?
Uh, through James City, we're, we're, we don't know the final number right now, but it would be miles of pipe. Then when we measure these type of, we, we measure these things in feet, you know, a couple hundred feet of this, couple hundred feet of that. With the James City project, we will be, uh, we will be dealing with miles of pipe, that'd be relocated.
Permanently or temporarily?
Combination of both, believe it or not. Uh, we, it'd be, because the, the James City's a very complex project, very dynamic project, a lot of things that have gotta happen, you know, X, Y, and Z's gotta happen before A, B, and C can happen. Um, so there'll be a lot of utility relocation that will be on a temporary basis in order to get the permanent stuff in. Um, some of the places we need to put pipes now, there's, there's buildings, um, that, that will have to get demoed, some of the roadway have to get built before we can actually get the pipe in, that need to be in before they can do some of the demo work. So it's, it's a, one of the most complicated projects I've seen in this area in quite a while, with the, you know, the amount of stuff that's gotta get done in a, in a very tight corridor. Um, when they get ready to start the construction, it'd be, be fun watching for a few years.
You mentioned county line road, so that means from the bridge all the way down to county line road?
Uh, with the, the James City, the DOT, the DOT work?
Yes.
Uh, the DOT, the DOT work will extend from essentially Williams Road, uh, right coming off the, the bridge, uh, through, all the way through...
Past Thurman.
Yeah, past, past Thurman Road, and that's where this phase will end. So not quite the county line road, but there, there's, there's a good stretch through there. So you think of how far that is from, just, let's just say Thurman Road, the entrance Carolina Colors to the bridge. Uh, we have, uh, through that, we have a, a very large sewer force main, we have a sixteen-inch sewer force main, we have a twelve-inch water main through there, supplies all the water to Carolina Colors, to Taverna, that area of town, uh, and then we have a, an entire network of our small diameter step system sewer piping in there, that's gotta get relocated. Uh, because it's being built to highway, I'm sorry, interstate standards complicates things quite a bit too. Um, they, interstate will allow, interstate standards will allow no wet utilities inside the controlled access line.
Right.
Um, so you got a little more flexibility with secondary roads and even some primary highways, but when you get to interstate standards, there, there's, there's no question, you've gotta get this stuff out and across the lines. But that's why this one is gonna be so much more involved than the others before we get past.
Now, with this though, with the, the miles, we're still only responsible for twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent, great as man, but like I said, twenty-five percent of ten million silver.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I don't know what the number is, we're a long ways from having a final design and having a final number, um, but it, it's gonna be a, you know, just looking at what our number was, it's forty-three, which is three hundred thousand dollars, what I think is a, a drop in the bucket compared to what we're gonna see in James City.
And that would include the temporary move and putting it back?
Yes, sir.
Jordan?
Do we have a date on when they're gonna start the construction, or?
Forty-three?
Yeah.
Um, September of this year. Um, question, when, when we, I'm not too concerned about the forty-three, but like you said, it's kind of small, but the James City, how does that process work? Do we have to go through the bidding process, or are we just reimbursing DOT, and it's their contractors, how does that?
They, DOT, this is a design build project, so DOT, DOT is already going through their lit process, and the, the design building team they selected gave them a lump sum price, and it, it's into hundreds of millions of dollars. Uh, the lump sum price for doing all the design work, all the wet utility relocation, building all the roadway improvements. Um, so that's all, that's all done, we know, good news there, there's no process to go through, the contractors are hired, essentially. Um, so all they have to do now is finish the design, that's approved by DOT, and for the utility portion that's approved by us, um, and they'll get there and start to complete the work. So at some point, we will get an invoice, I, I'm pretty sure from DOT, not the contractor, so the contractor's gonna be paid the same thing, and DOT will send us an invoice and say, hey, here was all the utility costs, here's your twenty-five percent. Um, so we'll, we'll know, we'll have a better feel of that number once we get to the hundred percent design stage, which should be sometime this spring. Have a pretty good idea of what our piece of that pie's gonna be. Um, so good news, we probably won't, we'll have no budget impact this year, they won't be done with the work in, in FY twenty twenty-one. So we'll probably be sitting at the table this time next year talking about what that, what that cost is gonna be, and when we have to pay that bill to DOT in the following fiscal year.
Can we finance that?
We'd have probably several options, hopefully cash would be available to pay a portion of it, depending on what, what it is. We have a pretty substantial balance in both those funds, uh, water and sewer, um, but we've got a lot of need for both those two, the two large capacity projects. So we're just gonna have to see what feels like that plan.
Do we know, um, when James City's gonna start?
Uh, they're supposed to be done with the utility design in the spring, um, get all that finalized, all the approvals done, permitting. Uh, the idea was to start the very beginning phases of the wet utility relocation by the end of this calendar year. Uh, and they were thinking twelve months to actually get the wet utilities kind of moved out of the way before they could get the highway construction. So they're looking at kind of the year twenty twenty-one as being the year to get all the wet utilities moved out of the way, and twenty twenty-two, the highway crews moving in and start construction.
Jordan, I know that you, you know, are, you're talking about some of those utility, um, eight-inch lines and things might be moved, and I know that when we spent that capital improvement five years ago, and you did the two equalization basins and the reservoir, um, and then you did the solids and grits on the James City side, to be able to get more maximal use of the eight-inch line. Um, are you, twenty-four hours a day, is, is it popping pretty steady on that, and is that, is that fully using the eight-inch at this time?
Uh, on, on a day like the day, yes, sir.
And so?
But we're, we're running that thing twenty-four seven.
Do you get into high PS, into high pressure like we did at Taverna, is that, is that starting to be a problem?
We're okay downstream, everything downstream, that equalization basin, that's what the, the equalization basin does, equalize that pressure, so you don't have the problems that we had fifteen years ago through Taverna and down Old Airport Road. Um, well, well, day like the day, we're fine, we got no problems, even with all the rainfall we had last night, we can accommodate that. Um, what we need the phase-three project for is to accommodate all the growth and development that's planned. So as Blue Water Rise builds out, the future phase is Hardy Farm, and they're working, actively working in these areas now, as these continue to build out along with Carolina Colors. And you're, you're okay today, we're not gonna run out of capacity tomorrow or even next year. Um, but as these, as these developments continue to build out, and they will, uh, we need to be ahead of them, not, not behind them with this.
Reason I'm asking is I know that engineers don't like to have dry pipes, you wanna size your pipe accordingly, that's where it stays wet. So if you had oversized that line years ago, hydrology, I don't think it flows as good. But what I am saying is that when you are having to take up eight-inch lines, or are you gonna put eight-inch back when it's relocated, or are you gonna size for the next thirty years? Even though knowing that that's not gonna be, commit certain, it's not gonna be engineered properly with the eight-inch line going back, remember, how are you gonna do that?
Very, very good question. One of the few benefits of the James City Highway project is there's a stretch of the Township Seven Forceman Improvement Project. We've been trying to work with the airport and find a, a route through around the airport with a new sixteen-inch force main. Um, things have all come together about the same time now that we're working with the design team of DOT, where that we have an existing eight-inch line on seventy that we're currently using between, um, the Trent Old Cadillac with the ownership and, and Williams Road, that they're having to redesign that to put back as eight-inch. We're working with them in order to, to upsize that to our sixteen-inch that we need to get back to Williams Road. So we're gonna take advantage of the highway construction and put back a sixteen-inch pipe where they need to put back an eight-inch pipe. We're gonna basically pay for the, we pay for the upsizing pipe, plus our twenty-five percent of construction costs, in lieu of paying a hundred percent of, you know, putting in that same amount of pipe around there. So we're actually getting a little cost savings in our, in our Township Seven Phase Three project, um, by all the, by coordinating all the work with the highway, in conjunction with the highway project.
I just wanna make sure the board, if there's something you need to kind of go with it, we're properly engineering for future starts when those lines get relocated, that we're making the right decision and not undersizing for the future. Anybody else on water resources?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all right. We'll have Charlie come up to the left, we have last, last.
Does it look right?
Deep run.
Deep run.
Deep run, deep deal, what's here?
Sorry. I feel like Babe Ruth coming up here, you know? You're actually the dominant hitter in the lineup, so what does that say? I'm a good pitcher?
You're very good.
I don't know, you guys have put up a lot of numbers, so yeah, that's, uh...
Good afternoon.
Definitely gonna get a win tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, right. Uh, a quick, uh, brief overview, the Public Utilities Department oversees the electric administration, electric distribution system, electric power supply, communications and control. The department purchases, receives, and delivers electric power to approximately twenty-two thousand five hundred customers. And we also coordinate approximately fifteen megawatts of, of generation. We operate with a budget of about fifty-five point seven million dollars, and we have a total staff of about fifty-three personnel.
Before you go, George Charlie, just congratulations on your Value of Public Power Award, which you were awarded today by Electric City.
Thank you so much, I just heard about it before I came in.
Congratulations, I also emailed out to, to the, in the lecture, did you get it about forming tanks in your hospital?
Yes, I did, that's, that's Adam's reason. We'll do a press release on, on your award as I get back to the office. We spent approximately, uh, thirty-seven million dollars for the purchase of electricity. I'm forecasting levelized cost through the year twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year with no increases. And what I'm saying there is, is potentially no increases from our suppliers until that point. Um, obviously the market is dynamic, so this could change every year, but that's the forecast of today. Um, additionally, I'm expecting to see some reduction of our costs this year due to lower energy prices, approximately two hundred and seven thousand dollars savings, if our usage stays the same. Um, you know, I'm forecasting relatively small growth, continuing to have twenty-year study, um, two thousand thirty-eight, about one percent a year. Capital improvements-wise, uh, I'm forecasting only one major capital improvement, that is the kind of line of substation, um, that you probably talked about before. It's capacity-driven, and, um, hoping to fund that through a grant with the EDA. We require a twenty-five percent match, but the folks have already approved that, and... And, uh, hopefully if I'm successful, I'll be back talking to you about, oh, we're going to pay for that match and, uh, probably debt service. Through the rate stabilization funds, obviously consulting with the finance director about that, or come back to you if I get that grant. If not, then I'll look at it, I'll turn to the plan and consult with the finance director and city manager on how do we fund that.
Just explain that 17.8 million a little bit there, is that, is that collectively everything? When you say power supply, debt service, what, what does that represent?
That, I'm sorry, I missed that point. That is our debt service, um, regarding our power supply contract with the Kempa. And, um, that is the total debt service that we owe through 2035.
I think it was 2024.
There are some provisions for early outs. I think, and they're complex. I didn't put all the early out provisions in there, but that's.
You got, you got the one-year notice and all that stuff.
It, it's complex.
Well, I thought our debt's paid out at 2025 or 24.
Yes, that's what I thought.
But then there's some stranded costs or some little operation.
I'll double check, but that's the way I understand it unless we opt for some early out options.
I'm not aware of anything being in 2035.
Yeah, I thought it was done here soon.
So that, that number is the number, the bio number, it's?
It is.
As a, this.
It's at about 3.5% interest. Otherwise, um, I'm just expecting normal operations and maintenance of our system and system improvements, equipment, tech, uh, needs to be funded through our budget of working capital. Expect to stay within budget there. Challenges, as far as challenges go, I foresee opportunities for improvements with our business operations. The challenges are both with technology and, um, process driven. But through our AMI efficiencies and better coordination of our business operations, I think that there's a lot that we can achieve over the next year.
Can't get much worse.
We're referring to those, I guess, like, but then it's going to get better, right?
I believe so. I believe there's a lot of room for that.
We go from how many billing cycles to what we have now?
21 to 5.
Great job.
Thank you. Um, the staff is working very, very hard. Um, we're pushing up. My, my, my goal, my focus is back to basics, deliver power, set a meter, read the meter, send out an accurate bill. Make it consistent days of service, 27 to 33 days of service and have a consistent due date and collective revenues that we're doing.
And can we encourage more people to get on Pay As You Go? I tell everybody I know and I see, I love Pay As You Go.
I can check on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really hear a lot about it anymore, but I think it's, it's, it's a really good program. And it alleviates, like you said, early on, we had the deposit, you're on spot, it's on my cell phone if I can't hear. Right. I, and I tested it where I didn't pay, let it go off, paid it two seconds later and it came back on just to see if you really was going to cut me off. And I, I mean, I mean, you have to test it and I, it's amazing for people that are on budgets. I mean, you can really see what you're using. Okay, but we have the heat on too high or the AC on too high and it's basically what you consume. So I really, I really.
Very delicate balance there too, because you know, you, you want to offer the Pay As You Go program. Some of the other part of the Pay As You Go programs was you, you've got to enforce your rules over here too.
Right.
Because if you don't enforce your rules, then why would somebody want to pay ahead of time for their power whenever they're gaining the system and sitting here, you know, uh, banking up two extra months of, of utility usage and haven't paid it yet.
Right.
You know, and then, and then they walk away from it. So.
And in my mind, at this point, I still call that program pilot program.
Right, it is.
Um, I'm glad you're having success with it, but when I've looked at some numbers, there's always a true-up at the end of the month for the customer. And that true-up, if you look closely, it follows whatever usage you're using based on the billing cycle that you're in. So if our days of service are not consistent and we're billing customers 30 days one month and 60 days the next month and 45 days the next month, that true-up is, is off. And so I got to, we've got to get that straightened out. And Pay As You Go probably worked a lot better than that. As, uh, Mr. Hughes suggested, I'm forecasting NC DOT projects. There are challenges, a variety that are headed this way. Mr. Hughes gave us an update on that. Earlier, I don't know if you want me to go back into it, but a lot of the same things, except when he's talking James City and the state is relocating all the wet utilities, uh, the electric utility will be responsible for relocating our own utilities. So we want to put the management ourselves. So it is a, it is a resource challenge, it is a challenge to plan and budget for this, it's kind of a moving target.
So it's forced upon us?
Yes, yes. Bottom line is if, if, if we're in the state's right of way, they have the right to tell us to move it at our, at our expense. If we're not in the state's right of way and they tell us to move, then we have a chance at some reimbursement. And it varies from project to project, location to location.
I think it's important that we do keep that in the forefront when we're budgeting for future budgets, because if we're trying to do so much with other things and this is forced upon us because we have to do it, we got to find the money, I think it's important to go, to keep those figures in the forefront when we're doing things, projects and stuff.
Uh, other challenges that I've foreseen is regional growth, it's a good thing. Um, we have a growing regional economy, uh, which can create some challenges. Qualified contractors can be difficult to find, shortage of skilled labors and tradesmen, and this can all drive up costs, both with outsourced contractors as well as finding qualified staff and tradesmen.
What's, what's, I'm just curious, what's the training for linemen? Do they get like a certificate, a college certificate or?
We do have a lineman career development program and there is formal training that they go through. Takes them about five to six years if they really put their nose to it. A lot of it is, uh, can be done on the job, so there's some bookwork. And then there's minimum amount of hours that you need to perform in your classification.
I was curious, do we have like a partnership with the college or anything to help with recruitment?
We have a partnership with Electric Cities that helps us with our educational program, but as far as recruitment, um, we're all competing.
Electric bill right now is pretty tough. We get a lot of, uh, Charlie and I have talked about this, you know, um, our, our biggest, our two biggest, uh, um, pulls from our staff are, you know, Duke obviously and cherry picking. Occasionally not lose one to one of the electric co-ops that's around, but Duke primarily is the, the main one that pulls. And what, what, one of the, some of the difficult things are is, it's very difficult, number one, to get the private sector, you know, apple to apple comparison as far as benefits and salaries and everything else on the private side to compare with us. Uh, but, but hands down, there's no doubt their business on salary. You know, and, and what's unfortunate is that we bring guys in, we train them and then, you know, they get offered a dollar more an hour or two dollars more an hour and, and sometimes even way more than that. Um, and so they're just, you know, cherry picking our, our guys that have quality and, and put them in service.
We groom them, they take them.
Wow.
Good stuff.
And it's very, they're very aggressive, like, there's a, uh, there is a billboard outside of Wilson's public works facility.
Oh, yeah, we saw that.
And it literally says hiring, you know, journeymen, you know, $90,000 a year plus, you know, $100 or a $100 a day stipend or whatever. I mean, it's, and, and literally, I mean, it's as soon as you pull out of their, their electric yard.
They are, they do a lot of contracting with Purdue. And as it, as the region grows, there's a demand for that infrastructure, well competing for, for those skills.
How far back are we on the pay? I mean, is it terribly?
Um, we're, we're ways off. It depends on where you want to, where we want to decide a little on a compete path. Do, do we need to match dollar for dollar? Probably not. So where is the price point that we need to meet at? And Mr. Stevens and I have been having ongoing conversations about that.
And again, that's, that's the difficult part is it's very, it's very hard for us to put an apple to apples comparison because, you know, we're offering, uh, you know, the, the benefits that we have, 401K, you get retirement after 30 years. I'm pretty sure that you can't retire 48 if you were to start here at City when you were 18, uh, with, with Duke power. You know, but maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but it's very difficult to find those apples to apples comparisons, numbers to be able to see.
Unfortunately, I look to a lot, to a young lineman, the only thing going on in mine right now is taking money.
Right, it's hard to talk to them about a 30-year career.
Yeah.
Um, when they're offering $5, $10 more.
Wilson used to take, I'd take out firefighters away from us, you know.
Staffing wise, I'm forecasting a levelized staffing, um, utility through fiscal year 2021. As you've heard, the meter shop was integrated with utility operation in November. At the same time, I've had oversight over the business operations. The city manager, myself, and the finance director will get together in the next few weeks and have some strategic conversations. And determine if there's any, um, reason to make any further realignments of our business operations. Otherwise, I think if we improve our business processes, I would expect declining staffing levels, um, over the next two or four years.
We all need to stand up. Is that the first, is that the first one about of all departments, a declining staffing level, right?
And I would, I, I wouldn't want to startle anybody, um, but I do think that there's room for process improvements, there's room for efficiencies. And I think that if we pay attention to attrition, we can, we can capitalize on it.
The issue with that is you're in an inter-pross fund and everybody else is asking for money out of you.
But I do, I do like the idea of what, I don't know who said it, it was Alderman, um, Alderman in regards to, I know that when Ms. Mary comes on that they said there's a, a large staff there that if they can be utilizing another department, if you do or have to, because I know this is wide and we don't want anybody thinking, oh, my God, I'm going to lose their job. But if they're able to transition into something else, I thought that was a good idea.
We want to retain the knowledge we have.
Yeah.
We invested into, into staff for years and we take very seriously before they walk out the door. Um, so, um, it's, it's a strategic plan that we need to, to work on. And, uh, we need to be looking at the future and the current staffing needs and what process improvements that we can make and how to realign, um, so the benefits to community. Additionally, um, I plan to review our fees and schedules. I've been doing some of that already. I'll come back with, um, some further information, hopefully, um, and introduce some changes to, minor changes to fees and schedules during budget preparations. Mostly general updates, housekeeping such as fees regarding ordinance languages and street lighting rate schedules. Just some recent things, housekeeping there. Questions or comments?
Charlie, I want to thank you for, um, taking care of the situation for me this week with a, with a customer. I really appreciate that very, very much. That's the first time I've ever had it done that quick, but it was great. Thank you.
Thank you for having my attention.
Were there any questions about this time?
You've done a really good job, Charlie, with all of this. Yeah, confusion going on and changes we made with UBO and everything, but thank you.
My pleasure.
The one thing I, I would say on, um, electric, the street lights, I've, man, sometimes, Alderman and myself, you run around. Some areas never have street lights out there. Um, and I guess it's comes to, to citizens in those particular areas are really good about calling in. And in other areas, there's quite a few, there's quite a few out in downtown New York right now.
And I always think to text you and then I.
And it's almost like if you could just get, uh, a, a staff person to maybe one that very same, go, right. But it's very, I'm telling you, other areas of New York, I have been all over in here and none out. And I don't know, I don't know if it's just citizens.
Mr. Stevens and I have talked about it, it is a challenge. Um, and the challenge I have is that I'll never meet your expectations. Because if I drive through a neighborhood at 4:30 this morning and I record all the ones that are out, by the time I get back to the shop, two more are out. You know, I just, they're, they operate in real time.
Well, you know that old industrial study where, you know, you go into a plant, you just change all out at one time. I don't know if that's what you need to do in downtown area, but I'm not so sure. I would just go change them all out at one time.
And that's what we're doing with our street light LED replacement program. We're going from neighborhood by neighborhood and doing group replacements of those neighborhoods. And then the rest of it's stop replacements as somebody calls it in and we're replacing them with an LED style. We're not going back to any.
Alderman asked me to give a suggestion, but I mean, as our police are on duty 24/7 at night. I mean, is it possible they're down the street, it's, you know, it's dark, they either send it, they just send it to you or record it, just?
I occasionally get this from the PD.
Firemen can do that too when they.
No doubt. This fireman does it. I mean, I, I call in all the time, give them the whole number and that's where you don't see many of them out in Taverna, I tell you.
I think, I think the frustrating part, I understand what you're saying, but from our standpoint is when you see the same light that stays out for months at a time, we, we obviously know that, we understand if one light's going to go out, you can get another one on. But I think it's the same lights and that there was, there was a few downtown that we'd leave our board meeting and for two months it was the same light that was out.
Some of, downtown's, um, different, some of them are privately owned, they're not all maintained by the utility.
This, this one was in City Hall parking lot, so we don't do them down with.
Jeff, that's not the one you put out, is it?
And mortgage law. Well, did we relight those when we had turned them off that time?
The utility doesn't maintain the one in the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, we stopped that. Danny Meadows stopped that.
Hey, Brian, what's on the ledger?
Thank you.
That's it, sir.
Good dog.
We've gone through all the departments, uh, when I'm happy to try to answer any kind of other questions you might have, otherwise, uh,
Armed.
Uh, I, I've, I've, obviously haven't seen the, the numbers yet, they haven't submitted our spreadsheet. This is really more of a vision kind of thing for, for y'all, so I really can't comment too greatly on everything, uh, when it comes in. But, uh, I mean, obviously you can see how difficult this is, is, you know, our, our, just in the general fund, if I'm, if my math's correct, I think I had 19, I think it was 19 employee requests, 19 staffing requests.
I got 24 altogether, though.
Well, you got Stormwater and then you got, so, 3, 6, 8, 14, 16, 19. I got 21 just in the general fund. So if you look at 21, average of 50.
Are we getting rates?
Well, again.
Is that incorporated, is it going to be incorporated in the budget? Sure.
Depends on whether we can abort it.
Mark, the other thing that we had talked about earlier and I was thinking we might see today, and that's fine, we can have another meeting about it. But when we talked about doing an organizational structure, that you were going to really look at the overall organizational structure of the city and maybe, you know, make suggestions, changes or different thought processes or whatever, is that still something you're going to look at?
I think the organizational structure of the city as a whole is sound. There's certain sections where I'm looking at right now, and that's the reason why I mentioned I'm, I was waiting for Mary to get on board so we can really take a look at this stuff that might be more utility driven. You know, uh, with some of the changes that have occurred with, uh, you know, water and sewer, having their whole facility out there. And now, you know, uh, Charlie's over here, um, you've got, you've got a situation where, um, Jordan pretty much is a department head, but technically he's under Charlie, but yet they're completely autonomous of one another now. Uh, and quite frankly, their functions are completely different. But we also have a, uh, you know, we have a, have to live within a certain mile radius of City Hall and I'm pretty certain that Jordan's not interested in that. So then, you know, do I mess with that organizational structure? Um, you know, that's, there's a lot of different things that, that play into that. But ultimately, my main focus when I was talking about where it's taken the structure was more so around, uh, the, the UBO, the finance department and, and, uh, how it functions with the, the utilities.
Mayor, I think someone mentioned that, um, it's always difficult to keep up with the timing of when we're supposed to do the city manager's review. And I think it was time for the six-month review, so. And I think it was time for the six-month review, so.
I think it's that little note you sent out, Brenda, that you sent us something recently.
I know what everybody wanted to do with that. We've done it different ways in the past. Done surveys. We've just done in-person. But the reason I want to bring it up now is because we have a pretty lengthy agenda Tuesday night. And I don't want anybody to think we're going to go in Tuesday night and do a review afterwards. It's probably a pretty long meeting, I guess. And I just wanted to remind everybody.
So we want to do like a survey, survey monkey or something like that?
Yep. I mean, we've done that fast.
What, what's the timetable? What, what do you want to do?
We can get, can you send it out to Sonja and send it out to us?
She can. I mean, I think she sent it out on your board.
Yeah, I remember she did. And we filled it out and then come back and just schedule it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Our February, what was it, 28th meeting? Is that our last meeting of the month? Just schedule it back when we do it. So do it before and then the close session on the 28th, go over it.
So procedureally, you want to get the manager to tell Sonja, Monday to start that process? Or get, see, Burke, how you want to do that?
Yeah. Do we speak to her? How, how do you want to send it?
Y'all, because I mean, typically in the past, I think there was a survey monkey that was put together.
I've got a template. I can just send it up.
Sonja. Send it, Sonja sends it. All of y'all link to it.
Okay.
You can fill it out and then pile. We can do it on, so the, the consent is due on 28th?
Yeah.
Okay. So who initiates that process with Sonja? Do I do that or the department?
I can send it to her. I have that direct.
I know. The reason we're doing this now is Sonja had said we really need to do this in public.
Now I'm going to make a motion to adjourn his meeting.
Have a motion to adjourn is a discussion. See, in the discussion, all the motions say.